I'd like to call to order the June 21st meeting of the Avalon City Council. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your hand over your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And unless there's someone who would like to give an invocation, we will be seated. Announcements?
Roll call?
I have... Oh, roll call? She changed the order on us. Isn't it roll call, then, invocation, pledge of allegiance? Anyway, thank you. Thank you, Ollie. Go ahead.
Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Sampson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Olson?
Here.
And Mayor Marshall?
Here. Announcements?
Is David in the audience? No. Okay. Want me to grab him? Sorry, he'll come up during oral communication, then.
Okay, written communications?
I have none.
I would like to say that I received, and I'll give it to Denise, a note from Pat Meister regarding the stairs.
I spoke to her today.
Okay, so, okay, thank you very much.
But I'll take that and add it to...
And I forwarded on the message from Bill Bushing, and I spoke to Dennis about that. It was regarding the caps on the ramp, the ramps there, so we're good there. Thank you. Okay. Okay, city manager reports.
I'm happy to report that the new Community Services Director will be starting on Monday, July 18th, Dan Hunky. And we're going to, we found housing for him, so we're very happy that he'll be joining us.
Wonderful.
And we have had complaints about the street sweeper with the dust that it's been producing, so Dennis has reached out to CRNR, and Steve Batty just reported it to us today that they've made some adjustments, so we're hoping to see a decrease of that.
Right.
And then Audra McDonald couldn't be here this evening, but she has reported, just a little update, that things are moving along smoothly, and we're on about the end of, or starting week three of the Dial-A-Ride, and those numbers are, the ride count is low on it, but, you know, maybe people haven't found us yet, and that the e-bus is ending in week two. There's been a few kinks, but they've been working it out, and the routes have been going smoothly, so we're very positive about it.
So if anybody really has a question or a comment, they should direct it to Ernesto, to the, to the...
The transit company, yes.
The transit company, yes. Okay, great. And city attorney report?
Nothing to report.
Okay, councilmember reports? Who would like to start?
I have no specific report, but just wanted to give a shout-out to the city and the chamber for the recognition and solidarity for those in Orlando. It was a beautiful, a beautiful event.
Thank you. Councilmember Hernandez?
Okay, right now.
Okay, councilmember Sampson?
Yes, I would like to mention that I think there has been some misinterpretations of our municipal code, and it has to do with vehicles. And I'd like it to be well-defined, where if a vehicle's too wide, it's too wide, and we shouldn't renew a permit if that's the case, okay? So I'm kind of concerned about that. I think we have some staff members that are interpreting, making their own interpretations of what the municipal code is, and I think we need to change that a little bit, or at least get them on track, so that if a vehicle's too wide, it doesn't get a permit, okay? So I have a big problem with that. I think we should take a serious look at vehicles in the near future. I'm also concerned about that. I'm finding that our streets are getting just cluttered up with way too many vehicles. It seemed like when we took the 1,200 full-size vehicles that we had, and we reduced it to 400, I believe that's an approximate number, then on the other spectrum, on the other side, we took 1,000 golf carts and quadrupled them. So we six one, half a dozen of the other, we have less full-size vehicles, we have five times as many golf carts now. So I'd just, I'd just like to take a look at that in the near future, and kind of make our policy a little more level all across the board. We can't just keep shoving more and more vehicles on our streets. The quality of life is being just deteriorated because of it, and I think it's a serious issue. I get nothing, I get a lot of complaints about it. Everybody wants to have a golf cart, but our town is only so big, so we can't have, we've got to look at this and make it, make it right for the city, not for every individual. It's just, it's got to be that way. So my main concern is that tonight. I noticed we have an item on the agenda about a beach. We're going to do that study. It's not the bath metric study, it's, it's similar to it, though, because there's still a pothole over on Small Beach, over by the cottage, and it's actually, actually a sinkhole, and we need to get that, that section of the beach open. I mean, we only have three little beaches, four little beaches, and that's one of them. And it's sinking, and it keeps sinking, so it's just something else that we need to tend to. And then Pebly Beach Road, I'm also extremely concerned about. We have, just this side of the road, the walkway, we need to put some attention on that somehow. I don't know how that's going to happen. I know Scott has told us that, yeah, we're going to do it, but I need to understand what the plan's going to be for that. I have a lot of people that actually are concerned about that.
Because we don't have money currently to shore that up better? Is that correct? Does anybody know?
The walkways?
The, out at Pebly Beach, out, you're...
Yeah, it's a pothole. It's basically the landmines out there.
Oh, the pothole's not so much the undermining, well, both.
Well, it's the same thing. It's the riprap, it's the whole, the whole hill, road is being deteriorated away, ever since the hurricane.
Right.
And it's probably before that, but the hurricane was the thing that really destroyed that road. So I'm just, what I'm really afraid of is somebody's going to step in there at night.
Oh, the, oh, I see what you're talking about.
Yeah, it's very dangerous. I'll say the word. It is.
And some of the money that we received recently, was that for that area, or was that other things?
It was spread out through different areas. We got money for Pebly Beach Road, the waterside, as well as for the ramp, the seaplane, the old seaplane ramp, and...
Okay, so it did include some of that area that Joe's talking about, that sounds like.
I guess it's hard to get permitting for that, is that correct, Ollie?
There's a process.
There's a process, so we need to plunge ahead with that process before we have a problem. And it's just a matter of time till we do, okay? That's, that's all I'm going to announce, that's, that's all I have to say for right now.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Following up on Mr. Sampson, I believe that calls for a study session for vehicles, because that's on our to-do list, and I think there's a lot of options out there. I think we have to throw them all on the wall and see what sticks, which is probably a good idea. Also, what else do I have to report? Last week, I went to a League Economic Conference in downtown LA, and that night went to Contract Cities, where they were honoring our supervisor, Don Knabey, which was kind of cool, it was up in Palo Alto, and I think everything else was cool. I unfortunately have to leave this evening at 7:30, so I will miss some of the fun stuff, but I'll be keeping you in my hearts.
Thank you.
We'll miss you.
Okay, I have a few things. Some of us were available this weekend to attend some of the openings. Of course, Catalina Island Museum opened on Saturday, it was quite lovely. It's an incredible building, the staff worked hard. They also, at that, at that time, commended the city staff, the planning, Public Works, Fire Department, everybody, the building official, everybody that worked to get that open on time, so that's a great shout-out for all of you. Island Breeze has moved from Catalina to Sumner Street, so Lourdes had a blessing of her building on Saturday, and some wonderful food, so some of us were there for that. And also, Megan Wright opened up the Metropole Cafe. We want to thank her, young people getting involved in opening up business, that's good for everybody, and so that's wonderful. Also, a couple of us attended the 100-year anniversary of the Tuna Club Building, so it was destroyed 100 years ago, and it was rebuilt. They had a lovely dedication and, again, great food, and it was wonderful, so we're very happy that we could be there. I felt a little bad and a little, and I've spoken to Denise, not really realizing what it was all about. They had recognition from a couple of other governmental agencies, and, and we really didn't have anything to present, so Denise was going to be working on something to reach out, and we hope to provide something by July 5th council meeting. I want to encourage everybody to fill out those residential questionnaires that we've all gotten in our mailboxes. They are very serious and very beneficial for the community, so if you have those, they are in English and Spanish, and I can't translate, so, but please, fill those out.
Can I speak to that, Annie?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm glad you brought it up. I just wanted to clarify to a lot of people who had a few questions about the survey. It is confidential. The number associated with your survey, the reason it's a number and not an address is that way, there's, it's totally confidential. It's just a way to keep track of the fact that we don't count people twice.
Right.
So there's no record that associated with it publicly, or that staff even reviews. It's just a way to organize the data, and that's why it uses a number. So if anybody sees that, don't be concerned that it's a way to track you, it's just a way to make sure we don't count people twice.
Okay.
So that's, that's what that's for.
And they've been out at least a week, if 10 days, maybe?
Yeah, and we've gotten reports that we've had pretty good turnout so far with the surveys. Of course, there's a lot out there. We'd really appreciate everyone's filling them out, either in the mail or online, and then we will be following up with the door-to-door, but the more that we get filled out ahead of time, the more on top of it is.
And some people have gotten two because they have multiple parcels?
Yeah, there's, if there's different parcels out there, we tried to kind of cover it as completely as possible for all of our addresses in town to capture all the residents. So that's, you make it a lot, and so it's, we're looking at it per household, is what it's looking for, so.
Might we want to put something in the arcade on one of the tables that says, "Have you completed your questionnaire with a copy of what the questionnaire looks like," or something to, I don't know how we keep the encouragement going.
Yeah, that's definitely a great idea. We've talked about a couple of other, other community events that we could draw in a big crowd, and hit them with the survey reminder, but that's definitely a good one, and we could see, you know, what we can do to kind of encourage people to remember it, participate, and get data. And as a reminder, the significance of it is, it hopefully helps us get better grant funding for water, for parks, for streets, for transportation, gives us a better picture that we can use for these grant applications that are coming up right now and very critical to us.
Right.
So it's very important that we fills it out.
Do we have little public notices going to the churches to read in their bulletins?
We, we gave, yeah, gave the churches handouts.
Okay.
If anybody's missing any or run out, let us know. We've got more handouts that we can provide people, so they're aware of what it is, and they can answer questions about it.
But there's no way, so if I go, whoops, I threw mine in the trash, which I didn't, but everybody gets a number, so it's not like you can just hand out additional questionnaires, correct?
If someone misplaced theirs, or lost theirs, or needs to get another one for whatever reason, just reach out to myself or Audra here at City Hall, and we'll figure out what we need to do to...
Okay.
...get you on track, so there's not a duplication of surveys.
Right.
So just reach out to myself or Audra here at City Hall, and we'll figure something out.
Great, awesome, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, George.
Were there two letters that had two different surveys? Seems like I've got two different surveys.
Well, there's one, one survey, you may have received two letters if you have different parcels. We've only sent out one letter, so I don't know, if you've got the other letter, you want to show me it so I can see what it is, but we've only sent out one letter, the same, the same letter for all of our surveys.
And there was a conversation online that alluded to the same, the same thing that Val has brought up, that some households have received two copies, two separate letters.
I think that was because so many went out first without the PO boxes, and so they had to re-mail out, so I'm not sure if they re-mailed out the ones that already had the PO boxes or not, but that was a big issue.
Thank you for clarifying that.
So the population of Avalon is now 10,000.
Yeah. Overnight.
Okay, I don't know if I should talk about Planning Commission, when we get to the Planning Commission appointments, or if I, something I can bring up now? I know we, I had said something about last council meeting, about getting the Planning Commission a little more involved in, in things that are of benefit to the community. And one of the things that has come up recently that maybe they could look into, and I'm just throwing it out there, is yard sales. I know we're starting to get complaints on the number of yard sales, and there are different cities that have different ordinances. Long Beach has a special, can only do so many, there might be a small fee. If the Planning Commission, if that's not out of their realm, could look at yard sales. If we, I know we have discussed here about, and maybe fits along with what Joe was saying, too, with those people that have off-street parking, that they use off-street parking, I don't know if that's something we want to tackle, we want to give to the Planning Commission to look at and bring back to us. That's another one.
We should deal with it directly.
Okay, we can leave that one for ourselves. The, the, and it's a, it's a, serious, is water allocation. There is, and I've brought this up a little bit before, there's something in the terrace, Edison Terrace, that says, if you're getting a building permit from the city of Avalon, that you take it to, to the city first, and they look at the allocation. And at one point, from, when I'm looking back in history, that was what happened, is we looked at the water allocation, and then felt if it was appropriate, and dealing with Edison, moved it on, instead of, I guess, maybe they changed the policy or ignored it once we had water. But I think there's a lot of us that are more concerned about the water allocation and how it's done, so maybe a better interaction with Edison before a permit is issued. We may want to look at that, and I don't know if we want the Planning Commission to take a look at that tariff first, then go from there, and we see Amanda Cook, Planning Director, in the back, ready to jump up off her seat.
Sorry, I think what you're remembering is, at one time, the city had a cooperative agreement with Edison, where the city would not process a planning application for additional rooms or buildings without the applicant coming to the city with a will-serv letter from Edison. So they would have to go to Edison and submit Edison's water allocation forms, Edison would give them an allocation, and then we would not process their requests for entitlements until they had that will-serv letter. In 2000...
14.
I want to say 14, we changed that and said, "We're not in charge of water," and so we said we would process applicants' entitlements if they wanted to take the chance that they would get water from Edison. And I think part of the environment at that time was that we were just starting to consider the possibility of the personal desal units, and so the council felt like that would be an alternate avenue for people to get water for their projects, and it seemed prudent to make that change, that we would process their entitlements, and then they would, we would not hold up the process on their entitlements in order for them to get water. And I think that's what you're remembering, but the allocations were always issued through Edison.
The allocations, but, but is there a point where we could, barring a moratorium, is there the ability for Planning Commission or City Council to say, "No more"? I mean, is there, is, do you think there is some kind of a system where we are more involved in the process, so that allocations aren't given when, when we're concerned about the long-term effect?
My non-legal opinion is that I would think the city could see water usage as an impact of growth, and growth has always been additional bedrooms, additional hotel rooms, additional occupancy, new, never-before-in-existence businesses. And so if we said, "We're going to recognize that we don't have that resource for growth," we could address it in our growth resolution, and I think we did that to a certain point in the last resolution that we adopted. I think it mentioned water. Legally, beyond that, it might be an actual moratorium, just like we've done on vehicles. And Elizabeth can probably answer that.
I mean, a moratorium is your standard way of doing it. There's probably some other policy things that we could look at. You probably want to agendaize it, either, like you said, here or at the Planning Commission, explore some possibilities.
I don't know if that council is interested in exploring that.
Absolutely.
I mean, I think there's been other cities that have faced that challenge. I think Cambria had really restricted growth for decades because they didn't have the water resources, or the sewer capacity, or whatever their initials issue was, there just wasn't any growth, because that's what the reality of their world was, so...
Right. I guess the concern is, so we get a little rain, but if we don't have that long-term solution to our water problems, whether it be storage, reclamation, whatever the answers be, and else we get a good rain, and we're out of phase two, and then, okay, phase one, and then we end up in another drought, and now we're trying to feed more people with less water, that doesn't seem like smart growth.
Again, my opinion is...
Please.
Edison's focus is water, gas, electricity. That's what they're responsible for. But the city's responsible for the whole picture.
Yes.
We're responsible for the big picture. So I would think that if, considering taking the best decisions for the big picture, if the city thought it was in the best interest for the current quality of life to put some type of policy in place, it seems like that, like Elizabeth said, a moratorium or something similar to that might be warranted.
I mean, I would like that to be investigated at wherever level it needs to go, planning...
It's up to you guys.
I don't know if you all agree, or is there a consensus?
Yeah, I would say send it to the Planning Commission first for discussion, and then to have their findings come up to us.
See what can be provided to the Planning Commission.
What, various policies the Planning Commission would propose to restrict growth, but we've kind of done that.
To ensure that we have water.
Well, I think, I think the Planning Commission, because we have had that language in our growth ordinance in the past, I think the big question is, you need the water information, you need the data that says. And we had a capacity study done several years ago, the data, the water data, of course, is going to come from the water purveyor.
Yes.
So, and I think they have been sharing that information where they think we are, but ultimately...
So you could continue to get that information, and when you do your study, have that information to help you make those decisions?
We, you mean? We?
Well, if we want to start it at Planning Commission, and...
If you want the Planning Commission to take the current water data and propose growth policies, that would make sense, then that's an assignment that you could make.
And that is properly being placed? Okay.
And there's, I have some concerns outside of this, this town. It's just that the natural resource itself is being depleted throughout the whole island. I mean, we've got wells drying up everywhere, and we just keep feeding more and more people. I mean, not slowing anything down. Eventually, we, we're going to run out of water if we don't do something about it, and back off and understand what the data says, and why are we running out of water, why are the wells drying up? If Edison knows that, those, the answer to those questions, why aren't they telling us if that data's out there? I mean, if, and we're, we have to trust them, we need to trust them to be transparent and forthcoming with this information.
Well, if those, again, we talked about that over a month ago, if those are questions we want to put down on them, so they have the ability to, to respond, that's excellent.
Okay.
Okay.
I got those questions right here, and I'll just add that one on there.
Okay, so, okay, and did I mention the, did I, I'm repeating myself, the, because we discussed about the whole thing about off-street parking, if you have an off-street parking place, it should be used, is that something you give to the Planning Commission, or is that something we do ourselves?
Should go through the planning.
What's that?
Should go through the Planning Commission.
Planning as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that was one of the things, I think we've discussed, that should be on the, on the list for them to look at? Okay. And then the other thing is, the things like permits, you know, as, as the Vons store moves forward, and whatever, at what point do we tackle the little concepts we've talked about, well, you know, this is your house, so you get a permit, is that, should that go to the Planning Commission as well?
I guess the vehicle study.
That's the vehicles, transportation and vehicle study, but in addition to that, I did have a conversation with a member of our community yesterday, who asked, you know, is there a way to look at residential stickers or permits for particular streets? So for example, on Descanso, on Lower Descanso, you have a resident who lives there that, for three months of the year, during the day, they can't find parking anywhere near their house. And a lot of that has to do with people going to the beach and, and whatnot, so we started that conversation in transportation study, and probably should pick that back up.
Well, is that a study that we just need to hurry up in schedule and get talking about? Because it's been months.
I think so.
It's been at least six months, or whatever. Okay, so yeah, let, then let's work at scheduling another transportation meeting, because maybe we can take, again, we talked about that low-hanging fruit to kind of get us going.
Actually, I thought that was an approval, a condition of approval for the Vons store, but then I believe I talked to Al, and it wasn't a condition of approval. I know, I had mentioned that, that night.
Yeah.
Yeah, some kind of a tag or permit, you know, so that the people in the general vicinity of the Vons store would be able to have parking and find parking. I know we're designating some slots on the south side of Sumner to golf carts only. I think it's only fair that we dedicate the other side to full-size vehicles only. There's only one full-size vehicle parking in the Vons parking lot, and there's like 20 or 30, 28 or 30 golf carts, so I think we definitely need to not leave out the people with full-size vehicles. It's kind of important.
Well, those are decisions that we still have to make.
Right, so we want to sort of focus your conversation here on your desire to have a workshop or a study session...
Yes.
...on a particular topic, but not get into the specifics of the topic, because those haven't been agendized, so we haven't given the public notice that we want to talk about who's going to park where and what's going to happen.
Right.
So maybe if we can just sort of bring it back to, should we have a discussion of parking and when, or where?
So, yes, it sounds like there's a consensus. We will have a discussion about parking, and when and where. I guess we'll just have Denise come up with our calendars and see what we can come up with this. Okay? All right.
Who's this saying?
All right, and the only other thing I have is, sometimes at the council meetings, there's cell phones going on, they're quiet, but they're everywhere, and I don't know what y'all, the council feels about no cell phones during council meetings, if that's a policy, or if you just will refrain, or if, oh, hell with you, Annie, we're going to have our cell phones.
Oh, and that, that they're ringing in the audience?
No, no, here. Well, there's a lot, there's, sometimes there's the, the cell phones going off, and I don't know, I don't know. Sometimes when you hear them go, "Rr," and then, are people paying attention when they're reading their cell phones? I don't know. It's just a something.
I'll leave mine on vibrate, and I like to check it, because I have emergencies.
Okay.
I have people calling, I got 13-year-old kid, he needs something. Every once in a while, I like to look, make sure he's okay, you know?
Okay, all righty.
Mm-hmm.
Good, okay. All right, that's all I had, I'm sorry to take so long. Okay?
Denise, I just have one thing. Somebody was complaining today to me about the access, like ADA wheelchair access up by 200 block on Metropone Beacon, as you go up the sidewalk... like ADA wheelchair access up by 200 block, Metropole Beacon. As you go up the sidewalk, it's just, it's a regular sidewalk. There's no ADA access to get across the street, or right by the community church also. So the corner of the community church and Metropole and Beacon, across the street, and across the street on the Metropole side, too, on the 300 block. They have to, I would think it would be nice, especially with the museum opening up and a lot of people going through there. I would like to look, have Dennis look into that, try to see if we can get that looked at, and maybe get back to us at the next meeting and see what we think about it. The sooner the better we can get that, because there's no access. There's access going up, but you can't get to the other side. And if we could look at that. I had a couple of people complain about that.
Probably use it, we could probably use a crosswalk right there from the St. Lawrence over to the church with the curb cut. Yeah, I see people struggling all the time with that, and the vehicles just go, they keep going by, and they just disregard people that's trying to get across the street. I think that's a great point.
If we can get back to me on that, next meeting, let's see what you do. Thank you.
Before we go there, I'd like to break off into presentations. Started a program last year, which, I think it's going to catch momentum, where the city would really like to honor those young people who have graduated from an educational institution of higher learning. Some of them are here today, and for those of you that aren't here, wouldn't call your name, please know that you can come by City Hall and pick them up. We have about 16 or 17 of them here. I see a couple of people in the audience, and I do also know that 99.9% of these young people work. So any of those who could get here, they must have ditched work today for a few minutes. But, and if some of you might have your parents with you, I would like you to come up, and we'll just go to the podium. Since there's, I don't see all of the young people here, I will read the whereas's as they relate to all of you, and then I will list the specific accomplishments of each of you, recent graduates. So, here we go. And also with that, a lot of the young people that graduated this year have graduated because of the efforts of Linda Rifkin and Skiff and Santa Catalina Island Foundation. So, and I know Linda wanted to be here, but she's ill this evening, so we wish her the best. And so let me read the first whereas. Whereas it is hard to imagine the long-term benefits of a college education or a trade school when you started down this path towards higher education. College can be intimidating, the work may seem daunting, and leaving the island can seem overwhelming. And for most of these young people, they went to places like Nebraska and Utah and Texas, places that they've never been before. So I imagine leaving the island was overwhelming. And whereas, the more education you have, the more confident you'll be. As a new college graduate, when you grow out into the world to places far and wide, those in hiring positions will base an opinion of you largely on your college education. If the education on your resume looks impressive, they are more apt to see you as a hard-working, competent young person. And whereas, the best of all things is to learn, the best of all things is to learn. Money can be stolen, strength may fail, but what you have learned is yours forever. Believe in yourself, in your talent and skills, which have brought you to this special day. Now therefore, we, the Avalon City Council, do hereby recognize and congratulate. The first one, I will be giving it to Alexander Moran on his graduation from Emerson College with a degree in writing for film and television, and extend to him our highest commendation for the dedication he has shown towards his education. And excepting on his behalf is his proud father Dudley. Thank you. And again, the Avalon City Council does hereby recognize and congratulate Nicholas Maronis on his graduation from Co-College with a degree in K-12 physical education, along with the State of Iowa Coaching endorsement, and extend to him our highest commendation. Alessandra Martinelli, I think her mother was going to try to make it, but he, she graduated from Bard College at St. Simon's Rock in 2013. She went there as a junior, so finished her high school and two years of college in those two years. And her graduation from Columbia University School of Engineering and Applied Sciences in 2015, and we extend again our highest commendation. And I'm sorry, I don't know all the young people in Avalon, but we would also like to acknowledge Alexander Rocky Campos. Is he here? Are you picking up for him, Papa? On his graduation from the College of Idaho with a double major in Spanish and Business Administration, along with a double minor in History and Physical Education, and extend to him our highest commendation. And the Avalon City Council would like to acknowledge Elizabeth Ewart on her graduation from the College of Idaho with a degree in Education, and for her pursuit of a teaching credential for Special Education from California State University, Long Beach, and we extend to her our highest commendation, and thank you, Joelle. And she's working. And we would, Joelle is one of, the second finger on the hand of Skiff, so we thank her for everything that she does. Thank you, Joelle. Do we have Reina Verhan here? On her graduation from Cotty College with a degree in International Business, and extend to her our highest commendation. And we'd like to recognize Colin Eubank on his graduation from Bard College at Simon's Rock with degrees in Political Studies and Cross-Cultural Relations, and to extend to him our highest commendation. Keep clapping. Elizabeth Silva on her gradu, oh, here we go. Thank you. We'd like to recognize Elizabeth Silva on her graduation from Ripon College with a degree in Sociology and a minor in Spanish, and to extend to her our highest commendation. Thank you. Congratulations. And to Monica Perez on her, oh, there you are. On her, congratulations. Come and face the group. On her graduation from Co-College with degrees in Art and Spanish, and extend to her our highest commendation. Congratulations. Okay, and I just saw Letty's mother walked in the door. So we'd like to, again, Alessandra Martinelli for her graduation from Bureaucracy College in Simon Rocks, and her graduation from Columbia University for the School of Engineering and Applied Science in 2015. Congratulations. And to Yedder Elizabeth Bastida Tovar on her graduation from Cotty College with a degree in Psychology, extend our congratulations to her as well. Julian Jimenez on his graduation from the University of California, Berkeley, with a major in Political Economics and a minor in History, and extend to him our highest commendation. Leonardo Garcia on his graduation from New Mex, see, these kids have been all over the place. New Mexico Highlands University with a degree in Business Management, and for his pursuit of a master's degree in Finance. And hopefully, he will come back and work for the city of Avalon someday. Janaya Dominguez, who I think just walked in the door, come on up. On her graduation from Ohio Wesleyan, Wesleyan College in 2014 with a degree in Psychology, and to extend to her our highest commendation. And as you all know, she is working up at our clinic in Field of Social Service. So welcome. Thank you so much. Sadie Marie Parsons on her graduation from Ohio Wesleyan University with a degree in Geology and Environmental Education. So Joseph, she'll be looking for you, because she's a geologist. That's really in Environmental Studies. That's good. And we extend to her our highest commendation. Jessica Silva on her graduation from, aha, there she is, graduation, so you have two.
Yes.
Two. You got to be the most proud Papa in the whole wide world. And you're working on three?
Three twins.
Excellent.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, that is beautiful. Jessica Silver on her graduation from Ripon College with a degree in Business Management, and to extend our highest commendation to you, and congratulations. Where are you working this summer?
I am working at the hospital right now.
Awesome. Yes. Okay, thank you. Congratulations. Stephanie Bastida on her graduation from Co-College with degrees in Psychology and Spanish, we extend to her our highest commendation as well. And Adeline Casillas on her graduation from Co-College with degrees in Psychology and Spanish. There you are, Mama. Adeline, congratulations on her graduate, Co-College, Psychology and Spanish, and we extend our highest commendation. And what are you doing this summer?
Oh, no, I'm her sister, but she's...
Oh, you're her sister?
Yeah. She's on, she's working in Anaheim as a behavioral therapist.
Excellent. All righty. Thank you. And did we forget anybody? I hope not. If we have, and the rest of you that are out there, if you see how wonderful this is and you would like to participate, just give us a call at City Hall with your name, your degree, area of study, and the year you graduated, and we'd love to commend you as well for all your accomplishments. Thank you very much. Presentations.
Mayor Marshall, I'd just like to point out to the public that this evening, when we did roll call, I forgot to introduce Elizabeth Hole, who has been here several times with us. But in case the public hasn't seen her before, she's here this evening for Scott Campbell, and we welcome her back. And tonight, for our first presentation, we have Sean Hagerty from Best, Bestin, Krieger, and he'll be doing a presentation on residential desalination units.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and staff and the public. My name's Sean Hagerty. As Denise just mentioned, I'm a partner with Best, Bestin, Krieger. I do work in the area of water quality. And relevant to the issues we're going to be talking about tonight, I do a lot of work in desalination issues. Most recently, I worked for the city of Santa Barbara when they restarted their plant that had been mothballed since the 1990s, and they're in the process of getting that back up and running. And I helped with the process to get their permitting renewed for that facility. I've also had the great pleasure to work for the city of Avalon on water quality issues, particularly with the wastewater treatment plant and the bay. And the city is really to be commended for all the efforts that you've put into cleaning up the bay. And if you've, as I know you have followed the testing, it's improving every year, and it's really because of the leadership of the city and that that's occurred. So you're really to be commended for that.
And let me ask, can the audience hear him?
No.
No. Is there a way to turn him up? Oh, okay. All righty.
Give him the hand mic.
Oh, yeah.
How's that?
That's probably better. Yeah, just keep the mic to your mouth. Yeah.
There you go.
So tonight, I'm going to speak to you about the city's saltwater distribution system, and specifically, some of the challenges associated with attempting to use that system for purposes other than toilet flushing and fire suppression, which is the purposes that that system exists. And as you know, the city owns and operates a saltwater distribution system. It's used for those particular purposes of fire suppression and toilet flushing. Not surprisingly, on an island, in the conditions that you are facing, which are dire, and we all recognize that, and particularly with the sailing community that you have and the knowledge that the community has about, you know, taking seawater and using it for human consumption. It's not surprising that people in the community say, well, wait, why can't we use a system that we have that delivers seawater to our home? Why can't we use existing reverse osmosis systems that are out there, hook them up, and provide water for human consumption? And so I understand why that question would arise under the conditions that the city finds itself in. And we have worked really hard with city staff, with regulators that would deal with this kind of a request or to develop a city program along these lines. And we've worked for more than a year to try to find solutions to this problem, and to find a way to use the city system for this important purpose. And unfortunately, I'm here tonight to give you a report that after much effort, a lot of work with the regulators, a lot of analysis, at least we have concluded based upon all of our collective work, that the city cannot have a program where it provides saltwater distribution to private residences for use for private desalination facilities. And I'm going to explain to you tonight the conclusions that we've reached, the basis of those conclusions. And, you know, I think the overall message that I'm hoping to deliver tonight is that, you know, we have explored this issue, we've worked with the people who would have to permit this process. The conclusion is that we've reached, and that the regulators have told us, is that this is a dead end for the city. And what we're hoping to do tonight is explain why it's a dead end, so there's an understanding, there's transparency around that, but encourage other options that might be out there. And in the end, you know, the city's already invested a lot of time and money pursuing this issue and trying to solve this problem. It's proven to be something that is a dead end. And so it would be better, and at least in my opinion, based upon this analysis, to look for other sources and other ways to try to work your way out of this really dire situation that you're in. And the nice thing that, the one message that is nice from talking to the State Board and the Division of Drinking Water, is they understand the city's problem, and they're very willing to work with the city and with Edison to try to come up with solutions. But the message that I'm delivering tonight, and that I've heard loud and clear from them, is that this particular idea is not the solution that they're going to support. So let me walk you through why we've reached that opinion, starting with just a basic overview of the system itself. As you know, there's a seawater intake in Avalon Bay. I'll show you some pictures of that in a bit. The seawater is then conveyed to the booster station, it's pumped up to some reservoirs, and then it's distributed back down through a very significant piping system. And there's a lot of water that runs through that system on a daily basis. So here's just a depiction of where the water comes from in Avalon Bay. And then this just shows the distribution system itself as it works its way back down to the homes and the community. Now, the, one starting point for thinking about actually extending this type of system to a water supply source is to think about what the legislature thinks about this kind of a system as it exists today. And there is a water code provision that's really specific to Avalon, and that was actually supported by the city of Avalon back in 1995, where the legislature had said, this kind of system using seawater for this particular purpose of toilet flushing and fire suppression is, at a policy level, at the state level, by the legislature, has been declared something that is really not supported, because it has corrosive effects on the system, and that the whole idea of this legislation is to try to move from this kind of a system to potentially reusing wastewater for similar purposes. So instead of using saltwater, use recycled water for toilet flushing and other purposes. But, you know, it's just an interesting starting point that the water code itself, specific to Avalon really, says that this kind of system, as it exists today, is not favored. So what we did then is take a look at each component of the distribution system, and try to look at the laws that would apply to that component of the system, and then try to find solutions for the city to make this work. And again, unfortunately, what we found in working with the regulators and looking at the law and the regulations is that really at every step in the system, from the intake to the distribution for human consumption, to the way it connects to the homes, and how the plumbing code works, to your existing service provider through Edison, and the laws on duplication of services within a community, and then the discharge issues. Really, at every step of the process, there are legal impediments to allowing a city program that would supply seawater and then use decentralized desalination facilities to turn that into water use for human consumption. So let's start with the intake. So let's start with the intake. The Ocean Plan, which governs taking water in from the ocean and water quality in the ocean, it's a State Board adopted document, State Water Board adopted document, and that was amended in 2015, basically to deal specifically with desalination facilities. And it really developed a whole new regime about desalination, and the whole purpose of it was to protect the marine life, and not only marine life in terms of, you know, larger fish and other species, but really just all the abundance of life that exists, even in a small drop of water within the ocean. And the regulations deal with, primarily with either impingement, where species get pushed up against the intake system, or what's called entrament, where species get sucked in and they die within the desalination facility. And so, this new body of regulation, and the regulations and all the backup materials like this thick was adopted, and it really will change fundamentally how desalination is done in California. And so, the question here is, while we have this intake, how would the Ocean Plan apply to that, particularly if we were using the intake and the water for human consumption? And I'll show you some slides in a second about the changes that potentially would be required if we kind of went down this route. And the other component is, the Coastal Commission has a role when there's a facility intake in the water, and there's, you know, no guarantee that if we made a change or extended the use of the system, the Coastal Commission would be supportive of that. Again, this is just a general depiction of the intake, and then here's a more specific depiction, and as you can see, it's what the Ocean Plan refers to as an open water intake. So it's just, basically, it's a perforated pipe in the bay, and water comes in and out, and so, you know, marine life can come in and out of that facility and be sucked into the distribution system. Here's a couple of different views of that. Now, this slide is a little hard to get all the detail of it, but basically, this is, these are the types of intake systems that the Ocean Plan would, is requiring now for new facilities. And so, basically, it's very complicated, things like slant wells, where wells are drilled from land to go under and then bring in ocean water, or these things called infiltration galleries, where basically, the bottom of the ocean is dug up, and galleries are put in, and sand is put back, and then water filtrates through the sand into these infiltration galleries. And so, you know, if you compare this kind of a facility with what the Ocean Plan is thinking about and contemplating, you can see that there will be some challenges if the city went to try to distribute the water, seawater, for human consumption. So that's step one. And step two is, okay, well, even if we were to tackle that problem and find a way to deal with the question of whether the Ocean Plan would allow the city to do what it wanted to do, what about the Safe Drinking Water Act? Because under this idea, even though you would basically, you know, you have an existing system, and it is distributing seawater to residences, it's not for the purpose of human consumption, it's for toilet flushing and fire suppression. If you were to change that and specifically have a program where you knowingly were providing water to individuals to consume, then the Safe Drinking Water Act, which is both a federal law, and then there's a state equivalent, would come into play. And the kind of program that would be contemplated here would really convert your seawater distribution system into a public water system, because it would be knowingly distributing water for human consumption, and therefore, that would trigger the requirements of the Safe Drinking Water Act. And a major requirement of the Safe Drinking Water Act is to get a permit. You have to have a permit to distribute water for this purpose. And to do that, you would have to meet state drinking water, state and federal drinking water standards. And of course, here, we have a system where we just take the water in and bring it to the homes, and so, we're not, and could not, under our current system, without building a treatment plant to treat the water, or a separate desalination facility, we don't have the ability to meet drinking water standards. And so, we really could not, under current conditions, meet the requirements that would be necessary to get a permit to distribute water for this particular purpose. Now, we did look into some options that are at least recognized in concept under the Safe Drinking Water Act, and that's treatment systems that are either called point-of-use, so it's actually where you use the water, or point-of-entry, it's where the water enters into the structure. And there can be ways to have somewhat of a decentralized facility where you do the treatment at the point-of-use or the point-of-entry. And so, in concept, that seems to fit here, but on exploring it more, there were hurdles to that as well, because among other requirements that we've concluded the city could not meet, a major one would be, the city would have to own, control, or maintain all of the different facilities. And, you know, in concept, at least, as it's been presented to me, and I've heard it discussed, the idea would be, really, it would be up to the individual to purchase the RO unit and use it. Here, you would actually have to, it would be a city program. I mean, you'd have to own the RO units, you'd have to make sure that they were working right, you would have to test them, because if you think about it, I mean, you would be providing water that people are going to drink and use for cooking and bathing, and all those things, which we all want, and if we could make it happen, we would make it happen, but the city would basically be saying, "This water would be fit for these purposes." And to do that, then you would have to make sure that that's the case, and if you weren't meeting standards, there would be implications for the city. So really, this is probably the biggest hurdle here. In speaking directly with the head of the department that would issue this permit, she indicated that this would basically be a hurdle that the city couldn't get over. But let's say we could get over that hurdle, we could get over the intake, we could get over that one, there's still other hurdles, and the next one is connections to the home, because there are requirements under the plumbing code that currently exist within the city that would prohibit the piping of this non-potable water for potable water use. So there would be a hurdle there. And then, the other issue is backflow requirements, because if you're entering into seawater and then it's being converted to water for human consumption, there is potential for an interaction between the Edison water supply system and this water. And to make sure that there would be not cross-contamination, you'd have to have backflow prevention, so that there would be no way that this water from these RO units could get, somehow get into the Edison water supply, because if that happened, there could be significant implications for everyone's water supply, and so, you'd have to meet backflow requirements as well. Another issue that we found that would be an impediment that the city would have to work through is something called service duplication, and that's specifically in the Public Utilities Code, the sections reference there. But basically, what this requirement says is that, a city, if you extend water service to an area that's currently served by a private utility, that action could be deemed a taking, because the idea is that that private utility has, over time, invested time and money to build out an infrastructure, and then if you come in and sort of duplicate that service, the code section says that could constitute a taking of that private utility's property, because you're taking away the value of their investment in the system. And again, this is something that the legislature has said is, you know, is the requirement that needs to be followed, and so, if you were to duplicate a system where you were using your saltwater distribution system and providing it for human consumption, there would be at least an argument that this code section would come into play, and there could be at least potential liability to the city for that reason. The final issue that we identified is the discharge. So if this were a widespread process, and residents who wish to use it throughout the city were using these systems, then there would be a more concentrated discharge of rine back into the sewer system. And the city already has some challenges with the amount of saltwater within the system, and, you know, there could be a point where the city's ability to treat its wastewater would become into question because of the salinity of, in the collection system, and the adverse effects that that may have on the treatment process. And so, there would be some concern about the city's MPDES permit and its ability to comply with that permit if this were a widespread program. And a minimum, it would certainly require some negotiation discussion with the regional board on the nature of the effluent that's leaving the city's treatment plant. So, in the end, our conclusion, working with the regulators, is that the city on its own is not able to, under current law and regulation, use the saltwater distribution system for this decentralized residential desalination process. In thinking about this, and again, trying to find a solution, the one thing we did explore, where there seemed to be some potential regulatory basis, was to basically allow Edison to, and the term, the term is wheeling, to sort of take water that it produces, saltwater that it produces, and run it through the city's system, and then they could go to the CPUC potentially and get some permitting, because a lot of the issues might drop out. They have their own well, as you know, so the intake issues wouldn't be the same, they have, you know, existing ability to supply water, so there would be, that some of the issues identified there would be addressed. And so, that was something we pursued and discussed with Edison. It was really kind of in racking our brains, the one thing we were able to come up with and try to find a solution. But in the end, what we heard from Edison in talking with them is, you know, they're, it's better for them to try to use their saltwater for their existing desalination facility. And, you know, I know there's work being done, they have a new, a new component to that facility, I don't think that's been maximized yet, we need to kind of continue to explore that, but the idea of taking Edison's saltwater and running it through our system for individual use, rather than for the greater good of the community through the larger supply system, I think in the end was not something that Edison thought was prudent to pursue. That may be something you could talk with them more about, but certainly, we did, and that was the response that we got. And so, in the end, I had the unfortunate opportunity to come and deliver this bad news to you, and it's not something that we, you know, certainly wish to deliver to the council, and I think, as Denise can attest, we did work very hard to try to find a solution here. But really, breaking it down and looking at the regulations and talking to the people who would actually make the decisions, in terms of our, the city's ability to do this, we've concluded that it's not something that the city can pursue. And again, the only bright spot in any of this that I'm delivering to you is the recognition by the State Board, and specifically, the head of the Division of Drinking Water, that they understand that Avalon is in a crisis and needs help, and they're willing to do what they can do to help, and specifically, expediting things and trying, you know, every available legal alternative, but the loud and clear message was, this is not something that's going to forward the goals of the city and certain that the State Board is going to support. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any question that the council may have.
But somebody like the State Board, if they're empathetic to problems all over everywhere right now, but they can't come back with, "This is the model that would work for you", instead of us having to go out and research, I mean, they don't have any technologies that they can bring to us to make our job easier, or do we just have to play hunt and pack?
Well, I mean, the very specific, where they're most focused right now is maximizing the Edison's new desalination facility. And, you know, when you use expedite and State Board together, they usually don't really equate very well, and so, you know, I'm sure the community is thinking, "How is that expediting the process by whatever period of time it took to get the permitting that Edison now has?" So, you know, it does take time, these things are hard, and if you think of it from the regulator's perspective, again, it's, this is water that people are drinking, and there are serious implications for that, so...
Right.
But that was the clear message from them, is that, you know, while they didn't have a silver bullet solution to propose to us, they are willing to work with the city and with Edison to try to find solutions to the problem.
Well, for example, the dehumidifier, for lack of a better word, that was something that was not approved, because I know the museum tried to get that, and that couldn't make it past State Water Quality Control Board, so that's why I'm saying, okay, if they know what is, what does work, because they've been in business a lot longer than we have been trying to find water solutions, I don't know, it seems like they could say, "Well, why don't you try this?", or, "This is what we've done here", you know, instead of us, like I say, having to rack our brains looking for solutions. They don't have solutions, they just have rules.
Well, I think that's, yeah, I mean, again, the solution that was kind of clearest in terms of my discussions with them was that they are absolutely willing to support and work with the city and Edison to maximize the use of the desalination facility that Edison has.
Right, and that's about...
And they think that's the, you know, from their perspective at least, that was, is the kind of the quickest way to get to an augmented water supply.
Right.
Where does this put us with the current systems that are in place and running? There are a handful that are already in town running.
Right, so, we have heard that. To my knowledge, unless I'm informed otherwise, I'm not aware of any city-specific approval of those systems, and so, for some of the reasons that we've talked about, in the end, it's really an issue that Edison would have to address, because of the backflow issue that we talked about. It may be something that they are concerned about or should be concerned about, but at least from my perspective, that is not a city-specific issue. It would become a city-specific issue if we sort of made this a city program and blessed it, or had blessed that, but to my knowledge, we haven't done that, and so, really, it's an issue that Edison should deal with, if at all.
Okay.
Yeah, but it is, it is our issue, because we have to process the byproduct.
True.
And it is mentioned in here that it's high in salinity.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a good point. I mean, if the city became aware of sort of a widespread use of private RO systems that had an adverse effect on our discharge system, you're absolutely right. I mean, to my knowledge, it hasn't risen to that level yet. The concern, if you did a widespread use of this through the city program, it would rise to that level, but you're right, that because of the discharge, it's something that cities should certainly monitor, and if it became a problem on the discharge side, it should be something you'd be involved in, but...
How do you monitor something you don't know? I mean, anybody can have them. You can get, you can get a desalination unit that fits in a briefcase this big.
Yep.
Everybody can have them.
Yep.
There's no way, it's impossible. But what could help us is the reclamation system, correct?
Right.
I mean, that we're starting to work on now, I mean, so that we could possibly phase out saltwater all the way around, I mean, but would we have the same problem there with, I mean, would this Public Utilities Commission come back in and say, "Well, you can't have your, your standard of your reclaimed water is not high enough for us"? I mean, I mean, it's frustrating, this Public Utilities Commission, it doesn't seem like they're helping us, I mean, I understand they're, they have to protect the general public, but we are the general public. We need, we need water, we, big time, I mean, they're...
Absolutely.
It's kind of frustrating right now, because they're not giving us answers, they're just putting up roadblocks for us.
I absolutely agree. I mean, and, you know, the one thing, you know, they clearly would be more receptive to the recycle water situation, but I don't want to mislead the council at all, I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna be problems with getting approval for that as well. I mean, I think that's more likely to happen, because that's where the California is going. That legislation that I had put up earlier, basically, again, specific to Avalon, was designed to have a pilot project where you think about switching the saltwater out and using recycle water. So I think there's already a good legislative basis for that. I think that's gonna happen more quickly than any other thing, but you're, you're right, it's, there are gonna be problems with that as well.
It seems like the problems with reclaimed could even have more deleterious results. I mean, because what they're proposing is to put... I mean, because what they're proposing is to put the reclaimed water back into the ground. Now, that's scary to me, because what if that water, it's redistributed, it back into the ground, contaminates the underground water system? Then it's destroyed forever. I mean, the ocean basically heals itself. I mean, it's a big ocean, and, you know, I'm not saying it's great for the ocean, but it's, it has, it has a more forgiving effect to have that. It's just more expensive to keep up the system, our saltwater system, the way, the way we process the salt, the brine at the sewer treatment plant, because it's hard on the mechanical, you know, aspect.
Absolutely.
I appreciate your hard work, but I have more questions now than I ever had.
I know, and, and, you know, we'll, we will continue to work with the city and work on solutions, and, you know, I think, I know, you know, as I said, we've been working on this for a while. I know the community's been thinking about this for a long time, and I can completely, as I mentioned before, understand why, you know, these things are available, why can't I go get it? Why can't I just hook up to the system? But the clear message is, this is, this is a dead, this specific idea is a dead end, and there, there has to be other ideas that are explored. And I think there are, there are more viable ideas than, than sort of going down a dead-end street over and over again.
So you, can you help us out with those more viable ideas? I mean, can you put us on track here? Can you help us? Is this something that we need to tell you what to do? I mean, because we can do that. If we need to help put BB&amp;K on track to help us find a solution for this, somehow give us some input, that's where we need to go from here. I mean, we're reaching out.
Yeah.
The people of Avalon are spending a lot of money on legal counsel for, for, you know, to find solutions for this, so.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, let's find an answer.
Absolutely.
Dennis has some great ideas, and I think we're gonna go forward with some of those. And it has to do with reclaimed water. I mean, we're looking at it, that is, if it finds, finds to be okay with the rest of the council, that is, I'm for it.
Sean, do we consider it succession from the union, home or own country?
This, I would be, I was thinking like the Brexit, it's the Avalon, I don't know, you have to come up with the acronym for that, but, yeah. No, it's, I mean, as we, I mentioned before, it's, this is not something I welcome coming. I like talking about the water quality improvements, and you have had amazing successes there. That's the fun stuff to talk about. This stuff is obviously, you know, water, everyone needs water, it's a vital resource. We need to help figure it out. This is not the answer.
Yeah. Thanks.
And let's see, is somebody from the community, anybody want to comment or ask a question? Hi, Allison. Oh, we've got a couple, so we got Allison coming in first.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, Sean.
Okay. What I just heard was a bunch of bureaucratic gobbledygook that's protecting Edison's monopoly. This is not an answer. We've been asking this for two years, and that's what you came up with? So I'm gonna go back to my original suggestion. If there's no regulation in the bay, why don't we just put something in the bay again and start pumping water out of the bay directly? That was, you know, and I suggested, why don't we get a temporary desalination plan and stick it at Pebbley Beach? I know you thought it was a dumb idea, and guess what? We've got a temporary desalination plan at Pebbley Beach. It was a good idea after all, wasn't it? So let's do this. This makes no sense. You're not gonna do anything to the 20-some people who have systems installed already. And if that's the case, I'm going to Home Depot this week and installing my own. It's easy to do, you're right, I can bring a suitcase back, and you'd never know I did it. But in the meantime, I can be sitting out there on my boat and bringing water back every day to solve this problem, because there's no regulation in our bay. And if we'd ever get those dock carts, Denise, there'd be some way to actually bring them in. So, you know, let's look at a solution here. This is ridiculous. That took two years to get an answer that basically we can't do it, when everyone, all of our Southern California is doing this. So I think there's still a way, and we need some help from them to determine what isn't an obstacle to doing this. I think there's plenty of ways we could be doing something about this, and doing something soon, because we're gonna be out of water really soon. And some of us are sick and tired of these restrictions, I mean, not taking baths, not having guests over, because you can't afford the water. So let's hear something positive from them, not just negatives.
Pete Edwards, 117 Beedaloo. We started out, we've got Jim and Ann Johnson who are here, we're trying to build a home for, and we've got Pete and Kathy Savage, another client that we are trying to build a home for. And we started doing this under the, with Ben Harvey, and there was some discussion about this, you know, trying to do some other water system on their own to provide them water temporarily until such time as Edison provided waters, which made all kinds of sense, and there was a lot of moving and shaking, and there was some of this discussion about the sewer treatment plant was getting 200,000 gallons a day from seawater through the low-flow diverters, the backflow preventers that were not working. That has apparently been mitigated, which would more than cover any, any brine. Anyway, apparently that doesn't make any difference, it won't work. And I understand that when I was a child, my parents read me a little storybook called The Little Engine That Couldn't. So I understand how, you know, it's hard to get anything done, and it's so much regulatory loopholes to jump through. By the time my children are my age, they'll probably need a public hearing to go out to dinner. So this was such an obvious no-brainer, because saltwater was already in the, piped into the house, was going to be at the, at the risk of the homeowner to make their own drinking water, because the company who was hired to supply the drinking water somehow could not do so. So, and it was gonna be much more expensive for the homeowner to do so. It was a weight, they were going out of their way to do it, since the utility provider couldn't do it. So I understand there's a tremendous amount of legality, there's a lot of permitting, and a lot of reasons that it cannot be done. And so, you know, it's not really, it shouldn't be up to the individual homeowner to provide their own utilities. They shouldn't have to get a generator to make their own electricity. So boils right back down to Edison's the water purveyor, they seem to stick their foot down, it's their, their water, their right, go ahead. I could frankly give a shit how it gets done, but if it's their job, go ahead. Shouldn't be Jim and Ann Johnson's job to do it. And I completely understand all this. Okay, go ahead. Figure it out, make some water. And that is your people's job. You are the only people who stand between the citizens of Avalon, who do not have water, and those that are in theory somehow supposed to provide it. If Edison decided that they didn't have enough diesel fuel and weren't gonna make any electricity till next week, is that okay? So, you know, I, these people were trying to go out of their way to make their own drinking water until such time as it could be provided for them. And they're still willing to do so. The, the one question is, is Edison own the moisture that's in the air? He's willing to put in a drinkable air system, which takes fresh water out of the air. There is no effluent. There's no discharge. Is that a crime? Is that a solution?
Well, and to, to that, that I commented earlier, that's what the museum wanted to do, and the state water quality, when they wanted to permit that, state water quality control boards, that they could not.
That is also a public building.
That's because it's a public building, correct.
This is a private operation here. And, and that's expensive. He's only doing that because he can't hook up the water.
Right.
He's not getting water. And so that shouldn't necessarily be on his back either. So, you know, we're, we're doing, you know, whatever we can as small people, individuals, to make this happen at great expense, and now that is no longer available. I get it, he didn't make the rules. There's, I probably took him so long to find all of them that he's probably tired, so. You know, I don't know what, what to do. You are the people that were dumb enough, frankly, to run for city council and are standing right in the middle of it. It's your job. You're the only people left, so thank you for doing it, and sorry you're doing it, same time. But it's, it's up to you to figure out something, or at least push some buttons or lean on somebody to get something done.
I think that's why we're sitting here right now, and why we've paid an exorbitant amount of money to have BB&amp;K and Sean Haggerty do this research.
Yeah, I get it.
So now he's given us his findings.
I know.
So, you know, we've been waiting for, for however long for this meeting to get the findings, and now we're here.
And I know.
So it doesn't mean that we haven't done anything.
No, I know, and it's disappointing news, and it's like, okay, it's like, it would take, you know.
It's disappointing, I agree with you there.
Sure.
But you, but you have brought up a very good point that I'd like to ask Sean about. I understand with the museum that the, because it's a commercial establishment, and because they're responsible for what they're serving to the public, so to speak, is there any, any provision that we could get through Department of Drinking Water for, for residential units? I mean, you're not serving to the public, you're not responsible, so to speak.
Why should it even be regulated?
Well, I agree with that, but, I mean, do we have the right to just say, hey, everybody, go do this as much as you want?
Buy a little machine, put it in your house, and drink the water out of it. That's not really anybody else's responsibility, other than the guy that made the machine and the guy who's drinking the water. I mean, I don't think we need to get North Korea involved in this whole thing. So.
When you got mismanagement, I believe it's gotten to a point of neglect. We pushed hard, I pushed as hard as I could with Edison. I mean, actually pissing people off, saying, oh, he's, he's not a nice man.
I believe you've done that.
Yeah, I've done it. I've done it. That's probably a big reason why we have that desalination unit, is because, the one, the new one, you have to get pissed at them sometimes, and it's not a fun job, but how, how, how much can we actually push them? We, we need to push them more, because we're running out of water. I mean, we seem to be able to open museums, which, it's great, we have a museum now.
Where did that water come from?
Same, you know, same place. We're building more houses, which is okay. Where's the water coming from? We're irrigating vineyards, where does that water come? We have more visitors on the west end of Catalina than we ever have, and that's all water that's coming right out of the ground. This is, this is the base, Avalon is the basis of every business that functions on Catalina, so it's, it's a problem that we all share.
Yeah. And then we feel that our business is no less important than anybody else's business. I employ people, they have to pay the rent and, you know, buy food and all that, just like anything else, so that it's.
Yeah, but what's going on down there, on the other end of the island, is affecting us here.
Sure.
It all does. I mean, we should all be in this, we have a vested interest, we gotta consolidate what's going on here.
Yeah.
I believe there's an answer here. I appreciate the, the research that Sean has done. I mean, it gets us past this point to where now we know, okay, we can't do that anymore, not necessarily.
So why can't a guy go out on his own boat and make water and drink it? Is there some, is that?
Maybe that is the idea, is put a big bar right out in the harbor.
The only difference.
And you just pipe it right in.
Well, I mean, I don't know, I mean, that's probably never mind. That's, it'd take too long to answer that question.
I totally appreciate your passion.
I don't, I mean, anyway, I'm sort of, I don't want to babble, but I'm just saying is that it's a serious problem, not, that's not big news. Somebody has to come up with a solution, and just as you people went out of your way to become city council members, Edison is the people that are providing us with water. They're just not, but they ought to be, if they can't, if they can't let him make his own.
Well, they've been trying to get rid of the water, now they can't get rid of it, so.
I know, it's not a convenient business to have at the moment.
But I don't think it's babbling, I think it's brainstorming, for sure, because your opinion is very well-respected, and, and I'd like to hear from you. Absolutely, I appreciate your passion and your drive, and giving us inspiration to find the, the answer, and we will. I mean, I'm pushing as hard as I can without really just.
Annoying the hell out of everybody, but sometimes you have to do that.
Getting thrown out.
But, I don't know, I mean, again, I don't know what the answer is, but.
So, I still have a question on the table. Sean, could you, could you let us know your thoughts on whether or not we could approach this from a residential perspective, rather than an overall perspective?
What, council member, what I would suggest, if, if it's okay, because, you know, my charge here tonight was to answer a specific question, and really, as, as Councilmember Sampson said, sort of give you an answer to get you past an issue, and, and then look at other options. And so, I don't want to say anything here tonight that sort of spins off into another whole round of, maybe that's the solution. My, my recommendation to you would be, and I'm happy to do it, Scott or others within the firm, I'm, we can come back, if we need to come back immediately at the next meeting, and provide you with some viable options that at least we can identify.
Yes.
I know that's been done, you know, or at least, you know, my charge here tonight is really to answer this specific question. I really don't want to kind of start into some hypotheticals here without some certainty that there are viable options for you to explore, and then get direction on how you, as a council, want, wish us to go, if you wish us to go anywhere.
I think that's a very positive solution, is for the council to give direction to staff to work with BB&amp;K on coming back at the earliest possible meeting, the next meeting if you could, but if not, the, the one following with some solutions.
Well, and I think, and right now, the most immediate would be short-term viable options.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
And then, and I do, the dehumidifier option is definitely one that.
It will be on the list that we definitely consider, absolutely.
Dennis has been patiently waiting in the back, let's see what he wants to talk about. Thank you, Sean.
Good evening. Yeah, I think what everybody might be missing is that Sean's study was for the viability of introducing desal into the saltwater system. The residential systems are still up and could be viable option. That hasn't been studied yet, as far as I know. But the good news is, the recycled water energy sustainability report is finished.
Great.
You all directed us to do the study, we have it done, and it's posted on the city's website. If you go to the city's website and click the resources tab, you'll have the whole study. It's been reviewed by Edison, they've been a valuable partner here, Island Company, and other stakeholders. We're real proud of this report. This, we're hoping, should have been implemented years ago on this island, is gonna be introduced into that saltwater system in five years, if you allow it. We're gonna be presenting it to you in the first year, it's gonna be a five-year phased-in project. It's gonna hopefully start in 16, 17. We're gonna ask you to approve a portion of this, a five-year plan. I urge you and the public to get on, get on the website, take a look at it, it is exciting. In essence, the treatment plant is gonna process the wastewater a little bit more and be able to pump it back over here into our saltwater system, and eventually into each home. We're gonna be able to water our plants, wash our golf carts, hose off whatever we need to. The only thing we can't do with this water is drink it.
Water what?
Drink it, it's not potable.
The what?
Drink it.
Oh, drink it, yeah, okay.
It's not gonna be potable water, it's reclaimed water. And it can be used for irrigation, golf courses, cemetery, wherever we need. It's gonna put less of a demand on fresh water. Plus, it's gonna help our saltwater system with the decaying fittings and piping and everything. Anyway, it's finally here, I promised it a month and a half ago, but we got it, it's on the website. Please, it's exciting, take a look at it, I think you'll be pleased. Thank you, yes.
And I just got confused, right before you went into the good news, did you?
Yeah, I got confused too, because effectively what you're saying is, is that we're, we're moving away from a saltwater system.
Yeah, well, let me, I, because at least I heard him, my message tonight is different than what Dennis just said.
Right, right, yeah.
But, but, you know, the good news is, if, if that, you know, reclaimed water can be used for this purposes, it, you know, will have some additional offsets in terms of, you know, what demand for water, potable water demand. Is it gonna solve everything? No, not at all. But is it gonna be a start in a, in a better direction? I think so. Obviously, I need to read the study, I haven't read it. But yeah, I wanted to clarify that too, because my, my message is, residential desal supplied by the city is not a viable option.
Right. Okay, and then let me ask another question.
Yes, ma'am.
Those little flapper things, I don't know what you call them.
We, we purchased them, and they're gonna be installed soon.
Flapper valves?
Yes, they're duct bill gates down on the bay. They're gonna limit the brine and salinity intrusion into the saltwater system.
And once those are in, will we be able to judge how much saltwater that's coming through that versus what's coming through with just a regular saltwater flow from our butt?
We can guess, but this is gonna limit it almost completely.
I mean, we were thinking there was maybe a couple hundred thousand gallons a day or something crazy like that.
It probably is now, with the high tide. It probably is now, with a high tide of about 200,000 a day that the treatment plant has to deal with.
So over some kind of a monthly average, we might be able to see how much that's reduced?
Yes. Yeah. For clarity, the council had both of us going on different tangents, whether to bring in desalination into the saltwater system, or reclaimed water. And that's what this is, the reclaimed water study, okay? Any other questions?
Okay, thanks, Dennis.
Thanks, Dennis.
And if anybody else out there in television land has viable option?
Good evening. My name is Jim Johnson, and we're under construction on a house on Olive Street with Pete. We began construction because we understood that you were very close to getting an agreement with desalinization for individual houses. And now, I'm not sure, are you, or are you not somewhere near approval for us to take water out of the air, to make our own water? I mean, where, where are we? Because we're under construction on a house that's very expensive to us, and we will finish, hopefully, before the end of the year, and we'd like to occupy that house. We're willing to buy our own equipment and make our own water out of the air, not put saltwater or brine into the system. We're not going to take anything out of it, all we want is approval to do that. And this is very important to us. We have been, years ago, I worked for the old Irvine Company in the early 70s, and I consulted with the Island Company about real estate development, residential, and other things. One of my clients, I formed a CPA firm, one of my clients took over the garbage disposal system and started, what was the name of it? The Bird. What was it? Yeah. Seagull Sanitation. And so we came over, and my wife and I said, hey, if we ever get a little found money, let's find a place over on the island. So we did, and we bought a place at Bahia Vista 10 years ago. And then we found a little more money and bought a lot up on Olive Street. We love this city, we have invested now in not only the museum building, but now the new conservancy program. And so we want to be permanent residents here, we want to make our own water, we don't want to be a burden to the city. So I would urge you to allow us to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I, so I guess the question would be of Sean Hagerty, and maybe of Southern California Edison, because if you say, maybe those are the two entities that need to talk to see if that is okay to do those, the humidifiers in private homes.
Yes, and, and I don't know the details of this particular, and I obviously need to know a lot more, be, to be able to provide any advice to the city on, on that specific question, so that would be on the list of things that we would look at, absolutely.
And then you would look into see if Edison needs to be a part of that and all of that good stuff?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Do you think they'd be happy about it, because they're, they're electric, they're run with electricity?
No, he puts solar on his house.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Is that okay, Jeff?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank, sorry you had to be the bearer of bad news.
Is that right for Jim?
You've handled it pretty well.
Something done there.
Okay. There's a young man sitting here, are you one of the college graduates?
Yes.
Let me just... Put my shoes back on. And what is your name, sir?
Way to go, Leonardo. Good job, man.
I know you're enjoying watching the council meeting, though. And Owen, you are a business major, so see you to meet.
Diploma will serve you well, sir.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Did Jim get enough of the interview?
Just part of the meeting right there.
Jim Passan.
Okay. I'll make sure that...
Okay, to be followed by, okay. Should we do this one first, because since you have to leave at 7:30, should we do the next presentation, or move on to a couple of me, agenda items?
Whatever you need from me.
Oh, let's, yeah, whatever. I'm happy to do whatever you guys need to.
Okay. Well, this, your presentation probably isn't too long today, is it, Jeff? Jeff Lawrence in the back of the room? Because you're up next, it's not going to be very long, is it?
It is our standard presentation.
Okay, then come on up. Thank you.
How's Mary life?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council and Staff, Jeff Lawrence, Senior Project Manager for Southern California Edison, here to give you an update on our Stage Two rationing plan, as well as Desalination Plant Number Two, and Stage Three Water Rationing. Currently, the reservoir sits at a level of 171 acre feet. That is below the, the normal trigger for Stage Three Water Rationing, but due to the, the anticipation of the sea water, the desalination plant running in brine mode, as well as the plant being online, producing water in seawater mode, and the successful rationing so far that the community has contributed to by reducing their water use through Stage Three Water Rationing, we've been able to defer implementing Stage Three at this time. The, the water conservation efforts of the community have been a staggering result for the month of May, and we're very pleased by it. We saw a slight dip in the month of April, and we're, we're a little concerned that we dipped below that 40% line that we've seen since we activated Stage Two in August of 2014. But the, the community bounced back in May, reducing water use over the baseline period by almost 48%. So we, in the month of May, are almost at a 50% rationing level, which would have been Stage Three Water Rationing under the old CPUC tariff guidelines. So we really want to extend the, our appreciation to the community for their efforts. This is achieved while the visitor counts in the month of May increased by almost 16% compared to the baseline period. And if you'll recall, our baseline period is the, the 12 months preceding Stage One Water Rationing, or, I'm sorry, Stage One Water Conservation, which is June 2012 through May 2013. That's our, our basis for comparison. This chart here is showing you the Stage Two results for the last 12 months, and comparing it to that entire baseline period. So for the last 12 months, we have reduced water use by almost 43%. That while visitor counts have gone up a staggering 26 and a half percent. If we were to compare the entire period of time that we've been in Stage Two Water Rationing compared to the baseline period, we've reduced water use by 40%, which is equivalent to 273 acre feet, about an 11-month supply of water. So, again, Stage Two has been very critical to preserve our groundwater resources. This slide here is a representation of the code enforcement violations for the restrictions on water use, and since our last meeting, there have not been any new violations to This slide here is a representation of the billing periods that closed during a, a month, and how many of those billing periods resulted in either a flow restrictor being installed, or a violation of two or more, two or more violations for a customer. I'm, I'm sorry, three violations or more. So the, the blue line is the number of customers that have received a flow restrictor violation, so that would be their second violation, they'd be subject to a flow restrictor. The red line are the customers that have had three or more violations. So it's, the red line is the, the repeat offenders of their, the Stage Two Water Allotment. You'll notice the last two months, it, it is flatlined at 0%, and that is because the, the new fine structure for water allotments took effect in April. And so we have, reset the clock for everyone's customer's water allotment. And so we're now just at the point, under this, this new fine structure and, and Stage Two Water Allotment, where customers are at the warning stage. So no flow restrictors have been issued since April, when those took effect. For the month of May, compliance for Stage Two Water Allotments was at about 92%. So 8% of our customers received just a warning. So there's good news to report on the, the Desalination Plant Number Two project, since the month of April, when Desal Plant Number Two went online and producing drinking water, we have now produced over 7.2 million gallons of drinking water. So it has been very critical to meet demand in the Avalon distribution system for the customers that are connected to that desal system. We have experienced some days of demand that exceeded Plant Number One's production capacity, and Desal Plant Number Two was able to meet that demand. So it's, it's been critical to have this plant in service. We continue to work with the Division of Drinking Water on the permit for our brine mode, which will then allow us to run the brine discharge that would normally be sent to the ocean, through Plant Number Two, and be able to produce even more drinking water for the community. We are anticipating that permit still by the end of this month. However, Division of Drinking Water has asked for an additional condition to be met before the plant can be placed into service, and that is to run a pipeline from Plant Number One to Plant Number Two, so that the drinking water is blended at the plant before it goes into the distribution system. So we have, we're pursuing this as feverishly and quickly as possible. Engineering is complete on that additional condition from the Division of Drinking Water, and our schedule for putting the, the brine mode into service is the end of, near the end of July, late July. Based on our current forecast, seawater mode, and, and the current Stage Two conservation and rationing levels, in seawater mode, Desalination Plant Number Two will meet demand, with the exception of one day, based on our, our 2015 water sales and an escalation that we've applied. So we're, we're still good, in good shape to be able to have the, the brine mode in service to meet those higher demand days come August. So where does that bring us for activating Stage Three? At this time, based on the, the community's Stage Two rationing efforts and, and the month of May that we had, which was astounding, and our current forecast for demand, and our ability to meet demand with the customers in the desalination system, distribution system, we're going to remain at the current 25% rationing levels. When, when the community is conserving their water use by a 47% success rate, increasing rationing isn't necessary. So any further stages of rationing would not have a significant impact on the reservoir drawdown at this time. So we continue to monitor the, the results on a, on a monthly basis, and we'll be doing so again come early July, and informing the council if, if there are any changes in the, in the data for the month of June, if, if we need to activate Stage Three, we'll communicate that to you as soon as possible. This is our updated forecast for the Middle Ranch Reservoir water level. The red line is our, our water use and drawdown based on our three-year historical average. The, the blue line is if, if the community was just meeting the minimum requirement of Stage Two, 25% rationing. And the top line, which is probably hard to tell, is purple, that's our forecast based on 40% water rationing, which we have, have seen consistently since August 2014. So that is the, the forecast that we have confidence in, and that's what we're reporting to you, to forecast the Middle Ranch water level. At this time, the, the Middle Ranch Reservoir come the rainy season next year, or into this year, will be around the 135, 140 acre foot levels, is what we're currently forecasting, which we're, we're certainly concerned about monitoring closely, but the, the reservoir has been at that level in our history previously. So we, we don't want to go there, but we're, we're keeping a close eye on it to see if any further stages of rationing are necessary to help minimize that. But at this time, it, it doesn't appear so. But we want to encourage the community to continue rationing at the, the levels that they are, considerably above that 25% level. As you can see, at, at just a 25% rationing level, you're talking about almost a 50 acre foot difference in our forecast come fall of this year. And with that, that concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Jeff, I have two quick ones. Are the, the water rationing restrictions are in place island-wide, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so how does Edison monitor usage up island, like the camps, for example? They're still given a, a restriction as well?
Yeah, just like everyone in town, they have a 25% reduction in their water allotment, and they're subject to the same fines and flow restrictors as everyone else is.
And is there any division, I'm sorry, is there any division between year-round residents, vacation rental, business, so to, to, so as we look to, if we have to look to other solutions, if we look at, if somebody's a bigger culprit than the next, how do we know who that is? I mean, or do we even need to care?
Restriction.
I mean...
Well, if, and I think what you're saying is something we've talked about before, you know, worst-case scenario on so many different levels, I don't even want to go into it, would be that we, we reduce the number of visitors that come to the island, is, and if that's the case, I mean, if it's hoteliers that are, for example, using more water, hoteliers and restaurants, which would be the commercial aspect, then, then that speaks to, to one area, but then if you, if it really is our residents who are using more water, then it, it helps me in the sense to say, well, I don't want, I don't want to reduce the number of visitors who come to the island, I want to do everything that we possibly can, and I would love it if you guys would help us find more solutions on water. So I think that's what Annie's saying, is where is the majority of the, the consumption of water coming from, and can that help us in future decisions that we may need to make?
Very well said, thank you.
Yeah, the, the majority of the usage certainly is the, the commercial accounts, that's where you're going to see the, the water use from the, the tourism coming into town. The, the revisions in our tariffs that were approved last November do allow some flexibility in administering Stage Three Water Rationing, so we can do that analysis and not necessarily have to apply a 50% reduction in water use across the board. There's opportunities to have a further rationing at a lesser percentage than 50%. There, there's the opportunity also not to have an island-wide rationing policy for everyone across the board. We can do that analysis and determine where do we get the most bang for our buck in preserving our groundwater, what, what percentage of rationing should be levied on, on specific water systems.
And that helps, I think, the Chamber of Commerce, when, when if, and if the businesses are sitting down together and they kind of know, and when they try to work up viable solutions amongst themselves to help, it might be helpful, Jim?
Yes.
Well, that, not only that, but, for example, the city of Avalon has the Desal now Number Two plants, that we've put in money, we've, we've asked for money, grant money, we've gotten money from, from the county, and we, the taxpayers in Avalon, have helped to pay for this additional system. The rest of the island is drawing directly from the reservoir. So I, I'm not suggesting that any one entity deserves more than the other, I, I think the data collection that you could do and present might help answer a lot of these other questions of, where is the water usage coming from, why is the reservoir still dropping? I mean, we keep saying that camps and other entities draw directly from the reservoir, but I'm not sure it's clearly being understood, so the, the data might be helpful.
Yeah, and, and not all the camps draw from Middle Ranch Reservoir, we do have a number of isolated...
So I'm not suggesting that any one entity deserves more than the other. I think the data collection that you could do and present might help answer a lot of these other questions of where is the water usage coming from? Why is the reservoir still dropping? I mean, we keep saying that camps and other entities draw directly from the reservoir, but I'm not sure it's clearly being understood. So the data might be helpful.
Yeah, and not all the camps draw from Middle Ranch Reservoir. We do have a number of isolated groundwater systems across the island that several of those camps are served from. So you're right, that analysis will be done prior to making a determination on if Stage Three needs to be activated and at what level and who it'll affect.
Are you still allowing variances through the residents in the city?
Yeah, customers are still able to supply, provide a justification for variance and we'll review that.
Vacation rental or I have guests coming, I can apply for a variance. I have 10 people coming this week and send a letter to you. Is that how that works a little bit?
Yeah, we're asking residents and homeowners to be proactive and request that variance. We won't honor a variance request after the fact.
Okay.
And generally, what we try to do is we'll reallocate usage from one month to the next so there, you know, it's where you can minimize the impacts to any type of groundwater use as much as possible.
But that's still going on?
Yeah, that has not discontinued.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other question? To the microphone, please.
I'm sorry, I wasn't really clear. Is the second Desal plant not, it's not putting water into the system just yet? Is that correct?
Desalination Plant Number Two has been in service since April and has produced over 7.2 million gallons of drinking water.
Okay, and is that, is the... Are the Desal, are they constantly producing water? Is it going in into any kind of storage facility or is it just as the demand is needed?
Yeah, so we do have storage in town, our Baker tanks. We have a storage capacity of 375,000 gallons and so we're maximizing that storage capacity when demand is down and we can continue to produce water and store it. We aren't taking the Desal plant off in that situation. We are sending water to the Baker tanks to store it for those high-demand periods.
So basically, you're producing water as often as you can?
Yeah, absolutely.
The Baker tanks also fed by Wrigley Reservoir?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they're connected from both directions.
That, does that get distributed in the city of Avalon with the exception to our Hamilton Cove or vice versa? How does Hamilton Cove get its water? Does it go directly from Wrigley Reservoir down to Hamilton?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a separate pipeline that comes down from Wrigley.
One goes to Hamilton and then one comes down to Baker tanks. But we try to keep some room in Baker tanks so that when we're producing too much water, it can be pumped up there to the Baker tanks, correct?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, that's good. Glad to hear it. I wish we had more of those tanks. I mean, but, you know, we'll keep working on it.
Yeah, and we continue to work with the cities and the city and other agencies as well, looking at Prop One grant funding opportunities where additional tank storage is a likely project that will submit an application for grant funding.
Yeah, that would be great because I know Westin got their million-gallon tank refurbished. It'd be nice if we had a million-gallon tank or two, but that's a wish list. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, well, we're moving right along. We are at oral communications and this is an opportunity for people in the community to speak on an issue that is not on the agenda. You have three minutes to chat and we, no action will be taken.
Paula Patterson, 221 Whitley.
Ann Marinkovich, Jaleen, 9-60 Playazul.
It's a duet?
It's a duet. So we're going to try to make, because it seems to me that, I'm exhausted, I don't know about you guys, this has been a grueling meeting so far. And so we're here with a kind of a thing that has concerned us both. Both Ann and I have been spending some time walking around Avalon, picking up trash and we're going to talk about butts. And so we thought we'd try to lighten it up a little bit. And we're not here to disparage or judge or anything like that, but we do find it just extremely concerning that our beautiful little island has more trash than I even want to think about. So the pictures that we just put in front of you are, we did three days, one hour. And so that's what we collected and there was more, but we couldn't get all the trash in those bags, so we put it. And we're not doing it, we just, here's the thing, we have an ordinance in place, there aren't very many, no smoking signs about and it really is very clear. And I have a copy of that, Dudley was really nice, he printed out the ordinance for me. And on either end of Crescent Avenue, there's those signs that tell you what's allowed and what's not, doesn't say no smoking. There are some, but not very many, that say no smoking on the beach, but according to the ordinance, there should be no smoking on Crescent. And the only place that it's allowed is at the base of the pier or right around the lifeguard station, which I'm sure makes them really happy. But, you know, the thing is, is that we're trying to find a positive way to go about diminishing the trash. I mean, we collected out in the canyon, we collected on the main streets, but also I want to take note that I think our city employees do an incredible job cleaning up after the enormous amounts of litter and cigarette butts. We know that you can go clean one area and 20 minutes later, it's got more stuff in it. So that isn't our intent either. They work so hard and, but here's the things that we were thinking, trying to be a little more positive, is that we could use some more no-smoking signs and also some signs that say, please keep our island beautiful, don't litter. We also have litter regulations and I haven't seen any signs that say, please don't litter, right? There are lots of receptacles for litter and they also have on the side those, there's little trays where you could put, you know, there's a place to put your cigarette butts. But a lot of times, they don't have sand in them, that might be a little bit helpful. But Claudia makes all the beautiful signs for the island and maybe we could use a few that say, please don't litter or keep our island beautiful, you know, on a positive note instead of being negative. One of the most heinous areas is the stairs, are the stairs coming down Crescent. And boy, oh, boy, if you look over the side and, and we can't get there, we have granny grabbers, but we can't get down there and get all the trash that's there. So that's a really bad spot and it's just people walk down those stairs and just flip trash over. And then also, if, because you're not supposed to smoke in any public place inside of any public building, it would be really helpful if establishments did put out places outside their, you know, hotels and restaurants, that there is a place for people to put their cigarettes because oftentimes there are not. There is nothing out there. The other thing is, you know, it wouldn't hurt just to have, not be, you know, castigating people, especially our tourist population, but if code enforcement could say something to people, oh, by the way, or, you know, there are citations that can be handed out starting at $25 for throwing a cigarette butt on the ground and wouldn't hurt to do that a few times and it might abate some. And then, and then also the thing that worries us more than anything at all is fire. I mean, you guys, it's going to be a super-dry summer and there are certain areas and, you know, if our fire department, like, they don't have enough to do, but just do assessment of particular places that are really, places that, one cigarette butt gone over the side could really make some bad stuff, you guys know. So anyway, I just wanted to say that to you and I wanted to bring it to your attention and if there's anything that we could do or we'd be happy to help. I also wanted to bring up that I came a long time ago to talk about a ban on disposable plastic bags and styrofoam here on the island. And it finally just came out that the city attorney had said to me that, that after the voters approved banning plastic bags and then the plastics industries immediately filed litigation and that we're a little hesitant to go forward on that because we don't want to get into another big mess. But I just wanted to say that both Manhattan Beach and Hermosa Beach have both passed ordinances in their cities making plastic bags and polystyrene illegal and that the state of California, the Supreme Court of the state of California upheld their ordinances and said, we don't need an environmental impact report from you. You know, we get it, you know? And there were some issues there too, but I just, I think it would be really cool if we could open our new Vons and not be using plastic bags and go through another, you know, next summer, we could go through a summer without polystyrene on the island. It would be so forward-thinking of our little island and help with disposal and waste as well. So anybody, anybody have any questions?
I like your, do you want to give your, because I noticed you wrote them down, do you want to give your little, your smoking list to Denise, perhaps?
Oh, the ordinance, you mean?
Not the ordinance, but some of your little notes. Well, it's on the thing, but if you wanted to pass something on.
Oh, you want my, you want, just what, we were going to do a big rap, but you know what? Oh, my gosh, it was after this whole thing, I just thought, oh, timing is everything and maybe the timing isn't great to go into all the other stuff, but I'll give you a copy of what we wrote. And then we kind of were thinking to do a positive letter in the paper and just...
You know anything the community can do to encourage people to...
Absolutely.
...love their community and take care of them.
And we got a couple of places we want to put a bucket with them, you know, put your butts here. And there's a lot of good jokes on this deal, so, but I, anyway, I just, it makes us like so depressed and you can see, that's so gross, huh?
No, it is, thank you. Maybe that's the picture you should have them put in the paper.
Oh, absolutely. All right, thanks you guys, thank you very much.
Thank you for caring and thank you for cleaning. Okay, other oral community, oh, here comes David Hart.
Those are great ideas and plus, thank you for going around the town and helping out like that. We need more people to do that as well within this community. And I know we do have a lot of them and so we do like to thank everybody for participating, making Avalon beautiful. David Hart, Recreation. As I speak right now, actually, it has actually passed, but today was the first day of Beach Bingo. Every Tuesday and Thursday from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., all summer long, one of the locals and visitors' favorite activities happens. Beach Bingo on South Beach. Everyone is welcome to play for just a dollar a card, again, every Tuesday and Thursday from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., all summer long. Another great summer activity to create memories with your family starts tomorrow, every Wednesday from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., the Kids Fishing Derby, where kids from ages three to 14 bring their rods, reels, or even drop lines and compete for the biggest fish, most fish caught, and most unusual. But usually, they catch a lifetime of memories. But activities, but activities could not happen without the donations given by prizes by many of our local merchants. We at the City of Avalon's Recreation Department are deeply appreciative of their contributions. There are too many of them to name, but I'd like to say thank you to all our merchants who participate. I am also here tonight to update the council on where we are with the Joe Machado Turf Project. We all know the importance of this project due to the amount of recreation we use as a community that we use for JMF. All you have to do is watch the amount of community members who play at petty angles, adult women's, men's, and co-ed softball leagues, or the passion that Ivan Leva's men's soccer leagues play with, or the joy in which all our city as well as our high school youth programs play with when utilizing this facility. Due to the drought, we can no longer keep watering it and it is dying, if not already dead, and is quickly becoming unplayable and dangerous. I wanted the council to keep that in mind as we go through this process of choosing who and what we will be replacing our field with. We have now received all four qualified RFPs for the design-build of the field. We are scoring them appropriately based on five criteria evenly. Respondent's technical compliance with the project's requirements. Respondent's references and reputation. Respondent's reliability, the warranty, durability, maintenance. Respondent's experience. Personnel with respect to similar projects such as building on an island. Respondent's proposed price for the project. After scoring them appropriately, we will be interviewing each respondent this Thursday. Then, based on which respondent provided the best value to the city and its community, we will have a nominee for the council to award the bid at the budget talks next week. If the council has any more questions, the council can either speak to either Dennis Jaich or I anytime here at the city. Thank you.
David, I got a question. Are we still on time? What's the timeline for possible...
Starting August 1st.
Starting August 1st and then finish?
Finishing by August, finishing by October 1st.
Okay, October 1st. Okay, with that said, what I've understood is that the football team is going to have a lot of away games this year?
Yes.
Okay, so I was talking to Mike Forcella, the coach, and he said, if, you know, it's going to be more expensive for them to travel, so if anybody would like to donate money to...
They would appreciate it.
Yeah, the athletic fund for the football program, travel, then I guess you would talk to Mike Forcell about that, but...
We, you know, we wanted to start this project in July, but we felt it wasn't fair to the bidding process and as well as to the bidders. And it would increase the price because of, one of the things we were thinking about was housing. And so to house, the first group that would come in, more than likely, it may not, it may not be, many of them have him as a subcontractor, Jordal. So if Jordal's doing the pre-work where they're actually lifting the field, laying down the foundation of the field before the turf team comes in, it's going to be a lot cheaper to use a company like Jordal and several of them have bid Jordal as a subcontractor on the job. But to do, then they would only need maybe two or three people to come over to oversee the job for a month. But we also want to be fair to all the programs that we have. So in August, we would have somebody coming, two to three, two to three people coming during that time. It's easy to find housing for that. But once they start to put the turf down and the turf team comes over to put the turf in, that can be very costly to house 10, 12, 15 people who are specialized to put this in. And so to do it in September, it's a lot easier and many of the hotelers have said they can come down in price to help us out with that. So for us as well as for the company doing it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Very insightful.
Since 1956 under, one I wanted to ask about the lack of dock carts on the pier. I know you asked Denise three months ago to look into the price of them and we still have no dock carts on the pier. Any emotion on that? Anything happening?
I don't remember getting that direction. I'm sorry, council. We do have a...
It might have been something that you said to do, but we didn't, perhaps, go into it.
You directed Denise to look into the cost.
Okay, okay.
I didn't get that, but we do have the business on the pier that provides those docks.
You mean the dive business? Is that what you're talking about, those kind of carts?
Voters have no dock carts. It's the only place you have harbor or marina with no dock carts. We've been borrowing former Mayor Bob's dock carts because there aren't any, but I don't think he wants that to continue forever.
It's like a shopping cart? It's just something you can put your supplies in?
They're little private last carts, you put your junk in when you come from Vons and you're hauling all your stuff out to your boat.
Oh, I see.
There's, you have to haul it by hand. There's no dock carts in the city at all.
You've seen the divers take them out to, you know, their...
Theirs are a little sturdier than we need, the divers.
I see.
But they're sort of like that. But could somebody please look into this already?
Yeah, sounds like a entrepreneurial...
Well, what do you, I mean, if you're saying look into it, we can get a catalog and say, oh, this is how much they are, but you're also then wanting us to pay for them.
Somebody, yes. I mean, I've never been to a marina anywhere that doesn't have dock carts. I've never been to any other harbor that doesn't have dock carts. I mean, it's the number-one boater thing, where's the dock carts?
Part of the issue that I can see right out of the gate and, you know, former Mayor Bob and the dive shop on the pier, they have to lock their carts up because they will go all over town and then who's responsible for going to pick all those up? So, you know, I hate to set, I like the idea of the carts and generally in marinas over town, there's sort of a locked gate where the carts stay inside or there's an office area where there's a little more control over it. You've got a parking lot, you've got, you know, inside gates and whatnot, but we're talking about a similar situation that I foresee the same as Vons carts, that there's, you know, that somebody's going to take a cart from the pier with all their beach equipment and it's going to end up here at City Hall and then who's responsible for getting that back down? So that's a whole nother...
I agree, there's issues, but it's not really an issue with the boaters because the boaters are going to their boats, so they're going to bring them back.
So what, in some communities, you can like put like a dollar in or something, four-quarters and you take your cart? If you bring it back, you get your four-quarters back or...
I don't even know so much, but it is exactly what she's saying. Like in Long Beach, you're in an area, you're in a defined area.
It's a locked area, yeah.
So it's, it's just like the golf carts, I mean, just like the shopping carts. But I mean, I mean, if the council wants to look into it and see what they... But I mean, we, I mean, if the council wants to look into it and see what the expense is, and talk, and get the harbor master involved, I mean, we could...
So it's not feasible to have your own go, uh, I'm not telling you you have to, but you have your own little shopping cart, 'cause they, they have these kind that can fold up?
Yeah, but it's, they're not big enough.
That's not...
And you have to be hauling it from your boat on your dinghy, and we all know the condition of our dinghy docks, so it's, it's totally impractical.
Our dinghy docks are pretty good condition, are you saying they're not?
I, I'm again asking any one of you to come with me on a dinghy ride into our dinghy docks.
I...
On a busy weekend, and see what that's like.
I have a boat.
That's lots of fun when you're 18, it's not fun when you're 16. It's very difficult, and it's dangerous, and it's...
I understand.
It's almost impossible for people with any disabilities.
Point well taken.
They can't get in.
But...
Okay, so that, that was item number one. Item number two, I'm gonna direct this at Richard, because you promised me if you got re-elected, you would do this. Okay, um, here we are on year forty of no swimming pool. Uh, you know, we supposedly were given land, and now it was yanked back supposedly, although the island company has never publicly withdrawn their offer of that land, uh, but we assume that's what's happening. But in the meantime, the community has no pool or recreation facilities. And I would like to ask Richard, because we've discussed this, as well as several other people in the community, would it be possible to have the city attorney look into the possibility and what it involves to exercise eminent domain, to simply take the land for the better good of the community? I understand, we'd have to pay for it, we'd have to come up with the money, but I think it's in the interest of this community to have a pool and rec center, and if there's no other way to get the land but to take it from somebody who has the land, I think we should look into that. And I would like, Richard, if you would follow up on that, to direct the city attorney to look in, to what's involved in doing that.
I will look into it, and I'll talk to Scott or, or city attorney to do that.
All right.
Hopefully, we'll have some to report next meeting on it.
That might be a little, you're being a little...
That might be a little quick, but...
Yeah, um, thank you, Austin.
At least we started.
Yeah, we need, we need a facility for kids.
Uh, just briefly, Denise mentioned it earlier, the problems we've been having with the street sweeper. And, um, I promised our number-one right-hand Public Works guy, Tony, Mr. Tony, that I would do something about it. I talked to CRNR, Tony came in and wanted to make sure I mentioned it tonight. Tomorrow morning, Tony, I know you're listening, uh, we're gonna meet with CRNR and make sure there's no more dust coming out of that sweeper. Okay? So that's good news.
Thank you. And Lisa Levell?
I just wanted to say thank you to the community of Avalon. We had several teams for the Relay for Life, uh, last Saturday, and ended up raising just over $14,000 for the American Cancer Society, so that's something to really applaud everyone. Our goal originally was to surpass what we had done last year and to bring in more than 12,000, so we well passed that mark. Uh, we will be having the event again next year. Thank you both Mayor Marshall and Councilmember Cassidy for coming up and walking for a part of it. We really appreciate seeing you up there, um, and hoping to make it a much more, uh, large community event next year. So, we will be doing kickoffs towards the end of summer, beginning of fall. We're hoping to get teams signed up early and get fundraising going early to make it kind of a deal. So I'll be coming around to each of you guys after summer's over and just saying, hey, how about a city team? Hopefully, we'll see you there. But thank you all very much for that.
Thank you for all your hard work, Lisa and Nadra.
Thank you, Lisa.
Anybody else? Okay, we're moving right along onto the consent calendar.
Oh, our agenda, I get to pull my agenda out.
The agenda shows that there are 13 items on the consent calendar. We are adding one additional item. We're moving it from, it's item number 14. It's posted as general business and public hearing, and that is a mistake. It is a consent calendar item this evening. And I will be removing item number one, which is actions, 'cause I do not have them.
I would like to please pull item number two for a quick discussion, number six, so that I may abstain, and 10 and 11.
Pull 10 and 11?
Yes, please.
Any other ones to be pulled?
Um, hang on.
Two, six, 10, and 11 for me.
Yeah, you got me right there.
All right.
Um, yeah, I wanna pull seven, I wanna understand.
Seven, I wanna pull seven also.
Absolutely. What's going on there?
Okay. Okay, two, six, seven, and 11.
Uh, so I would make a motion to approve items three, four, five, eight, nine, 12, 13, and 14.
That was good. I, yeah, I...
All the others.
I second that, yeah.
There is a motion to second, and comments from the audience?
Counsel?
Call for the vote?
Let me clear, let's do it again.
All of us or just Joe?
Everybody.
Okay.
Four ayes and one absence, Councilmember Olson.
Item number two.
Um, I, Bob, could, uh, our finance director, Bob Mesher, I'd like to maybe have this conversation with you if we could. First and foremost, I sincerely apologize for not having had this conversation in the two years prior. But we, Richard and myself, as the Councilmember Hernandez, and myself as the audit committee, it is my understanding that our role in that committee is to review the warrants and approve the expenditures being sent. Is that correct?
That, that would be reasonable, yes.
Okay. So where I'm confused, and where I would like to possibly give direction to staff with the council's approval, or at least have the conversation, um, it has, it is very uncomfortable for me to sign approval after the fact. I understand that we're getting this list after the warrants have been issued, after they've been mailed, and essentially, we're forced into a position of signing and approving the warrants, because you've already incurred the costs, you've already paid the bills, the checks have been sent. So I, I don't really understand, what is the purpose of us being an audit committee and reviewing all the warrants and signing them after the fact?
Well, to rephrase what you're, what I think you're saying is you would like to see the warrants before they're issued, and in doing that, that may delay the payments by some days or, or a certain period of time if you're not available. Uh, that would be the reason, I would assume, that has not been done in the past. But if you, as the audit committee, want to see the warrants before they go out, we can arrange to have that happen.
I think it's, the, the process is a concern that we're, we're signing after. So why do we even have an audit committee?
You would be the ones that would look in more detail, whether it be before the fact or after the fact of the warrants being issued compared to the other council members.
So, what would happen if, if we had a majority of vote and we did not approve these warrants
Elizabeth, I don't...
The warrants have been paid, but we would actually have to go back to the people who, who we have paid and, and pursue getting the funds back if there was a valid reason for having not approved them, or not paid them. If you reviewed them and said, oh, we shouldn't have paid that one, we overpaid, or the work wasn't done, or whatever, and so you didn't approve a warrant, we would have to go back and pursue, uh, getting those funds.
Is there any way to do these at a meeting prior to them being issued? Is there any way to have this, say, that the warrants that are being paid at the end of the month, have those lists approved on the first meeting of the month?
Cindy, can I propose something that Bob and I speak, and we can, we'll try to figure out a way where you and Richard are able to view these prior to them coming to, to the council meeting? Let us figure out a way so we can back ourselves into that, or move forward into that.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with that. I just, I mean, I want it to be a public conversation where, you know, I'm saying, as a member of the audit committee, I'm agreeing, and then the council's making a motion and approving after checks have been mailed, and, and so...
A reasonable request.
I just wanna make sure that I'm doing my fiscal responsibility as a council member and as an audit committee member in reviewing things and signing to them before they go versus after they go. And if there was a reason why we were doing it the way that we're doing it, then this would be the time to explain that.
I don't know what that reason would be, Cindy, because Bob and I are both coming into something that's just always been in existence. I mean, they did come every two weeks, and then when Chris Wiedzik was here, he moved it to the warrants once a month. How about we try to see what we can come up with, and we'll report back to you at the next council meeting on July 5th?
Okay, thank you.
I think your point's well taken. I just think we're operating off good faith. I, I, I think that's probably the main thing, but, um, great, great conversation, though.
But let me ask, as an audit committee, or as anybody looking at these, I mean, if you, if you looked at, 'cause now you're saying, now, basically, I wanna look at every invoice.
No, I'm not.
Well, because if it's already, then what would you be looking at?
Well, you're actually signing all the checks, Annie.
Well, I know, 'cause we all...
I mean...
But I mean, where, where, where would the question be? Like, how much money are you spending at WDB's building supply and go like that, or is it...
No, but for example, I, in the past two years, when I have my weekly meeting, specifically the one prior to, the, my Monday meeting prior to the council meeting that has a warrant on it, with, with previous city manager Ben Harvey, and then now with Denise, I will actually, at that time, go through this list, and the city manager will pick up the phone and call the appropriate, or if I have a question, oftentimes I'll call the harbor department directly, or I'll, I'll send a text and ask my question on the warrant. So it, it's a matter of, say, we're paying, you know, $50,000 to Resinow's Bavasset Group. Well, that doesn't seem right, 'cause we would normally pay them around 1,300, so that's a red flag to me. And in, in general, I have notes on every single one of the warrants lists that maybe, I don't remember or the name is different from a contract that we've granted. I mean, we, we haven't received a contractor spreadsheet in nine months, so I have no idea where we are with our, with our contractors, where we are with, with any of that. So, yes, I'm working on faith, that we're doing everything right, and there has never been an issue with the warrants, there's just been questions. But I have a fiduciary responsibility that if I'm signing as a council member on the audit committee, that, that I have done my due diligence and done the proper homework. I just don't wanna sign it after. I would rather see him ahead of time.
Okay, so, we got...
So that was it.
Okay.
So with that, I would make it a motion to approve number two.
And Rich, you had a question?
Second.
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I don't, I don't know. Second.
Second, Councilman Sampson?
Number two, yeah.
Call for the vote?
Four ayes, one absent, Councilmember Olson.
I'm sorry, item number six.
And I'd like to abstain from item number six, because my personal residence is within 500 feet of the applicant.
Okay. Without discretion, is there a motion, 'cause it was on consent?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
This is on the approachment?
Yep.
Move to second. Okay, anybody from the community? Call for the vote?
Three ayes, one abstention, Councilmember Olson.
That's it?
See you later.
That is, okay.
See you later. See you, Jack.
That was the quickest thing we've ever done.
With Jack.
Okay, item number seven.
Seven.
Development agreement?
Yeah. Yeah, that's with Hamilton Pacific.
Hamilton Pacific, right.
That's Hamilton Cove Real Estate?
Pacific Denim.
Correct.
Here comes Amanda.
Here comes Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda.
This is, um, our annual report for the development agreement we have with Hamilton Pacific, and it is for the additional units being built out at Hamilton Cove with Mike Flynn. So our development agreement requires that we come report to you every year on what the status of the development is, and that's what, that's what this report is for. So if you have any questions...
Uh, there was some things in here I didn't, maybe I didn't completely understand it, but it seemed to me that we have to sign an agreement that says, well, that they're gonna go ahead and build this how they wanna build it, and if new things come up, if there's new bumps in the road come up, then we have to go ahead and, and possibly change our, our ordinance to accommodate what they're doing out there?
No.
I wanna understand this better.
Okay. So the, the purpose of the development agreement is, one, to memorialize all the requirements that we placed on this development, and it also, um, vests or promises Mr. Flynn that the ordinances and the zoning code that he was approved under...
Oh, that's right.
He still can use that code unless he varies from the project to some significant degree other than what the agreement applies to. So that's kind of the purpose of the agreement. Now, in this agreement, the, a couple of questions that came up was, um, where are we on the fire truck? Because they're paying, under this agreement, they pay so much, uh, I think it's about $6,200...
$6,250.
...per unit for the first 10 units, I believe it was. And then after that, there's a flat amount that he's gonna pay...
$10,000.
...in order for us to provide some type of auxiliary fire service at Hamilton. The agreement was that there would be an auxiliary truck parked out there, so if the hillside fell down and the fire department couldn't get out there, there would be some equipment on the far side. If the city ever wanted to change the deal about the fire truck into some other type of fire support service, then we would have to amend this agreement. We would have to go back to Mike and say, we're not sure that's gonna work, be feasible anymore, either because of water or whatever. We want to amend the agreement, 'cause it's actually a legal agreement between us and, and the corporation.
Okay, so this, these, this is basically something that we've already discussed and we've agreed to do with them?
Yeah, we've already signed it, and it's done. This is just to let you know where they are, because development agreements, especially this one, appears to be stretching out over a lot of years.
Yeah, and it seems to be getting, is it getting bigger too?
No, he's still restricted to the 88 units.
Okay, 88 units?
Total, the total development was for 88 additional units. He was proposing them in phases of eight to 10 units at a time. And he's currently got, he's currently built three, which are the three new homes that are out there. He has four foundations under construction.
And so that is phase what?
The phases, according to the agreement, are each phase is eight to 10 units.
So he's in phase two right now?
No, he's still in phase one, 'cause he's only finished three.
Oh, okay.
So this was started in...
Yeah, so he's still in phase one.
Oh, four.
So all the requirements for phase one, that's still where he is.
Can we still just discuss things like vehicles and water? Um, or is this something we've already agreed to let him do? And I, I mean, it's not necessarily him, but I wanna understand how this is gonna fit into our community as...
There's...
'Cause that's 88, does that mean we're gonna have 88 more golf carts on the streets of Avalon?
Eventually, if he wants the developments finished.
Okay, is...
But if, if the city also adopted, and we did an environmental impact report, they had done an environmental impact report on the original development back in the 80s, which was for 300 and something units. They only built 165, I believe. So when Mr. Flynn came in and proposed to proceed with additional units out there, we did another EIR, and we looked at traffic, water, wastewater treatment plant, and that, the traffic is where we've had some conversations about Mike Flynn adding additional parking downtown, striping of the roads. That was a mitigation for his project.
It's not adding 88 more units. I'm just playing the devil's advocate. I appreciate your hard work and your insightfulness, big time. I'm just getting concerned now about, are we growing out of the capacity that we can provide for as a community? 88 more vehicles on the street? That's too many. And he's not putting in 88 more, he's not giving us anything. That's already our parking down there. He's just putting lines on the street. That's all he's doing.
Right, I think his investment is in the cost of re-striping it and re-signing.
A couple gallons of paint, yeah.
Well, this is an annual review.
This is yearly?
It's an annual review.
This is a yearly?
Can we change this by any chance? And also, I understand, what I want to ask you is, since that's a private development area, can they just have their own garages too and just bring over full-size vehicles now? Because...
The city, the city still retains the authority to regulate vehicles even in Hamilton Cove because they are within the city limits.
Why don't we just give them like three vans and then everybody that can run 24 hours and they can use their vans, their three vans? I mean, I want to start like not approving all these vehicles and congesting the streets up and pollution and all that. It's beginning to disgust me.
And I will remind those of you in the room that have been around that long, when the original development was approved, the original 300 and something units, after it was developed, the, I'm sorry, let me back up. When that was approved, the city said, you have to have a carpool. You have to create a carpool mechanism out at Hamilton because we don't want 300 more golf carts in Avalon.
So where do we get, yeah, so where do we get talking to letting them?
Well, some council down through the years, the wisdom of the council sometime or another, decided that it wasn't fair for them to be more restricted on their vehicle use than everyone else in Avalon. And they changed, they removed that condition of approval.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion somehow, may have a conversation about redoing that again and saying that, no, we don't want 88 more units on this, vehicles on the street. I mean, they'd be better off having three vans anyways, maybe one dedicated to taking some of the people out in the interior. But I think we need to understand that we're growing outside of our means. There's not, you know, I...
And I, I agree with you that those are real challenges for us, Joe. I think, but the challenge is, and Elizabeth can answer to this, this is a legal agreement with us and there may be limitations on the conditions we can change.
Okay, so what would you suggest?
This is an agreement that you entered into originally, I think around 2004. The current one is a restated and amended agreement back in 2008. So you, as a council at the time, looked at this agreement and entered into it. It is a legally binding agreement. Mr. Flynn has vested rights. We can't change this agreement without his consent.
We can't change the agreement that our council made with him about these vehicles?
You have, you have an agreement with him that is legally binding.
I'd like to know who okayed that.
The city council.
City council in general, okay.
Whatever city council was sitting here, I don't know who was sitting here in 2008, but whoever those five people were...
I'm totally ashamed.
The city council at the time approved that agreement. So that is legally binding agreement. There is a provision in there to allow the agreement to be amended, but it is by mutual consent. So you can ask staff to go back and talk with Mr. Flynn about some things that you might want to see done differently and we can have that conversation and see if he's amenable to changing this agreement or making amendments. We can't impose amendments upon him.
So this, so this, all 88 units, we have an agreement now and there's nothing we can do about these 88 vehicles coming onto the streets of Avalon now. We have to allow that now, right? Is it according to this agreement, is that true?
I don't know if this agreement specifically talks to the vehicles.
I think it just said, I mean, because they're...
The fire truck it does talk to. That's a separate issue.
They, they will be legal dwelling units and under the vehicle code, they're entitled to register a golf cart. So we did not impose any other additional restrictions above what the vehicle code has.
If you wanted to change your municipal code and limit...
But even then, the agreement is vested in what was in the code.
Yeah, he has some vested rights based on when this agreement was approved.
It is frustrating. I just, I will also let you know, Joe, I know it doesn't reduce the number of vehicles, but one of the other mitigations was that Mike would also improve Casino Way, you know, where you have those golf carts right now by the tuna club, and he would create more parking like that further out Casino Way. So there would be even more nose-in parking.
So when this agreement was done, there was an environmental analysis done and part of that said you need to do these five or 10, 20 things to mitigate for the impacts from your project. And so he's doing those somewhere along the way.
He's, do these vehicles, they're going to be parked at Hamilton Cove at night? They can't stay in the streets of Avalon at night, right? Or do we have, do you know?
My knowledge, they don't carry any other restrictions other than the normal vehicle code. If you live here year-round, you can park on the street at night. If you don't live here year-round, your vehicle has to be off the street at night. And I think that's the current vehicle code restriction.
Okay.
So he would widen the road?
He would.
On the hillside? Whoa.
I don't know that he's done the engineering on it, but that's what he would do.
So remember that, please, okay? Okay, well.
I like the idea of...
Amanda, excuse me a second. Okay, John.
No, no, we might guess.
My issues with the fire truck thing still. How many payments have we got? So you saved three? So it's about $18,000 right now?
That's the tax.
Yeah. And it's going, the whole total cost is $175,000 for a new fire truck? And since we're probably doing that, it's probably gone up even more recently. So sticking by this binding thing, that's what kind of concerns me a little bit.
And the council can choose?
No, I know, I understand that, but it should be nice if we just paid $175,000, but that's a whole nother issue.
Right, and again, that's another issue where if we wanted to go back and talk to him, he may want some relief from some condition. That would be a negotiation you could have.
And I met with the fire chief. Chief, we talked about it a little bit today about, it's great, I think everything's great, you know, putting the money towards the new vehicle and hopefully the city will start saving their money and help subsidize for another truck with this $175,000. But I was just trying to figure out an easier way because everything keeps going up. That $175,000 isn't really much for a fire truck. I think our last fire truck was over $300,000 for that, so that kind of concerns me a little bit and maybe that might be something we could bring to the table with him somewhere just to talk about. I know it's already a legal document and stuff.
Right, but there isn't anything that prohibits us from having a conversation with them. We just can't force them to make a change.
Right, no, correct.
And the city may choose, and I don't want to speak for the chief, but the city may say, we want to amend the agreement, not in the amount you're going to pay, but we're going to choose not to put it into a fire truck. Maybe we're going to put it in a saltwater tank or some other type of fire suppression system in that property. So, but again, that's a conversation we'd have to propose.
But it states how, and it also states about housing a fire truck out there. I don't know, that'd be another, that was the thought, but I think it states in there. Now, you'd have to build a structure out there or park it somewhere. And then trying to man it from somebody from in here going out there really doesn't quite, I mean, I was in the fire business.
Managing, exercising.
Yeah, so, and I definitely wasn't part of this when I went in. But, you know, trying to man it, you have to get somebody from here, you know, worst-case scenario, the road's blocked off, take them out by boat, whatever. I think the best-case scenario is just getting that towards the fire truck as soon as possible, but it's the thing, we might be able to talk to them somewhere down the line.
Maybe it's a fire boat and not a fire truck.
Yeah. That's what kind of concerns me about how many payments. Been 04, we've gotten $18,000 towards the 175. And then, and since then, they've done actually even more projects up at Triana, right, too? Didn't he do that? Didn't he do some projects up in Triana also?
He, the agreement required him to do some inclusionary housing and some of those units up at Triana are that housing.
Okay. That was just my question, I was just concerned about that.
And based on the news we got today about residential decel, because he was kind of banking on that, wasn't he?
I think they were and I think, I mean, I misunderstood. I thought the whole study was to decide if we could allow personal decels. I thought that's what this whole study was about, that whether or not the city could permit personal decel units. So, but that was just my misunderstanding.
So, Elizabeth, what does, does that affect this project, the fact that, that news that we had tonight? Is that, it's residential decel nation, is that what he's going to use out there? Is he creating his own water?
I don't think so.
I'm not trying to say that. But I think going forward, when water was an issue, one of the things that Mike ran into out there, of course, he went into stage, his water allocation slipped away just like all of everyone else's. And he was hoping that personal decel units would be something that would be a viable option and that project could go forward. And what I heard tonight was that may still be a conversation to have as far as personal decel units. I don't know.
No. No. Legally, we were, I think Sean's advice to you earlier today was, personal decels not the path we're going to go down. So we're going to come back and look at other options. How Mr. Flynn is getting water to his project, I have no idea at this point.
And I think they...
Do you know how he's getting water?
I don't know where they get their saltwater. I don't know where they get their saltwater. Do you know where they get their saltwater, Denise? Saltwater out at Hamilton?
Let's talk about water a little bit more.
Good evening. My understanding, out at Hamilton Cove, they actually have a saltwater pond, very similar to what we have in town, it's just in smaller scale and it's up behind the warehouse.
So he's going to produce his own fresh water from a saw, is that?
No.
So he just uses that for toilets and?
Exactly. It's not for fire suppression, it's just for...
What about sprinklers?
Nope, sprinklers, all fresh. Everything's fresh.
And that fresh water is drinking water?
Fire suppression system is fresh, correct?
Correct, all the fire suppression is fresh, it's just that, that small saltwater system just for some toilets out there.
Yeah.
That should help to have that reclaimed water.
Thank you.
I think we need to continue having conversations like this because as these agreements develop, so does technology and more complications what we have, but there's, we've got to come up with more answers. Like what's going on with vehicles, water right now? Do we just keep building when we're running out of water?
He sure not. It doesn't look like anybody is right now.
All right, we could, this will be back again.
So we can't?
It'll be back again.
My, my understanding is, Mike is under construction, out at Hamilton. He has an expired water allocation. If he doesn't get, if we can't do personal decels, then I don't know that he'll be occupying those units.
Yeah, he'll be what?
He won't be able to occupy them.
Oh, I see.
Because he won't have freshwater service.
That's what they said about the museum.
Well, maybe he should go to the CPUC. But anyway, but I think that's kind of the reality of his world and until we, until we can solve the water issue, the growth is just not going to, there's no way, it's going to be greatly impeded.
So basically, we made an agreement and we have to abide by this agreement, but we really don't have the infrastructure in place to, to make this happen. This would have detrimental, this could have detrimental effects going into the future when we keep agreeing on things that we don't have the water and the resources to provide for. Is that, is that what's going on? Because we have to agree with this, right? This is just basically coming back to us saying, this is what the agreement is, you have to accept it. I mean, so what if we all vote no on this? I mean, does that mean we're going to get sued?
No. What you have before you...
Doesn't change anything?
What you have before you is an annual report that is required just to tell you the status of the development. So you could vote no not to accept the report. It wouldn't change the status of the agreement. What you have before you and what this agreement authorized at the time was analyzed under SEQA and the council at the time believed you had the resources and the mitigation measures were in place to allow the development to go forward.
Okay, can we make some notes that we need to, when Scott comes back, we need to talk to him about vehicles, water and growth projection? I mean, these are things that we really need to concentrate on and...
Well, because they're all issues that the mayor raised for study sessions. So you'll have all of those things coming back to you.
We're going to have to because there's, I'm seeing things here that, I mean, I don't believe there's any cisterns in any of these houses that are not capturing any fresh water in each apartment and I'm not sure if we have any building codes in place that promote water conservation.
Again, the item that's in front of you that you're discussing right now relates solely to this development agreement and these units. So that's the only item that's before you tonight to discuss.
So if, so let me ask, so if building codes change in the next two years? And, and then all of a sudden, here comes, because they have to approve what the places look like, they have to go for the planning commission, right? Do they, Amanda?
Amanda, can you explain your process?
So on page three?
I think I just, to clarify, I think, I can answer your question. The agreement says, under our municipal code, he gets to build the way the code was written when he, the agreement was entered into. If the building code changes and it says you have to put in this kind of steel or this kind of window or this kind of roofline, when he builds that house, he's got to build it to the current building code.
Right.
We did not vest him in a 2004 building code. It's only the municipal code and the zoning standards, so like the height, the setbacks, those type of things.
So if you said, some places we put in our fence, everybody has that cistern or whatever.
Or inline water heater or something.
Then that wouldn't go because he'd be bringing these units before the planning commission. That's why when the planning commission has to get a little more involved and stuff.
Yeah, we discussed this and that is a couple of years ago and I think it's time that we, because we knew we were facing water shortage and nothing's been done. So as far as changing the code, so anything we can do to help conserve water, which is either capture it or, like you said, every time when you turn on the shower, it's like you, there's, I got a bucket there. It's like multiple gallons of water are wasted and if there was inline water, I mean, that is, you have to warm up your water. I mean, most people do that. So it goes, it all goes down the drain. Those kind of things we can change. That, what people just know, I mean, it's kind of something that's on our plate and I think we need to react to it now because, and maybe this is not something we're going to have to deal with if we get this reclaimed water, but right now, that's a long ways down the road and we need to start practicing alternate sources of like water conservation. And I think the building codes need to be changed and then the vehicle codes need to be changed as well to adapt to the way our city is growing so that we can actually accommodate all these people that want to be here, I think. Yeah, without, without a detrimental effect to the people that are already here, we're going to kill them. I mean, they're going to, they're going to have a horrible quality of life if, you know, you can't, there's nowhere to park, you have to breathe smog every day from all the vehicles. I mean, these are things that, we've got to protect the people that were here before we bring in more people as well. Okay, I'm done.
Okay, adopt and review?
So what's before us tonight is just to make a motion to receive and accept and file the report.
There's motion? I'll second. Comments? Call for the vote.
And then we would add all of Joe's comments and stuff in our study sessions with transportation in.
Three ayes, Marshall Cassidy Hernandez, one no, Sampson, and one absent, Olson.
Item 10, pickup truck.
So I, did any, you guys may already have other questions on 10 and 11. Did you want me to start?
Please.
Or if anyone, okay, so I am sort of taking these together, but I realize they're The biggest concern is these are unbudgeted items. So there's, the request for us is about $90,000 all said and done when you add up all the shipping and the tax and whatnot. These are unbudgeted funds. So my first question was, why are we asking to amend the 1516 budget when we are nine days away from the end of the fiscal year? Why wouldn't these requests be put into next year's budget and we look at that as a forecasted expense?
You can, you certainly have that option. We just see the need for the vehicles now. As I explained, or as I thought we explained, we took the $50,000 that was approved for the Bobcat and put that on the shelf for next fiscal year and we're using the $50,000 for the purchase of the Ford 550. We've got to remember right now, currently, staff is driving three vehicles that were salvaged. That's how much of a need we have for the vehicles right now. We have an old, the Harbor's driving one and Public Works is driving two more vehicles that were salvaged. We kind of put some wheels on... We kind of put some wheels on them and kept them going. A lot of the perception is that we need one vehicle per employee, and that's not a fact. We just need the vehicles to haul. Now we're hauling containers of water. You know, that one container of water is almost a ton. A gallon weighs almost eight pounds. We can't do it with the small Rangers. We can't haul sandbags with the small Rangers. Small Rangers that are... We have an operation were purchased in 2003. There's still a couple of them that are good. There's three of them that are in real bad shape, that should be salvaged soon, or we can keep putting more money into it. The difference between the 150 and the 250, I apologize for that, is we feel we're getting a little more bang for the buck with the 250. It's a bigger... It's a heavier truck, and it'll haul about twice as much. Getting back to it, like I said, it's, of course, up to you if you wanna wait until we present it in next year's budget, and you can approve it. Or please note that there's plenty of money in the vehicle fund. There's, I think, $340,000, if I remember correctly, in the fund to cover this purchase, plus the $50,000 that we won't be spending in 15-16.
So if you take them one-on-one, right? You're asking for... I apologize, I don't remember which one it is, but you're asking to move the money from the Bobcat purchase. So today's June 21st. You're asking to move the money that we had already budgeted and agreed to for the Bobcat to purchase, I think it's the F-550, the big truck, is that...
Yes, correct.
I think, is that... Okay. And then in nine days from now, you're gonna ask for that money back to... For the next fiscal year for a Bobcat. So it's really just kind of a play on it?
No, frankly, I don't plan on buying the Bobcat now. I've reevaluated that. We need more staff. If we're gonna start making our own wheelchair ramps and replacing sidewalks, I have to come back to council and ask you for three or four more workers. So in retrospect, the Bobcats gone on the shelf. I will be coming back, asking you for a man lift and for a dump truck. Those are both in bad shape. As a matter of fact, the man lift is probably unsafe to operate right now. That's a big expense. You're gonna have three or four expensive purchases that staff is gonna ask you for in 16-17. It's gonna be a Bobcat... I'm sorry. A dump truck, man lift, and a couple other pieces of equipment we need. If you prefer to wait a month, I come back and ask you for a truck, we can do that.
Well, I'm gonna ask you the same questions in a month, but I guess, can you help me understand why... Why... These are both very large vehicles, so can you... Can the city utilize the larger F-550 truck to do all of this, the heavy movement, sandbags, waters? I mean, would one vehicle, one of these large vehicles be enough?
There's a big difference between the 550 and the 250. The 550, we'll be able to pull any boat we have out of the harbor and haul it up the hill. Right now, the mechanic's truck is doing that, and it needs a lot of repair. The mechanic's truck needs to be bored out, the engine, and there's only one of them. So if we send the mechanic down to pull up a boat, his truck is being used. This truck that we wanna buy is gonna be... We're gonna put video cameras on it, we're gonna put... We're gonna load it with the sewer inspection equipment we need. We're gonna put the heavy sockets and wrenches on it. It's gonna carry a good payload, and it's gonna come in real handy. Yes, if we don't buy either of these vehicles, we'll get by. There's no question. I mean, we'll get by. We won't be as productive, and we will spend more money and hours in workforce trying to get the job done. I can't say that we're gonna be able to take a container of water over to pressure wash a sidewalk. It might have to wait a couple of days till we have the vehicle to do it. We are foreseeing that we're gonna have a breakdown or two of our existing trucks pretty soon, so we thought it would be advantageous to come and request fortifying the fleet a little bit. It's old.
Well, that was my last question, is there this dire need for both vehicles?
Well, again, staff is recommending the purchase. You know, dire... I don't know what the definition of dire is. We're gonna get by if we don't have the vehicles. So it's just entirely up to you if you'd like to approve them for the public workforce. I can't say it's a dire need. No, we're gonna get by.
I have a question.
Yeah, please.
So...
They're using them again.
Yeah, we're using them.
They're reusing them again, believe it or not. They're not running it... What we need is, we need some nice vehicles, some good that the kids... The guys could work with. Those old vehicles aren't very sturdy, they're on their last leg, they're putting them together, piecing them together, so they have them.
We do surplus them. They're supposed to be surplus, and as soon as we get some replacements, we're gonna haul them.
I think they get rid of them, Val. Yeah, they rotate out.
They will.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
So I'm trying to prioritize here. I just wanna ask a quick question, Denise might know the answer. Do we have a backup... Did we ever get a backup centrifuge for the sewer treatment plant? I was talking to Van about that. Is it something you might know? Is it something that we have budgeted?
We're gonna have it budgeted in 16-17. We're gonna come to you with it. Van and I discussed it the other day. Our redundant centrifuge is down. As a matter of fact, our main...
Excuse me, what did you just say?
Our redundant centrifuge, the old one?
Yeah.
We got there for emergency is down.
Yeah, that doesn't work. We need a new backup centrifuge is what we need.
We sure do.
Which if anybody doesn't know what that is, it's basically the machine that processes the solid waste that goes to the sewer treatment plant, so...
The last process.
If that... If the one that we have takes a dump, I mean, no pun intended, then we need to... We're gonna be in trouble. Because we should have a backup that we rely on if the old one... Which is a really nice unit. I mean, it's extremely expensive, and I think a backup is gonna cost quite a bit of money. So we... That's something that we're gonna work on, then.
Yes, we are.
I'm just trying to prioritize, because that's something that we can't have a sewer backup.
No.
There's no tolerance for error there.
Right now, councilman, we're teetering. The main centrifuge is down. We're waiting for a gearbox. So, yeah. So it's real touchy right now.
So right now, we're actually experiencing part of that.
We're hurting.
I know Van told me this months ago, because I make a regular stop at the sewer treatment plant. Just to see how it's going out there. And he just gives me his major concerns. I just get a wish list from him, and they're mandatory things that he absolutely needs. Actually, he needs a Bobcat as well, but I know we're not talking about that. We're talking about F-150s, 250s, and 550s, but I just think a centrifuge is... We need to make sure that's taken care of before any trucks are bought.
Finance director and I are gonna present them to you for your prioritization. We're gonna list everything we need, and of course, you're gonna have to prioritize and pick and choose. We understand we don't have all the money, but at least you're gonna be aware of what we need.
Okay.
And centrifuge is very important.
Yeah, it absolutely is.
And the gearbox is an emergency purchase that's coming before you on July 5th?
Yes.
I just have one question. The vehicle replacement fund, is that one-line item that takes care of all departments? Or is it...
I believe it is. I can confer with...
I believe it is, yeah.
He's nodding yes.
Oh, it is.
And so to follow up to that question, there is plenty of money in the 15-16 current budget that we're in to cover these expenses?
$340,000.
So nothing will come from reserve?
No.
Enough money in the fund?
I believe this fund is a reserve, however. It's a vehicle replacement reserve, yes.
I went and spent about an hour with Derek today, and he had a conversation with him about our vehicle situation, and he kinda enlightened me a little bit how we're in dire straits and how we need these vehicles, and I'm all for it, for getting some new vehicles.
Great, okay, we're moving right along. Okay, what is your pleasure on items 10 and 11?
I'll make a motion to approve 10 and 11.
Do you pick up trucks?
I'll second it.
Move the second item. Comments? Call for the vote?
Four ayes.
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry. Where are we, Phil?
Number 15, general business.
General... Okay, do we mind if we just take a couple-minute break?
For the...
Okay, thank you.
Is that a reset?
Quick five, this is a reset.
I am sorry, audience, we're going to take some of these things out of order. Um, we're going to go to item 17, which is the cruise ship berthing facility. And there you go.
Next one. Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. So, for some of you who were on council back in 2014, a lot of this PowerPoint's going to look really familiar because I repurposed a lot of the information here. There was no point in trying to rebuild it and change it, so it's largely just a re-presentation of that information. And, let's see. Oh, did I blow it already, Jordan? Okay. So, um, leading up to, um, the whole reason that a feasibility study was ever done was that, uh, back in 2014, the city and, um, members of the Chamber of Commerce and members of the business community came together to fund a feasibility study and look at various options that might work for, um, addressing a need that had been pointed out by the cruise industry. And as you were told a couple of years ago, "There will come a time when the ships will not be willing to consider tendering into our port. The continued growth in size of new cruise ships and the relocation of and retiring of older smaller ships to emerging destinations in the Far East has only increased the likelihood that we will hear this refrain." In recent meetings with industry executives, they have queried when, as to when we will address this need. Major cruise lines that do not call on us now have also stated that they will only consider adding our port if or when we add a docking system. And, um, just as backup, because, you know, all of this research was done before I was really here at the helm and I've done my best to be a good student of it, but I do have, um, Dave Cree here, who was present and was our cruise industry liaison throughout that time period, and I have Buddy Wilson and Konrad Ovega, who are both active members of our cruise industry committee. So, between us, we have a pretty good brain trust for the questions that will come at the end of the presentation, I'm sure. Um, so the slide that's up right now shows what were estimated impacts from cruise ship visitors economically back at the time of the study. The middle column, sightseeing at the top, was from the 2011 Chamber of Commerce analysis at our fiscal year-end, and the other numbers are referred to in detail in the binders that were emailed out to all of you or that were presented back in 2014. Um, and were based on 2012 average transit passengers expenditures in U.S. ports by a firm called BREA, the Business Research Economic Advisors. Um, in addition to that, we at the Chamber are in the midst of doing a year-long study on visitor spending, including segmentation on cruise ship passengers. So, um, we'll be soon able to show, um, even in-market data on what that spending represents to our community. And in this chart, you'll see that an analysis based on 160,000 visitors in a year, the revenue to the city in taxes and fees would be just over $1 million. In 2015, we hosted over 200,000 cruise ship visitors, and warfage alone on those calls was 435,000. So, half of the model right there, almost in the $1 million, already realized, um, without the new fee structure in place that's talked about later. So, um, at the Chamber, we hear from our members about how important the cruise ship passengers are to their survivability. Many of you and I have even engaged in conversations about what it used to be like in the town when, you know, when things sort of went quiet during the off-season, and that the cruise industry has really been a part of what's made us a much more perennial destination and keeps the businesses open even on the non-cruise ship days because of the revenue they make on the cruise ship days for the rest of the visitors to come and enjoy. And, um, I know that Mr. Bombard pointed that out in one of my very first meetings when I got here with him, is that, you know, it's been a real turning point in why he can then have the passenger loads to come on the other days because now the businesses are open for longer periods of the season than they used to be. Also pointed out by our membership is the fact that different carriers represent different demographics, and when we have a call from, say, Princess, for example, many of our merchants report increased revenues. They would like to see more of those types of ships calling on us, and as you see here, those carriers would be more likely to call on our port with a berthing facility in place. So, um, as I referenced just a moment ago, several years ago, the whole discussion really got some traction, and, um, the attention of both the Chamber as well as the city put funds into financing the study. So, um, this is not just the Chamber "we," this is the cumulative communal "we." Don't have money to, um, go out and buy or build this sort of facility that would meet this request. And, um, we know that the only way to make this viable is to have the costs financed or guaranteed. The only way to make it sustainable is to have it be self-amortizing without a financial burden back to the city or its citizens. And, of course, in the event that the financing is not repaid in full, title would revert back to those who finance it, in this case, the cruise industry. So, um, what you see here is just a cover sheet from the whole feasibility study and the firms that were involved in bringing that information together. And then I'll just quickly, without going through all the detail that was in the 2014 presentation, hit on the options that were called out. Option one, plan U, as you see here, is, represents an installation of a dock that would be, um, along the side of the existing mole and extending out into the bay. The estimated cost for that was $27 million in 2014 money. Option two shows, um, a similar attachment to the mole but extending out into, I'll call it, open water, as opposed to the bay. The estimated cost for that was $29.6 million in 2014 dollars.
Can I hold one ship or two? Two.
It would hold two? Okay.
One on each side, then, like that?
Yes, it looks as though it would be able to have a tie at each side.
Two.
Okay.
So, um, design plan number three is called a floating pier, or you'll also see references later to it being called Seawalk. Like the previous plan, it extends out into the open water but only when a boat is in port. The cost for that was determined to be $14.1 million.
Could you go back to that drawing again?
Sure. And I've got a better diagram, that's why I went quickly past it.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, I'm going to show you something else, but I'll let you look for a moment. The final option, for which they didn't even come up with a cost estimate, was to build a large facility out near Pebbley Beach that would be both an air and sea terminal, and, um, as I said, no dollar amount was even attached to that estimate. So, here's the summary of those costs. Another part of the study was to look at regulating bodies' perceptions of each of those three plans. And here you can see who they were interviewing. Options one and two, the fixed piers, were deemed to be feasible but with significant mitigation measures. And if you really read the deep detail in the big binder, um, there were a lot of environmental concerns on a long-term, ongoing day-to-day basis about either of those designs. Option three, the floating pier, received the most favorable of all of the options and was seen to, or was believed to have the least environmental impact on native habitat and species. Option four was deemed to have considerable potential conflict from fish and wildlife officials and that it was just unmitigatable for what it would damage, the damage it would do to the environment. So, from the standpoint of the recommendations of the feasibility study, option three was deemed to be most financially responsible and most environmentally responsible should we go forward. And, now you'll get a better image of how it actually works, may I? And there isn't sound.
Are they towing the boat in to get to that?
That sounds, that sounds totally flat.
There's such flat water in the north of Norway.
I know, but is, was it, how's it getting there? Is it on?
I believe the boat is under its power and the pier is under a separate power source.
Yeah, that, I would like to think something like this could work, but with 15-foot swells on our nor'easters, that thing's going to wind up on the beach.
So, um, in just a moment, I'll let those who really had the deep conversations about the technology address some of those questions. That, of course, is when it's fully extended. That's as much of the video as I captured. So, the financing, um, a second part or a secondary study was done by Lisa Grobar, a PhD at Cal State University of Long Beach, and, um, based on certain assumptions, including a warfage fee of $10.50 per passenger, and then you can see the breakdown of how that would go toward the city and toward the funding of the pier. And based on 160,000 cruise line passengers, which, again, I told you, were already exceeding, we can see repayment, um, in either 22 years or as little as 10.7 years based on, um, 4% or, well, you can read the chart across, but 4% being probably a more market-rate interest rate today than a couple of years ago. So, um, it would, of course, be the dream of our cruise industry committee and of our board to see something like this come to fruition. Um, we know that you're going to be looking, we thought first, but now after our presentation, on mole renovations and, very likely, one is dependent upon the other, there'd be no point in building a system and tying it to a broken mole, so, um, we would probably recommend that both be considered for approval. And, um, with that, I think we probably should go to the questions that you were starting to ask just a moment ago, but I don't feel fully qualified to answer, but that others in the room could probably help me address.
Step on that, Dave. Well, I'll tell you, that little financial page, it was a lot easier to read than the financial pages that Grobar did in that, in this whole study, my God.
Um, in answer to Councilman Hernandez's question, he's quite correct. The premise on the initial feasibility study was that this was to be considered a fair-weather port, meaning that the pier would not be deployed on days that we couldn't tender, as an example. And that, and so the solution of the engineers representing the manufacturer of Seawalk would be to put the, um, pier in occasions of high seas, to attach the pier to the mooring buoy and thereby not have the problem of it crashing into the mole facility. What I would hope that we would do at the end of the day-to-day would be to, direct staff to meet with the cruise lines to determine whether or not there is really financing available on acceptable terms, but has been offered is a direct loan at their interest rate, which is somewhere in the 2% through 3% range, uh, with the understanding that if they don't come, we don't pay. And that has been the principle and keystone of our approach to them since 2007, when this all started, was we can't put in a pier if you guys don't come. So, the concept would be that in the event they were to loan the money to the city to do this pier, if they fail, if the cruise line's revenues fail to pay the repay, the cost of the development, the city would not owe the money and therefore the citizens would not owe. So, the purpose, so, what I, my hope is, our hope is that the city would authorize staff, I assume you'd be your financial person or city manager, to meet with the cruise line to determine and develop a confidential memorandum of understanding that if the decision, if the decision was made to do a pier, would they be willing to finance it? And, and the second, and the second would be to ask the developer, the builder of the pier to provide assurances that it will tolerate the sea conditions in Avalon. So, um...
And, but, just a quick question. I think we have tons, however, and it is built and after a couple of years, they go, are they going to take it, they going to take it away, refurbish our mole and take away the thing if it doesn't work or if the cruise ships pull out and there's no revenue? What happens to this device that's now on our mole?
That is, that would be a subject to be discussed at this meeting with our financial people, but my, my understanding, okay, I started the negotiations on the SIRI, "You don't come, we don't pay," and that's 2007, 2009. Then Seawalk appeared, and the then-head guy at the cruise line came to me and said, "Well, I've got an idea for you," and he showed this pier. My belief is that the reason they have stepped up to the plate is that they view this as a removable pier, and if we can't pay for it, meaning if the cruise lines decide not to come, and they only, they're not all of the cruise lines, so cruise lines decide not to come and the revenues aren't sufficient to repay the loan, they'll take it back. In other words, it'd be like a, like a conditional sale.
Number three is called the floating pier, or you'll also see references later to it being called Seawalk. Like the previous plan, it extends out into the open water, but only when a boat is in port. The cost for that was determined to be fourteen point one million dollars.
Could you go back to that drawing again?
Sure. And I've got a better diagram, that's why I went quickly past it.
Oh, okay, okay.
So I'm gonna show you something else, but I'll let you look for a moment. The final option for which they didn't even come up with a cost estimate was to build a large facility out near Pebbley Beach that would be both an air and sea terminal. And as I said, no dollar amount was even attached to that estimate. So here's the summary of those costs. Another part of the study was to look at regulating bodies' perceptions of each of those three plans. And here you can see who they were interviewing. Options one and two, the fixed piers, were deemed to be feasible but with significant mitigation measures. And if you really read the detail in the big binder, there were a lot of environmental concerns on a long-term, ongoing day-to-day basis about either of those designs. Option three, the floating pier, received the most favorable of all of the options, and was seen to, or was believed to have the least environmental impact on native habitat and species. Option four was deemed to have considerable potential conflict from fish and wildlife officials, and that it was just unmitigatable for what it would damage, the damage it would do to the environment. So from the standpoint of the recommendations of the feasibility study, option three was deemed to be most financially responsible and most environmentally responsible should we go forward. And now you'll get a better image of how it actually works, may I? And there isn't sound.
Are they towing the boat in to get to that?
That sounds totally flat.
There was such flat water in the north of Norway.
But was it, how's it getting there?
I believe the boat is under its power and the pier is under a separate power source.
Yeah, I would like to think something like this could work, but with fifteen-foot swells on our nor'easters, that thing's gonna wind up on the beach.
So in just a moment, I'll let those who really had the deep conversations about the technology address some of those questions. That, of course, is when it's fully extended. That's as much of the video as I captured. So the financing. A second part, or a secondary study, was done by Lisa Grobar, a PhD at Cal State University of Long Beach. And based on certain assumptions, including a warfage fee of ten fifty per passenger, and then you can see the breakdown of how that would go toward the city and toward the funding of the pier. And based on 160,000 cruise line passengers, which, again, I told you, were already exceeding, we can see repayment in either twenty-two years or as little as ten point seven years based on four percent, or, well, you can read the chart across, but four percent being probably a more market rate interest rate today than a couple of years ago. So it would, of course, be the dream of our cruise industry committee and of our board to see something like this come to fruition. We know that you're going to be looking, we thought first, but now after our presentation, on mole renovations, and very likely one is dependent upon the other, there'd be no point in building a system and tying it to a broken mole. So we would probably recommend that both be considered for approval. And with that, I think we probably should go to the questions that you were starting to ask just a moment ago, but I don't feel fully qualified to answer, but that others in the room could probably help me address safely for you.
Well, I'll tell ya, that little financial page, it was a lot easier to read than the financial pages that Grobar did in that whole study, my god.
In answer to Councilman Hernandez's question, he's quite correct. The premise on the initial feasibility study was that this was to be considered a fair-weather port, meaning that the pier would not be deployed on days that we couldn't tender, as an example. And so the solution of the engineers representing the manufacturer of Seawalk would be to put the pier, and in occasions of high seas, to attach the pier to the mooring buoy and thereby not have the problem of it crashing into the mole facility. What I would hope that we would do at the end of the day-to-day would be to direct staff to meet with the cruise lines to determine whether or not there is really financing available on acceptable terms. What has been offered is a direct loan at their interest rate, which is somewhere in the two percent through three percent range, with the understanding that if they don't come, we don't pay. And that has been the principle and keystone of our approach to them since 2007, when this all started, was we can't put in a pier if you guys don't come. So the concept would be that in the event they were to loan the money to the city to do this pier, if they fail, if the cruise line's revenues fail to pay the repay, the cost of the development, the city would not owe the money, and therefore the citizens would not owe. So the purpose, so what my hope is, our hope is, that the city would authorize staff, I assume you'd be your financial person or city manager, to meet with the cruise line to determine and develop a confidential memorandum of understanding that if the decision, if the decision was made to do a pier, would they be willing to finance it. And the second would be to ask the developer, or the builder of the pier, to provide assurances that it will tolerate the sea conditions in Avalon. So.
And just a quick question, I think we have tons, however, and it is built, and after a couple of years, they go, are they gonna take it, they gonna take it away, refurbish our mole and take away the thing if it doesn't work? Or if the cruise ships pull out and there's no revenue? What happens to this device that's now on our mole?
That is, that would be a subject to be discussed at this meeting with their financial people, but my, my understanding, okay. I started the negotiations on the SIRI, you don't come, we don't pay. And that's 2007, 2009. Then Seawalk appeared. And the then-head guy at the cruise line came to me and said, "Well, I've got an idea for you," and he showed this pier. My belief is that the reason they have stepped up to the plate is that they view this as a removable pier, and if we can't pay for it, meaning if the cruise lines decide not to come, and they only, they're not all of the cruise lines, so cruise lines decide not to come, and the revenues aren't sufficient to repay the loan, they'll take it back. In other words, it'd be like a conditional sale.
Like repo in a car.
Like repo in a car. And so it defeats the purpose for all this effort, because without the pier, they're not gonna come anyway, so, but I'm.
Is that for sure? Is that for sure they won't come if there's no pier?
There's not for sure.
Okay. I wanna make sure that we're clear on that, yeah. Cause they're gonna wanna, people are gonna wanna come here.
What has been told to us for years, and more and more and more and more, is that if we don't have a pier at some point in time, we are likely not to have any cruise ships come. Because the studies that they have done, and from their own experience, is that their tendering ports versus the ports with piers generate 25% less revenue for the cruise ship, for their, what they call their onboard revenue related to excursions, what they get out of the excursion money. Also, the merchants have 25% less, because the passenger spends less time on shore. So that's been their experience worldwide, so that's why they, and then, mobility-challenged passenger is, in a sense, discriminated against, they're constantly worried about Americans with Disabilities Act not complying, because their, mobility-challenged people can't get off the ship into a tender, and the time it takes to discharge a vessel and load it again.
So there's not a tender that can, that can handle a handicapped person?
There are, we are now doing it, with the current tender operator we have, people are able to get ashore for the first time in wheelchairs, but somebody who's less, less mobile than a wheelchair.
I understand.
Has a difficult time with the balance issues. Those are their concerns, whether they're correct concerns, I can't.
Sounds, sounds pretty legit.
That's what they say to us.
I mean, the handicap, the ADA thing is really important. So what do the cruise lines want, I mean, from the city? Do you know?
They would, they would, they would like to have in Catalina is a pier that they could use. To do, to get that, to increase their share of their excursion dollars by 25%, to make it a more pleasant experience for their passengers. It's easier to walk off a ship than balancing getting on and off a floating boat. They're willing to provide the financing with the understanding that if, for some reason, the bottom dropped out of the cruise ship market, cruise ship visitors market, and we don't have the revenues to pay it from the income stream created by the warfage for cruise ship passengers, we don't have to repay it.
Can we select, I mean, have any of these cruise lines made an offer to us? Because can we just select the one that we like the best, that gives us the sweetest deal?
No.
It doesn't, well.
I mean, cause they're gonna wanna come here.
But Joseph, I don't believe, I don't believe so. I mean, some of these people just do repositioning cruises, and, I mean, it's not like everybody's gonna be signing up, wanting a day of the week to come.
Well, we have, currently, we have one cruise line that comes here every week. We have Princess and Holland America that is also owned by that same cruise line. We are about to have Norwegian Cruise Lines for two voyages in 2017, and we're about, and we're, and we've got about eight voyages a year from Princess, and about four to six a year from Holland America. We are an attractive destination for somebody trying to maintain a presence on the west coast of North America in the off-season between Alaska's seasons and the Mexican Riviera season. So we're attractive in March, April, May, little bit into June, and we're attractive September, October, November, December to the cruise lines, because it's someplace they can go that they don't, they're not in Alaska, and they're not in Mexico. So, which makes it great for us, cause that's our, that's our off-season, you know? But again, I'm not, we're not asking tonight to make a commitment to put in a pier, we're asking to make a commitment to direct staff to negotiate the financing if a pier were to be made.
Question to comment?
One question I had, the information in our packet was prepared by you guys, it wasn't prepared by city staff, right?
No, everything in that was.
On the recommendations, would there be any reason why you wouldn't do a, conduct a hearing?
No.
Do number three first, before you spent the time and effort?
Thought about that, but the only problem with that is, now you decide, and you spend all that time and energy, and the emotional and psychological impacts, and the town involving, and then you go to the cruise line, and you can't get it financed. So it's a, it's a.
Oh, I see.
It's one of the cart before the horse issues, and I've struggled with that. But if we can't go to the public, to the citizens, and say, "Here's the deal."
Here's the deal.
Not what I, Dave Crey thinks, not what Jim thinks, not what Buddy thinks, but this is the, this is the deal we can put together with the cruise line. And this is the assurances we get from, from the engineer, the designer of the product with respect to the wave conditions, and this is insurable and warrantable to questions, do we wanna have, do we wanna have a pier? And that's the, that's when I think you go to the public and ask that question.
Would it be, would we have the same concern going the opposite way? So say you're able to work out a deal for financing or whatnot, and then, say, the citizens don't, don't wanna go forward with it, is that gonna create an issue with our relationship as it currently stands?
No, no. They are very, 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 very experienced in dealing with communities. Carnival is an example, it is in 164 ports, 163 ports around the world. They deal with 163 city councils, or, or, most of them are in countries, so they totally understand that I, or Jim, or Buddy can't make any commitment on behalf of the city of Avalon, and at the end of the day, it's up to the city councils to make the decision. So if, if, and by the way, they totally understand the concept of getting the deal struck with regard to the financing before you get permission, cause otherwise, you go, you'd be asking the community, "Well, if we can get financing, would you be willing to go forward?" And what, as opposed to saying, "We've got the financing, here's the engineering, are you willing to go forward?"
I have a couple of questions. How many, do we, is there any studies done as to how many cruise ship passengers we can accommodate in this community?
That, Joe, that's a very, very interesting question, and I think that's, that's something that has to be, the worst thing that could happen to Avalon, in my opinion, is if we had three cruise ships a day, seven days a week.
That would kill us.
It would bury us. I mean, I.
We're talking about quality of life issues right now, and we did tonight, and I'm glad you guys were here, it's really important to us to attain and retain our quality of life here, cause I have people already commenting on.
Totally agree. The problem, of course, it's a really, it's a balancing act. On the one hand, you need the revenues to provide the ability to deliver services to have the quality of life, in order to get those revenues, how do you do it? In our case, we do it with visitors. So how to get the balance? I have people I know in St. Martin, as an example, where they get 25,000 people a day, and they're, they're, they're now going to change that, because it's just too much of a burden on the community. So how to make that not happen here is certainly one of the things that we have to consider, but also bearing in mind that we are not a, we're not a traditional tropical port. So our season, the reason our seasons are what they are, fall and spring, is because Alaska opens up in the winter, I mean, in the summer, and Mexico is in the summer, where people wanna go cruise ships when it's hot. That's, that is a Bible concept for the cruise people. So we will get the occasional off-season visitor, we get, we get the visitor, the cruise ships from Carnival in a large measure, because they spent $50 million putting a terminal in Long Beach, cause they believe in the three- and four-day product, that means our cruises that are here every week are on a three-day and four-day schedule out of Ensenada. And they believe in that product, as did Royal Caribbean at one time, because it's an introductory cruise. You find out whether you really would like to go on a cruise, and then you're not gonna have to spend so much money to learn that by going on a three-day or a four-day cruise. So that's what makes it attractive for us.
But am I correct, I could be wrong, but those cruises are originating in Long Beach? They're not just, they're not visiting Long Beach originally? So the amount of money they're making is totally different than what we're making? Wouldn't you think?
Say that again?
Wouldn't you imagine Long Beach is making a lot more money than we are because those cruises originate in Long Beach?
Well, they built, they built the pier. I assume they've got some arrangement with the city of Long Beach to provide Long Beach revenues for that. They have two ships, so those ships come to and from Long Beach twice a week. We get them come once a week each. So their, their, their revenues are, Long Beach, Long Beach's revenues are greater than ours. Actually, they have a third ship that comes once a week, there's a seven-day ship out of, out of Long Beach. But they also, they're amortizing a $50 million investment plus.
Right. So let me ask you another question, because when I was reading the, in the original study, when you sent out just a very brief questionnaire to four or five of those, six of those cruise lines, and you asked them a very simple question, if we had a, if we had a floating, if we had a non-floating, if we had Department of Homeland Security, what is the process? And would, how do you know if, do we know if Department of Homeland Security, what it takes to set that up, if they would do that here? Because they said if they had Department of Homeland Security, there was a much better chance than with none. So what do we know about DHS?
That's been a long, I mean, that, I've been working on that for a long, long time. What, what that means is that they could clear a ship, Customs clear a ship here, Customs and Immigration clear a ship here in Avalon. So, meaning, they could come from Acapulco.
Right.
And come directly to Avalon, clear the ship, and go on to San Francisco legitimately. As it stands, they can't do that.
Right.
So, because all cruise ships must have a foreign port on their itinerary in order to call the American ports, call between American ports. So, I lost my train of thought.
So I'm just wondering, have you investigated that with DHS, or what is that process?
Yes, we're, it's very unique. We're one of the busiest port in America at present, in Los Angeles, Long Beach. Customs Agency, or Homeland Security now, is, and has been up to their, below, underwater in terms of servicing and providing personnel. Also, they're under the gun, each Customs District, or each Homeland Security District, is responsible for everything that goes on in their district. San Diego is a different district than Los Angeles. San Diego is willing to clear a vessel, what they call a gangway clearance, in other words, all the passengers don't have to get off with their bags, they leave their bags on the ship, they come from a foreign port, they do a gangway clearance, and then the people can go into San Diego, do their shopping, see what they wanna see, and come back aboard the ship, and the ship continues, and can go to San Francisco with no problem, but it can't come to LA. San Diego gangway cleared vessel will not be allowed to clear, come to Los Angeles unless it goes through a full, and it's because of that conflict between these two districts and the, but this, I understand from talking to the people of the Port of Los Angeles, this concern is dissipating. We're considered, Avalon is considered, part of the Los Angeles, Long Beach port system. Los Angeles, Long Beach, Catalina port. So I believe that with the ability to provide a pier, so when they're thinking about manning of a, a gangway clearing of a vessel, how'd they do that with a tender vessel? They can't, haven't been able to surmount that problem. So whether that would ever happen or not, I don't know.
Because that seems like some of, some of those guys, the DHS is necessary.
Holland America, that would be a big deal for them.
Especially for them, yeah.
Royal Caribbean, not so. And Princess, not so.
Okay, and let me ask another question on the, because I was reading about the shadowing and concerned with that, and then the anchor drags and those kinds of things. In your, because when you did reach, reach out to all of those different environmental agencies and all the regulatory agencies, was there any indication on their side how long it would take to permit something like this?
No, but, and I've had some experience, and I think it could be done in less than a year.
Coastal Commission?
Significantly less than a year.
Oh, well, okay.
No, that's, I know that's, I'm selling, but I'm based, that representation to you based upon some life experience I had doing permitting a pier elsewhere.
Okay. One of the, and I don't know what the council's gonna decide, but we are gonna, we just approved to do that study, you know, there's a big concern, and the reason all the sand is moving, the where, way it's moving now in our harbor is because of the express boats, cross-channel carrier boats, tendering boats, and everything really moving that around. And I was chatting with someone today's in the boating business, and talking about that as it goes out towards Lover's Cove area, that when you have these big ships coming in, I don't know if they thrust, or I don't know what they do, but that is an environmentally protected agent, area, and I.
Totally understand what you're saying.
Yeah, so I'm kind of curious what this study says as well, I mean, maybe we could still, if you wanna go along and, and do the conversations, but, but I'm really gonna be curious to see what that says, because that would be a big one.
Absolutely, and there's no way we, the, we understand, and the regulatory agencies that we went to, which is California Coastal Commission, the Fish and Game, which regulates that Marine Reserve, and the California Lands Commission, all made it clear that we, nothing we're doing, including prop wash, or thruster wash, or whatever, can affect Lover's Cove. So my view is, we have to leave it to the engineers at the regulatory agency, and our environmental engineers to ensure us that this won't happen.
Well, they approved, they approved the mole at one point, too, but.
Yeah, that was 1965, before, before the Coastal Commission.
Those were the brains at that point, at that time. You know, I don't wanna jump ahead with all of the other kinds of comments that Joseph has come up, Councilman Sampson has come up with, let's talk about how you all wanna move forward, because I think there's the chicken and egg kind of issues here to deal with.
I would be in favor of moving forward, items one and two are information gathering. Three, I think, is the most important, and that is the presentation to the community and a public hearing to the community. So I would be in favor of moving forward to gather information to be able to present to the community.
May I, I'd like to add one thing I didn't include. The last two times I spoke with the cruise lines about the financing, I indicated that we were in kind of deep trouble with our mole. And of necessity, this pier will be attached to the mole, and that, as a result, there are going to be modifications required for the mole to accommodate this facility, and that for purposes of, for purpose of passenger satisfaction, from their stand. And that for, for purposes of, for purpose of passenger satisfaction from their standpoint, what they arrive at, at the mole needs to be improved. And would they consider making that part of this financing? And the answer was yes. So, my, I believe, this is Dave Cre personally, based upon fifteen years of doing this. I believe they would seriously consider including a couple of million dollars in this financing package to contribute to the mole renovation.
Another question?
Yes, ma'am.
I could ask questions all night long, uh, but we've been here all night long. Uh, so, you're talking about larger ships. Right now, we get about twenty-five hundred to three thousand people is the biggest ship we've got going now.
Twenty-five hundred?
We've had thirty-five hundred.
The biggest?
Today was about twenty-six hundred fifteen plus nine hundred.
Nine hundred crew?
What's the big Princess? Thirty-five hundred.
Okay, and so, so, and now they're talking about bigger and better ships and some of those ships are five thousand people and.
Don't, we just don't have to agree to take them.
What's that?
You don't have to agree to take them. The likelihood of their coming here is pretty slim. Our, one of the biggest selling points we have for Catalina, all of the cruise lines calculate their financial, the viability of a, of a, of an itinerary the same way, but not everybody admits it. And that is, they take what they sell the cabin for, plus their onboard revenue minus fuel. And we are, in the case of Carnival, out of twenty-nine ships, we're number two, number one or number two in, in income based upon that calculation because they don't use any fuel. They just don't use any fuel. So, the, the same thing doesn't hold true on a five thousand passenger vessel because they've got the fuel issues that are different, so.
I guess I'd, I'd really be curious to see what we are gaining, to what extent we are gaining. If we've got two here, you know, two are coming every week and then, I just don't know what we're gaining for the large project. And I guess that's for you all to provide us that information to see what they gain and that.
Listen, part of the purpose in this in the first place was to keep the ones we have and hopefully enhance those coming in the fall and spring. When we need, when we could use more people. So, and then ultimately, the city is in, in position to control the number of visitors. I mean, I wouldn't do, do it by limiting the number of ships because the ships vary in size. I mean, we can get a twenty-five hundred passenger ship and then there's the world that carries a hundred and forty. So, you wouldn't want to limit them. But, I think one of the things that might be considered is to evaluate how many visitors by cruise ship do we want to have in a given day or a given week or some time period.
How many do we want to have or how many are we feasibly able to have? Um, I think that's the question that I'm asking is like, how many people can we accommodate? And, um, how's it going to affect what is already established in this town and the economy the way it already is? I want to make sure that, like I've said multiple times tonight, I want to protect what we already have here. We already have a good product, we're selling it. Cruise ship's a new, uh, it's, it's a new experience. I mean, we had the Steamer when we were young, younger, and, um, it was a good thing and it came and went. And we have a lot of guests here that come to patronize our community, that stay at hotels and they like what, what they have here. I don't want to, I don't want to ruin that for anybody. So, I just want to make sure you guys understand.
Totally agree.
As you go ahead with these studies, we have to preserve the quality of life we have now.
Totally agree. I can tell, represent to you that the hoteliers in town, including Greg Miller, I know the Island Company, um, Saint Laurent, Mr. Tousie can speak for himself, like having the cruise ships come because they know that somewhere between two and six percent of their guests came to Catalina the first time on a cruise ship and decided to come back and spend a night. I mean, that's a fact. And we, we had a, we had studies done at the Chamber over a number of years that averaged about two and a half percent of the, of the six hundred thousand people that come here a year came here because they were here on a cruise ship, liked it, came back.
Okay, the balancing point would be, um, how many's just enough and how many's too many? So, two ships, five thousand people each or three thousand each, it's extra, six thousand people in town is going to destroy someone, could destroy somebody's experience here. We want to make sure that they keep, they keep coming back, you know?
Totally agree.
And bring ten friends with them.
Because, and the cruise ship passenger got the same problem. The cruise lines, I believe, and the cruise ship passenger has the same problem. If we're not comfortable, our existing guests are having a bad time because there are too many people. Their people are having a bad time because there's too many people.
We're a small town. I mean, that's why I'm, I'm just telling you this is, is because that's my major concern. I, I've lived here for fifty, over fifty years, so, um, I know some stuff.
I, I agree with you and, and I was thinking about this, this today that we're, I believe, I'm going to check this. I think we're the smallest destination of any destination of, of population and area-wise in the world, I think. Aside from, I mean, for full-on cruise ship as opposed to an explorer-type cruise ship, but a full-on cruise ship destination, I think we're the smallest. And we just couldn't, infrastructure and just being like walking down the street is, would not tolerate it, so.
Yeah, we can't get to that point.
No.
Had to make sure we know what we're going to do before we do it and how it's going to, you know, I mean, I mean, the way it's worked out has been really, really well. Um, it's, it's fitting great. Um, we have two cruise ships out there. I don't know, it might compromise the quality of life, um, for the visitors that are staying here for a week or four days and, and then the locals too. I'm sure we love it. We love working hard. We like having a buck in our pockets.
Well, I can tell you as a business owner here, I was able to stay open seven days a week because we had two cruise ships. It gave me five profitable days a week, so the other two I could get by with a break even, you know?
I understand. It, it might affect someone not so positively on the other side of that as well.
I don't know, but the Doug, Doug Bombard thanked me one time for doing what I was doing to try to keep our travel, cruise passengers. He said, because, because he can remember the day when he used to be asked for refunds because people who came over here in November, nothing was open. And it's because, so he thinks the cruise ships and our cross-channel, it's like synergistic support each other. So, the question is how not to let that get out of hand.
Yeah, and how to build a, a pier or a float or some kind of a walk that is not going to have a bad effect on the community. Uh, this is great, great conversation, I appreciate it. Um, we've got to figure this one out. It's, it's absolutely necessary. Um, I just, I'm just wondering what the cruise ships are going to want from us. I don't know if they're going to want to, um, um, especially when we're going to be attached to them with a loan from them. Um, that's kind of scary to me. They're going to have a lot of influence in the way they affect the community, um.
The terms of the note will determine our obligations. They don't want anything from us except a place to come where their passengers can be easily loaded and unloaded. They will, they will bargain for who gets, which cruise line gets preference. In other words, if the finance, if the, the cruise line that does the financing, they're going to want that on Mondays and Tuesdays or Wednesdays and Thursday or whatever that, that day of the week is, that's their day because of their, they have done this kind of financing. That's the kind of thing they're going to expect from us.
Well, maybe we should, we should consider financing, somehow trying to finance this ourselves. That way we, we're the ones who, who delegate when people come into our town. Um, until we've got a foothold on that. I understand it's an absurd amount of money, but I think some of these ideas are, are a little bit, um.
Well, the fourteen million is.
Over the top.
The fourteen million is a fairly decent number. There's some cushion in there. The twenty-four to twenty, and twenty-seven million dollars, in my own opinion, but having built a pier, a couple of piers, that's probably light. And impossible to put, put a fixed pier here, in my opinion.
No, I don't think you were saying fixed pier. I think you were saying that we finance it ourselves. That's what you were saying. Maybe buy that, buy a seawalk ourselves.
Yeah, just by a float, something that we just float out and then we pull it out. We extract it. That way, it's not blocking. When you go out, out of Avalon Harbor, you're going to have another pier out there on, um, and it's going to go right out in front of Lover's Cove as well. What's, what's wrong with our, the mole that we have? Why can't they just pull up to that?
A, doesn't, doesn't have enough water and B, it's not long enough, big enough.
This thing is about nine hundred and some feet long, nine hundred.
What is this ship?
No, that, the, the arm is about nine hun, each piece is three twenty or something like that?
They're, they're eighty, eighty meter segments, so that's twenty, two, two, two hundred and forty feet a segment.
And is that, is that something you can pull out of the water or what do you do with it? You, as you say, you put it on a mooring?
Folds back up and against.
Folds back up?
It folds up against the, the mole.
The mole, really?
And, and, or it's extended out. The concept is, I, the concept of the pier is, a pier traditionally is considered a fixed and stable platform against which you bring a floating vessel. The guy that came up with this idea was facing the problem that in the fjords of Norway, you can't put in a fixed and stable platform pier because you can't drive pile four thousand feet down. So, he came up with this idea of making the ship fixed and stable and bring a floating pier alongside. How do you make the ship fixed and stable? You secure the ship on the stern to, in our case, to the mole by lines. And then you sink a huge, in the, down in the bottom of the sea, a anchor to which a mooring buoy is attached. And then you secure the ship to the mooring buoy. So, the ship's in the harbor, the ship is secured to the mole by lines and secured to the mooring buoy by lines, which stabilizes the ship and then you bring the floating pier alongside. They got the idea from those ships off, off El Segundo, they're bringing, they bring oil in. They're so, the ships are so big, they're ninety-foot draft ships, they can't get in the harbor, so they offload at sea, attached to an anchor. And that, that's attached to a mooring buoy that's attached to the anchor. So, when the ship, in our case, when the ship leaves, the stern lines are let go and the mooring buoy is let go. The folding pier could either be folded up and laid against the, the pier or, in the case of foul weather, taken out and attached to the mooring buoy and let it ride. It's, it's capable of handling something like, I think it's four meter seas, so that's twelve foot seas.
Yeah, we have fifteen, sixteen, twenty-foot seas. Uh, Hurricane Marie was, I saw thirty-foot, forty-foot swells coming through the, through there. So, I'm, I mean, you're talking a mountain of water.
Well, then I guess though, Joseph, if I could interrupt, I think on those days, the ship wouldn't even come.
No, I'm talking about the ship, I'm talking about the pier and.
No, no, so the pier's against the mole, so they would just sit there.
It's against the mole. No, he said when it's, when it's beyond twelve, twelve feet, you put it out.
But it won't be out unless the ship is coming. It stays, turns out.
Joe's right, Joe's right. He, in foul, in bad, in our bad weather, you take the pier and attach it to the mooring buoy and let it ride through the storm.
Oh, we do?
Yeah. Detach it from the mole and attach it to the mooring buoy. But, but this is something that the engineers, we're all just, I'm not an engineer, so let the engineers convince us that that will work.
That's, that's going to be a hard sell, but I, absolutely, I have to be, I'm, I'm going to be open-minded about this, but the problem is when we have a big swell, it's coming straight in towards Avalon.
Yes, sir.
So, that's what I, I've said it multiple times, that, that thing's going to wind up on our beach. It's going to wind up taking out boats. I mean, if the, if these guys don't have it right, one storm and, and it's going to devastate us. It, you know, it could even go into Lover's Cove and, uh, you know, just destroy that habitat. I want to make sure that we do this right, if we do it, that is.
I understand.
If it's doable.
Wouldn't want it any other way.
Yeah, it sounds like, thank you so much for being so prepared to answer our questions and, and, but your, your information is so palatable. I, you know, I'm interested in listening to you, I appreciate it.
I've been eating, sleeping and drinking it since two thousand and seven, so.
Yeah, I can tell.
Dave, what kind of equipment would we need to tow this to a mooring?
You don't. It's, it's, it's got a, can't remember, a big caterpillar, caterpillar diesel engine on the, on the end of it.
Uh-huh.
As you saw in that video clip, there, you saw the guy with a little knob.
Yeah, okay.
It's, it's powered out. You, originally, as the original conception was that it would be towed out by Harbor Department. But now they've, they've come up with an idea and, and employed it at all of their locations. There are three now, by the way. The one you saw, the video of, um, another Norwegian port and in Stockholm, the Port of Stockholm, in the sea, in the, in the Baltic. So, it's more like our conditions. And, um, and you just drive the thing out there. Drive it against the ship, drive it back.
Just one other question.
Yes, sir.
It just, the, bringing more people, we're at capacity now for infrastructure in the city. Adding more people, that kind of scare, terrifies me right now. Um, I don't know how far along we're, we are, are, are to fix everything right now for infrastructure. I know we have some plans for that. So, we're talking possibly two years down the line or a year, was, was that right?
I would.
If everything in a perfect world or would.
No, in a perfect world, I'd like it.
Be at two years or so?
But, no, I would.
I mean, realistically, with, with all the commissions and everybody.
With going through all the commission stuff and coordinating it with the mole, you, you have a feel for how long that's going to take. I would think between, in two or three years, it'd be completed.
Cause that, yeah.
They build these piers in six months from the date of order to the date of completion. So, if we ordered in January, we'd be installing it in August, but that's not the tough part. Tough part is.
Is, is there any chance if we default on our loan that they could, they could possess the mole from us so they can take something from us?
Absolutely not. No, absolutely not.
The actual pier, that's the collateral, basically.
If we do the floating pier.
My, my guess is they wouldn't even do that, but that, that's the concept.
And you believe that, that if, if everything was perfect? Because we only what, have two some million dollars in there, but you're, so you're saying anything that, any additional cost to that mole, they would put on the loan? Because, you know, we, we can fix that with the way, you know what I mean?
Depends on how you, you look at it. Do you, are you putting two million dollars on the mole or are you putting two million dollars in the pier and its infrastructure and its interchange with the mole? In other words, it would be charged to the pier and not to the mole project. So, you wouldn't want cross-contamination between the two, but.
But the fourteen million dollars was, if that cost is accurate, probably it's gone up by now. But if that number is accurate, that's if they were planning on just coming up, something was ready for them to attach it to.
Right.
Right.
Well, yes.
I mean, yes.
This was really ballparky and the engineers were very, very conservative in the amount of, I mean, I talked to the manufacturer myself and he backed down on the price of the underlying pier itself, it's seven million dollars. So, I believe that number, that fourteen, okay, let me answer it this way. When I spoke to the cruise lines about absorbing some of the cost of the mole renovation related to the hooking of this pier to the mole and then making the mole itself more attractive, more, a better experience for their passengers. attractive, more, a better experience for their passengers, I figured another two million dollars in, and they did not balk.
And what is the expense for us to move forward with these negotiations? How, how do you see that playing out, David? Who do you see going to these, where would these meetings be? Who would be going? What do you think the investment?
I would think you'd have your city manager, or, or your finance person, or both, and I offer my time, I've, if the chamber will pay for my travel expense, I will donate the time to make the introductions and get that started.
And to do that introduction, where are we going?
Miami. That's where, that's, that's the center of the universe.
That's where they're all at, right?
Yeah, they're all, they're all in Miami. And I wouldn't think it would more than a couple of days, if there is some preliminary discussions were had prior to going there.
Princess and Carnival.
Prince, yeah, Princess.
The traffic, or what are they gonna do?
No. Carnival has got, first of all, Carnival owns Princess. And Carnival owns.
But Carnival's based there, Princess is a Carnival pier.
Right.
By All American.
But Carnival's got the pocketbook. Okay?
Who's got the pocketbook?
Carnival.
Carnival.
So, as part of your study, would you consider the study, the impact on the foot traffic and the traffic in that mole area?
All of that would be part of the.
As part of your, as part of your condition, or whatever you got.
Yeah, I'm sure environmental impact report would be required. My thought was to try to do it at the same time you do the mole, I'm sure you have to do one for the mole, I'm guessing. If you have to do one for the mole renovation, do them both at the same time and save a lot of money.
I don't know if we should tie them all together, but maybe it's something, um, I'm hesitant to wanting to like be partners with them, I want us to remain the independent community we are. I just hate to go in like partners on something like this in business, but I would like to know what they're doing and, and how it's gonna fit into our community, I, I just.
I totally agree with you, I don't think we should even think of it in terms of partner, what they are as a financing organization, as far as I'm concerned, and that's the way I've approached it with them, is you want a pier for your passengers, we want a pier because your passengers will be happy, we can't pay for it. So if you want it, you pay for it, if we can't pay for it, revenues from you, then you take it back, the floating pier.
And so really, they're.
It's like buying a car on, from.
Yeah.
Financing it with, with Bank of America.
And your numbers are just all projected on this one cruise line?
The number, no, the numbers we projected and the materials you have are projected on what cruise passengers we have had. Now, I think 2015, we had 2080, two-hundred-and-eighty thousand, we had two-hundred-and-eighty thousand passengers last year.
Based, oh, based, okay, okay, oh, well, okay, what do y'all wanna do? I'm sorry, we kind of delayed this.
You want me to sit down?
Sure.
Well, just for the, for the general public, the, the recommendations that are, were being presented to us were, one, to commence confidential negotiations for an MOU regarding the financing of a cruise ship berthing facility that will provide the repayment, provide that repayment will be entirely out of cruise ship wharfage fees, and if there are insufficient fees or none, that the city will be relieved from repayment. The second was to direct staff to communicate with PMG, who is the builder, to obtain assurances, including wave tank testing, which I imagine would be necessary, if necessary, from Seawalk, that the pier will safely function in Catalina's long-period swells during high-sea episodes. And from there, upon receiving the results of one and two above, conduct a hearing to decide whether or not to build a cruise ship berthing facility. So that would be an opportunity for members of the public to really come in, get their questions answered, and to, to weigh in on what the community as a whole wants to do. I think part of the conversation that I heard was also to, if we could reach out to whatever permitting agency, the coastal commissioner, whatnot, to find out if we, if we would even be able to get a permit for such a thing. And I think you may have said, yes, we already did that?
But it might, or it might be simpler than what I thought.
Attached to your, to that big book of things you were given were the reports from the engi- our engineers, who talked with, to five agencies that would have, likely to have some input on this, to get what was, what is called a review in concept. Cause meaningless if they're gonna put their foot down, say, it's very unlikely that we would prove anything. You don't get any regulatory agency to admit, to commit that they'll approve anything if they don't have the thing in front of them, fully supported by engineering data. But you, in that report, you have an indication that, that the least of all the pier projects presented to them, the least impactful is the floating pier. Inferring that mitigations are minimal and likely to, you're likely to get a permit if you, if all of the things being equal. Environmental impact report discusses traffic and vehicular traffic and passenger traffic and inner harbor traffic and all those, all those things can be, can be dealt with in terms of either no, no impact or negative, negative impact or mitigatable impact, then you get your permit, is what I, but you never get an assurance on the front end.
So I guess, I'm really trying to be open, but I'm having a hard time, I guess I need to tell you. Once we step into this puddle, you put one foot in, you're gonna have to put the other foot in. So we get, so we do, we go to the cruise lines and we go to the finance people and they go, okay, well, maybe okay. Then we go, now we gotta contact all the environmental agents to start filling out reports, reforms, I don't know who's gonna do that and pay for that. So you stick that foot in the water, and then you stick the other foot, and then you look back and go, damn, it's too late to go back now, but look at all the money we spent trying to go forward. And then you put it to the people. And I'm just concerned with some of the business people that I speak to, and my concern about quality of life for folks, not with you being able to say, we're only gonna talk about two more cruise ships a week. You know, cause if you say, well, it's, you know, and we're gonna have ten more cruise ships, people in town, that might not be as palatable for some.
Shouldn't be.
So until you can say what, what we're getting out of it, other than money, I just, I'm just not real excited about moving forward. I think the egg needs, I think the people kinda need to know more about what the, the chamber's business vision is, because it's pretty much, and I am not anti-business, however, this has been for the last so many years, very business pushed, and the residents of Avalon just kinda sit back and go, ugh, you know, and so I, I almost want them to speak. Before we have such limited staff and limited financial resources, I'm just concerned about investing money and going forward, so.
May I comment on that?
Oh, please, yeah.
I envision the city not being out of pocket, aside from wages, maybe two thousand dollars in airfare and hotel room, maybe twenty-five hundred dollars.
And who's doing the EIRs?
Pardon?
And who's doing the EIRs?
Well, it's not the EIR, you don't, you don't do, you don't borrow the money, you don't do anything, you don't, if you go to the public and ask for approval, you ask for approval subject to qualifying in an EIR. And you can, my envision, I've discussed this with the cruise lines, I envision that's gonna cost some money to get the environmental stuff done, I'm guessing about a half a million dollars worth of engineering and so on, make that part of the loan.
Can I ask a question, Mary? I don't know if it's a few or David. So David, the recommendations, it seems like two should be before one, because if, if the floating pier doesn't work in our swells and everything, then why would we even try to enter into a confidential MOU if, it seems like you would do that steps first? No, you could give me reasonings why, that's I'm.
My only reasoning is, it is all whistling in the woods if you can't get the financing. The first step is whether or not you can buy it. If you can't buy it, doesn't make any difference whether, whether it's sound, or floats, or doesn't float, or is subject to being torn up, or whatever, assuming the answer to two is yes, it's great. Still can't do anything, cause you don't have the financing. I mean, and it's such a, for me, my not underst- what I'm not understanding, it is so minimal a commitment on the part of the city, is to pay one of their employees to go sit down and say, what is the deal you guys are willing to make with these conditions that, that we don't pay unless you come? So.
I beg to differ on what the city has to offer because, or what the city has at risk here. Quality of life, which money can't buy, that's a big thing. We already have that, it's good, we're trying to improve it. Cruise lines have been threatening to leave us because we don't have a dock for them to pull up next to and get off. They haven't left yet. Luckily, they're still patronizing our community, and it's, it seems to be at a rate that's kind of acceptable. And, you know, everybody, all of us can use an extra buck in our pockets, but at, at what cost? Cause we don't wanna give up things that money can't buy, that's quality of life, so.
Totally, totally agree.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna try to protect that, and we're, we're just speaking on behalf of what the people's concerns are that we represent, not, and, and we're part of this community as well, we're part of the chamber, and I understand, the Chamber of Commerce is all about business. We're all about quality of life, people, sustainability, vision, policy, forward-thinking, so, I.
Yeah.
No.
Our, our business owners can't enjoy being here, our schools can't, and that's all the quality of life.
So are we dependent on this pier for our schools to be good and our, our quality of life to be good? It already isn't.
Well, let me, let me answer it this way, as I understand, when I first started looking at this, the total revenue from the city of Avalon from real property taxes was about two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars a year. I don't know what it is today, but I, I'll speculate it's somewhere less than six-hundred-thousand from real, real estate taxes. The rest, my understanding at that time, the revenues for the city were supported eighty-six percent by tourist-driven revenues. So for us to pretend that we are not dependent upon our visitors to maintain our quality of life is not accurate.
Is that what I said?
I'm not suggesting that that's what you said.
I didn't say it.
But I, we are, what, I know, so you didn't. What we are saying is that we need the visitor just as much as the visitor needs us, and.
No, we wouldn't be here without the visitors, I already know that.
Okay.
I've, I've been here all my life, I absolutely know this. And I'm very grateful to visitors, I thank them all the time and let them know, if they weren't here, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be here. Proud man. So, I already understand that, so, understand, I already know that.
So really, what this is a request, is you authorize the city to spend a little bit of money on transportation and whatever the salary attributable to the financial director or whoever you decide to send, to go determine whether or not there's money available for us to do this, if the people approve, if the engineering works out, and if it can be approved by the environmental.
But I thought that's kinda what you've already told us that they were going to do, that's why we even got to this step, that they were going to invest, they were going to do the loan thing, I mean, you've already had those conversations with them.
I have, I am a representative of the Chamber of Commerce.
Right, but I mean, they're saying they're willing to loan.
You are the people who, the city of Avalon must do this, and by the way, let's not forget that if this pier were to go anywhere else, as an example, Pebley Beach, city of Avalon would lose about two million dollars a year worth of revenue, as I calculated.
Well, based on what I read in the report, that would never happen out of Pebley Beach.
No, well, that, that particular pier.
Pier, right.
Different kind of pier at Pebley Beach.
Oh, I hear what you're saying.
So this is the only property the city of Avalon owns, that it could collect the wharfage revenues from, that's my message.
I, I understand, thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe.
City manager coming in, being good about.
Well, you.
I would like to.
Well, that is true too, I mean.
That's just a thought.
Well, please, come on.
Buddy Wilson, eight-hundred Crescent, I'm definitely here as a prejudiced businessman, so don't mistake what I'm about ready to say. We could, we could, they could be here for as long as we're alive, and if they're not, what are we gonna do? But, just as an overture, and I haven't talked to any one person tonight, I will make an overture of ten thousand dollars to be put in your hands to send those representatives to simply listen to what's going on. That's all that's about. I understand the right foot, then the left foot, and I agree, there could be some, some deeper puddles than maybe we wanna get into. And the idea of quality of life, we don't want a cruise ship here every day, we don't want one on Saturday, we don't, we don't need all of that. But my fear, what the hell are you gonna do if they leave? Then where does that budget go? You can have all the quality of life you want, then we got no money for waste treatment plants, water reservoirs, all of the stuff. If we can learn how to make more money than we're spending right now, we can, we can have some of that stuff. But right now, we're at a break-even point, from what little I understand about the economics of this community. So the only way to theoretically help ourselves is to outearn what we're spending. You can't cut and save this community, it doesn't happen, you can't pay for a waste water treatment plant or anything else by saving dollars. You're talking about trying to keep the vehicles, I've seen some of those vehicles. They're embarrassing. To think that those poor people out there, those men and women are working around that equipment, that's almost dangerous. We need a better mole, regardless of whether this pier ever happens. Okay, but I'll make the overture. I'll get the business community, if not, I'll, I'll foot the bill for the first ten thousand dollars.
Do I hear twenty?
I, I listened tonight and I, I heard this thing between this moving pier and a stationary pier, that they're both doable, one has a little bit more problems than the other. But it seems like if there was this permanent pier, nobody could take it away. And if, if we got them on the hook to do a permanent pier, even though it costs twenty-eight million, we heard about the way our revenue is now, that we can, seven to ten years, we can do it with fourteen million, so fourteen to fifteen years, we could do it with twenty-eight million. But it would be ours, they couldn't take it away if they decided to go, and the next cruise ship company could be entertained to come in. But at least it would give us that security, I think, that, that Joe was looking at, that they can't, you know, take that floating pier away and we're dead again. Who wants to come here without a, without a stationary pier? And also that floating pier, what happens in the, is there's more and more days, it could have rough waters, where a stationary pier, maybe they could still come here, but, you know, if you have only a floating pier, then you have no, no way of bringing people in, even if they docked out there, you have to bring their tenders in, and it would be very difficult. So it just seems like we'd have more possibilities if we were, we, we looked at hooking them for a stationary pier. Now, there's a bunch of other things I'd sure like to talk about, but that was the main thing that worries me, is that damn pier in rough weather is just gonna reduce the amount of boats it gets.
So Buddy.
That we got people committed that way.
So he just beat your ten thou by about fifteen mil?
He's got it, he's got it.
But based on some of the stuff when you read in that report, maybe you've read it, the environmental impacts are something that is, that is a permanent structure, is in, very intense, a lot more years down the line.
It's tense, but if they're willing to do it, you know, why wouldn't, you know, what, what is the benefit for them? I mean, Carnival, Princess, Holland America are very strong on the West Coast. I'm sure that with LA, San Diego, Seattle, this would. I'm sure that with LA, San Diego, Seattle, this would just be a, you know, something they would want on those trips, it just wouldn't go away. But, you know, with that permanent pier, we got them hooked here for the rest of our lives. Yeah, we don't want them on the weekends, that's fine. We want them Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, you know, okay, let's have them to schedule it, we can get two ships in on midweek, who cares? We got five or six season people here on a Tuesday, I'd be able to schedule seven days right now, come winter, or in the fall, the shoulder months, I can't schedule, you know?
Right.
I have, you know, 30, 40 full-time employees year-round, and I have another 70 for just the summer. You know, I could have some more people year-round and handle that volume. But, you know, it's, it's very hard, I know their hearts into that floating pier, but boy, you know, something that moves, and the people to take care of that movement, you know, is gonna be something. Now, I know they're gonna shoot at me here--
Yeah, they are. Only one gun, not both guns are loaded.
Well, I'm sorry to disclose a dissension in the ranks of the business community, but the fact is, the cruise lines will not finance a permanent pier where we don't pay if they don't come. A. B, both of those piers due to the depths of the water, in the case of the pier that's parallel with the, with the moat, extends almost 50% across the harbor, which makes access to the harbor very problematical.
That's a single pier, we're talking about if it goes out of harbor--
And, and in that case, piles are about eight, I think eighty-- harbor master can tell us how deep it is out, out there at the end of the moat, it's in the middle of the harbor. To drive pile, according to the engineers that advised me on this, they would be driving piles somewhere between nine and 12 months, eight hours a day, to drive pile to support that pier. The other question is, where do you marshal the equipment and the supplies to build that pier? The pier Jack is talking about perpendicular, at the outward end, it's almost 200 feet deep, which would require four-foot diameter piles, again, driving piles, this time between 16 and 18 months. And, at the end of the day, the cruise lines won't finance it, so--
Do you really have to have a pier as long as a boat? Do you have to have a pier as long as a boat out of harbor?
No.
Okay, so what are we talking about?
Jack, look at the, go take the time, and look at the materials that were presented to the, to the city, and then you can see for yourself.
Okay, David Hardsden, Lisa's back there, patient too, I think--
I'm coming up as a, as a citizen, not as an employee of the city, when listening to this, it seems like what they're asking for is first, for the city to go here, from the cruise lines themselves. They're not asking for a commitment to the pier yet.
I know.
You know, is it one viable financially to do? And, because they can't go forward to tell them, you know, this is what we want to do, because they can't make a decision without your decision. You know, so they're asking somebody from staff, maybe, maybe it is Bob, because he is our finance guy. I think it would be--
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, I think it would also be wise, for many of you who do have really good questions on this, to be able to go to that meeting as well, and be able to have your questions answered directly from, from the cruise line. But, there's really no need to even, like, I believe like David Creed was saying, was there's no need for even two or three if you can't even get to the financing part. So there's, I, as a resident, and somebody who coaches and teaches and stuff like that, it's always good to listen, you know? And maybe there, there's somewhere in there where you might find a viable place to come to, or you may not, but there's no commitment by going, it's just committing to hear and listen, so I, and with Mr. Wilson's generosity, I mean, that means it costs you nothing to listen. And to me, it just seems like a no-brainer to at least go here.
Thank you, David. Lisa, did you want to say something?
Lisa Lavelle, former planning commissioner and current resident of Avalon, I just wanted to say that there were some concerns brought about quality of life, and would argue that the types of cruise lines that they're trying to get to invest in this community are the types that spend more money, which Dave already said in his presentation tonight. Right now, the people that tend to complain about cruise ships are the people that tend to complain about everything. They tend to be the people that complain about having anyone in town. So I don't know that saying, "Well, it's gonna ruin quality of life," I don't think so, Joe. I think you've heard them say that there's gonna be stopgaps in place to make sure that that doesn't happen, to make sure that we're not having 10,000 people overrun the city. Nobody wants that, the cruise ships don't want that, the visitors coming here on their own don't want that, and the residents don't want that. So I think that that's something to consider as a positive in this aspect, but it's not gonna, I don't think the volume is going to equate a drop in the quality of life. I think if anything, it's gonna change the visitor that's coming, or change up a little bit the visitor that's coming, that will provide the higher dollar, the person who tips more when they eat at a restaurant, because they actually get off the ship and eat at a restaurant, or takes a tour and tips at the end of a tour, versus people that right now, especially with Carnival, they're a fantastic ship, they bring a ton of people into town, they're also introductory, and they're getting the cruise for 200 bucks apiece. They're not the people that have a ton of money to spend in town, unfortunately, and if they do, they usually end up saving it for when they get down south, because they don't know what offers there are here, and we're at the beginning of the cruise line of that trip. So, I think just to be open, I totally respect what David just said, it doesn't hurt to listen, it doesn't hurt to find out what could be next, and I think that it could be a great investment for the future for Avalon, so, thank you.
Thank you. I got a question for Dave.
Okay.
Hey Dave, was there any discussion about, you know, I know everybody's talking about a pier, about some better cruise ten, better tenders? I mean, if they're, if they're willing to spend 10, 20 million dollars, why can't they just buy a couple of really nice boats that are very stable, and have elevators, or have gangplanks, and what's up with that? I mean--
It's the same issue, and that is, well, first of all, we've got a really great tenderer? Tenderer? Tender now. He can move about 250 people an hour or better. It just takes a long time with a tender. People walk off twice as fast as they can get onto a tender and off the boat.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, why don't we just get some new tenders? How many people do they hold, 150?
No, the Catalina, the Catalina, what's the name of the--
Catalina Cruise?
Catalina Cruises could hold up to 500 people.
Do they use those?
Yes, but the problem with it is, is that they've got queuing problems on the ship--
Queuing?
Queuing, people lining up, problems on the ship, and--
Excuse me?
Line, people lining up--
I hear one at a time.
They have problems themselves, moving that many people in a single line down onto the, onto the tender. So he, he can't, he has been unable to get them to load 500 at a crack.
Well, that's, that's not, the tender's fault, that's the, basically, the cruise ship doesn't have the facility to offload fast enough, is that what you're saying?
They don't have the facility to offload onto a tender as easily as they could offload on a loading ramp.
I don't get that.
You go down--
I have to play devil's advocate, because I'm trying, I'm trying to get some solutions, and I really appreciate--
Joe, I'm just telling you what I'm being, have been told by the cruise lines--
So we need to know these things, because we're basing our decisions on what, what we need to know. I, I mean, I'm just asking as many questions as I possibly can, and--
Perfectly legitimate.
I'm gonna scrutinize, just like I'm being scrutinized by my constituents about everything, and I just, I just gotta lay everything out on the table, that's all.
Totally agree.
I want, I want to understand it, that's what I'm getting paid $9 a day for.
You're getting paid more than me.
Okay, so anyway, I just wanted to consider, they should have some really nice, state-of-the-art boats where they could do that, because it sounds to me like what you're telling me is that the cruise ships don't have the facility on the cruise ship to get people off quicker.
That's part of the problem, but--
Well--
There's a big difference, there's a big difference between transferring a passenger on a ramp to a, to a boat, to a floating boat, that's going up and down at a different pace than the ship itself, getting them loaded on, and then have them transfer again. It's just, it's 50%, on the face of it, is 50% slower, right? They're going down one ramp on the, on a pier, they're going down two ramps on a, on a, on a tender. And the tender has to maneuver around the harbor, and there are boats coming in, and it's a, it's, it takes about 15 to 20 minutes to cycle a fully-loaded tender from the ship to the pier, to the float. And, and on a, on a ramp, coming off of a ship on a ramp, just walk off. That's their, that's what they're telling me.
Yeah, okay, because if, if we don't get the financing, that, we're looking at the same scenario that we have right now, or the improvements they need to make, is, they need to get some better tenders.
They need to what?
Get some better tending ships, I mean, I don't know--
Doesn't solve the problem.
No. So why don't we, because we could ask questions about the operation all day long, so why don't we just decide what we want to do going forward?
You know, the more I think about it, we have a new city manager coming on in a few weeks, probably, hopefully, right? Hopefully in a few weeks. I'd like to, to maybe hold this over to the next meeting, I'd like to talk to a few people around town about this a little bit more, because, get some more input from them, and hopefully get the city manager involved, who if everything goes right, we'll be sending him with you guys, get him caught up to speed on it, if, that's what I'd like to do right now. I like that idea. It's up to you guys, whatever, whatever you guys want. Sleep on it, we got, we got a lot of information out-- Got a lot of information, I think it is. I would like to hear a little more from our public out here.
My only observation on that is, is Mr. Hernandez, is you're not gonna be able to tell the public much, because you're not, don't know whether it's gonna be financeable, and you don't know for sure that it'll deal with the engineering issues in item number two. So, you're kind of if, maybe, what if possible. And the first question they're asked is how are you gonna pay for it? And you're gonna say, "Well, we're gonna try to get paid for by a loan from the cruise line," as opposed to going to those same people two months from now and saying, "Here's the deal we've got with the cruise line, they'll loan us the money, these are the terms, had the engineers provide us the engineering studies, and at their expense, and that's our, that's what it would look like, and that's what a deal, and these are the, this is our proposal." That's kind of the difference. That's, that's, and now, with Buddy offering to pay, offering to finance 10 grand to have the--
It'll go up.
Well, why don't, okay, here we say, we'll take Buddy's 10, we'll, we'll, take Buddy's 10, or maybe we won't. We'll, of course, we've got to get the new city manager up to snuff anyway, so we wouldn't be going to Florida in a week or two. And let, if we're saying we just want to go in to look, and let him decide, I'd like him to get, be incited, whether we do the engineering or the loan first, or whatever way we go, just let him buy into the system. And I, I think we can do that without waiting two weeks. We're all, enough people are watching this tonight that questions and stuff is gonna come, be happening. So unless we totally say, "No, we just want to kill this tonight," which would be about the only other option, you know, but I think we all appear to be somewhat open to go to at least the next step, it sounds like, I don't know.
About an hour ago, I, I said that we should gather the information and present the information to the public. Buddy's willing to pay to get, or initiate to retrieve payment to pay for it. Denise, Brian, and I don't know to what extent are Bob, our new finance director, but Denise and Brian have both been intricately involved in the cruise ship discussions for many years now, so I don't think that we need to wait for a new, newly-seated city manager. I think we have several members of our executive staff, if you will, that are already very well in tune with, with these contracts. So, I mean, I would like to get all of the information out to the public and let the public decide, but it's gonna take you guys some time to get the meetings set and get travel plans, it's not something that's gonna happen in a week, it's not something that's gonna happen in probably two weeks. So, I would just like to, again, put it out there and say, "Let's go get the information and give it to the public."
Okay, this was more of a direction, right, than a, oh, I'm sorry, Lisa?
I just wanted to speak to Joe's concern with regards to asking about better tenders. I've been in, on cruises luckily with Avalon goes in six different countries throughout four different seas, and I would say that probably a quarter of the locations we went to were tendering ports. We traveled with Sean Brannock, who's the director for Kids at Play, and knowing the challenges that happen with that, and having a father that was in a wheelchair for quite a while, I don't think a better tender is the answer, and unless you can redesign all of the cruise ships in the world, I don't think that's gonna fix the problem. So I'm just telling you from experience, I value your idea of that, that maybe there could eventually one day be a ship that moves people much faster than they do now, but with knowing the cruise ships and being on several different types and sizes and different cruise lines, I don't think that's a valid response, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
I cruise a lot, I just came back from a cruise. When you're, go to a port where there's tenders, nobody really likes to get off, because they know the line coming back on is like back to our street, and, and they just stand in line, so they lose two hours, the boat's leaving at four, so they let, they get in line, you know, two hours before they should really leave, instead of just walking on. And when they get off, the same thing, the tender comes up, 20, 50, 30, 200 people get on it, and you gotta wait until the next tender gets up. Meanwhile, two, three hundred thousand people are backing up, waiting to get on these tenders. So the queuing is what he was saying, it's just, it's, that's why they don't like it. That's why they don't want to do that, and that's why they want a solid pier. And, and so, it's just, maybe this Carnival people, they'll keep the people if we never did anything, keep those tenders, because it's a, it's a first trip, but really, long-term, if we want a good economy in the fall and the winter, you know, which, I mean, the fall and the spring, having that permanent dock, to me--
We'll have plenty of time to continue to discuss this. David?
Madam Mayor, may I make a suggestion? I would like, we would like to see the council approve the plan of authorizing staff to delegate somebody to conduct the negotiations for a memorandum of understanding with regard to the financing, subject to the condition that if they don't come, we don't pay. But I think it would be really meaningful, that's what I'd like to see passed, we'd like to see passed tonight, that it would be meaningful to include the new city manager in the implementation of that, because if we start now, and this new city manager is on, and then to get, to find out where the bathrooms are in the city hall, it'll take a couple of, you know, a month or two, you wouldn't want to start without that new person, and then have to have that person become all new--
I agree.
Re-educate. So, we'd like to see as you pass the, the direction tonight, and then have the, the execution when the new city manager's onboard.
Sure, sure.
Okay, so, I like Councilman Hernandez's idea, personally.
What's that one?
What, just hold off until next meeting, and talk to the city manager, and we go from there. It's something that we've, look, we've dealt with what we have right now for, for years, it's, it's worked okay. Some people, that may, that may be handicapped, it's not working well, it's a difficult thing when living on an island in the middle of the ocean. It's, it's, it's an important decision, we just need to--
It is an important decision, but I have a feeling now that the audience has been here tonight, and everybody's gonna hear it the minute we bring it up on the agenda, it's going to be over and over talking about--
You're about getting information, right? You want answers, you want information. That's all we're asking, is for someone like you to go to this meeting and get this information on behalf of the city. on behalf of the city. That's all we're asking.
We're going to do that.
That's all we're asking tonight, is just someone to go and listen.
We're going to do that.
Well, you're, what you're saying is contrary to that.
Well, tonight, yeah.
Yeah, we just want you to go and talk to these people and ask those questions that you have, that's all. So, I don't understand what the difficulty is.
Oh, it's not difficult.
Okay, then why would you vote against it?
Why would I what?
Why would you vote against going to talk to these people?
I'm not voting against anything. I'm voting for going ahead with Councilman Hernandez's idea, which is to present this to the new city manager, so we can have him involved in the whole process and we can understand exactly where we're going to go with this.
Which is just deciding at a later date who's going to go to the meeting, which is fine.
We've been talking about this for 14 years.
Exactly, exactly. So, let's do this.
But I think I heard that Dave's suggestion combined both of those, which combined Councilmember Hernandez's and my comments, which was, we agree to move forward, but we don't physically take the step until the city manager is seated. So, it's the same thing.
He's going to read the report, he's going to talk to the harbor master, he's going to talk to Denise, he's going to talk to the chamber, he's going to find out everything that we have.
Okay, there's too many questions on the table right now that are unanswered. For one, we don't even know if this floating pier is going to handle the swells we have out there. So, I mean, yes, those questions we have to answer, I mean, this is beyond financing.
That was the second part of that that they asked. That was the second part, is to look into the, and then...
They're going to come up with the money, the money will show up. They want to do, if they were going to leave our port, they would have left by now. I mean, they patronize us and we accommodate their needs as a cruise ship destination. But what we need to do is...
Well, let's just make a motion to, I guess if that's what we're going to have to do now to figure out, would you like to make the motion?
I did, I'll make it again. I will rephrase my original motion. I would like to make a motion to direct staff to work with the cruise ship liaison committee in setting up a meeting to talk about, number one, financing first, if that's feasible and what that would be. Number two, if the seawalk is feasible in our waters. And then, number three, to present all findings to the community in some sort of public hearing forum, and that that movement not happen until the newly seated city manager is able to participate from the beginning.
I'll second that. Go ahead.
I mean, because our job is to give direction to staff, our job isn't to have, and maybe I misunderstood your motion earlier, Richard, was...
I didn't make the motion.
Or what you said you'd like to see, and that was, you'd like to talk to the newly seated city manager, but it's really us and the community making the decision that gives that direction.
But I'd like to talk to people.
Is there a reason that we don't have the information right now about this pier that we're putting in, or that we're proposing to put in? Do you know? I mean, no, we don't know if it can handle the swells we have out here.
Nothing handles the swell out there.
Okay, so it's not going to work?
No, 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 no.
So, you're saying it's not going to work?
The question has been whether or not we could afford to put this pier in. Whether it will handle the swell or not is a matter of the engineers, the engineers from the company, and subject to our review and our engineer reviewing it, is prepared to provide the information where they are convinced that it will.
Oh, so, there's...
I can't go and ask them to spend dozens of hours on a project when we don't know whether we can afford to buy it or not. So, maybe my view is wrong, but I think it is. If you're going to go buy a car, you don't decide what car you're going to buy until you figure out what you can afford to pay. And I'm just saying, all we're asking is to authorize somebody from the city, because the city is the only one that can make a deal, to go to the cruise line, come up with a memorandum of understanding, as to how the cruise line would be willing to finance this pier for the city of Avalon, on condition that if they don't come, we don't pay.
And so, okay, and let me ask another question. So, we make, let's say, this, yours passes today, and then the new person comes in, a city manager, and he goes, hey, council, I'd really like for you to look at this, this is, you know, I've been talking, and I don't want to negotiate that way on behalf of the city, because he comes up with some logic that we don't know. We can always come back and change our vote.
Yes.
You're the ones that are giving direction.
Okay, we can always change, because...
All it is is information gathering, that's all we're doing.
You're not passing an ordinance that binds the city, or signing a contract in 2004 that binds the city.
I'm just asking a question. Why did somebody ask these guys? If the pier is not going to work in these waters, and I'm just being logical here, sensible, okay? If the pier's not going to work, why are we going to look for financing for it? That's my question.
Again, Joe, it's the chicken and the egg. If you, if you want to, I can't, I don't know how to ask these engineers to spend 100 engineering hours to confirm what they believe based upon what their initial study, to confirm that this will be a safe pier for us to own. I can't, I don't know how to ask them to spend that kind of time and money, because I can't afford, I can't tell them, well, if you tell us it'll work, we can build it, because we can't afford to, we don't have the money to pay for it. I don't think the citizens of Avalon should be stuck with a white elephant. That was been my concept with the cruise line since 2007. We can't do it without, a population of 3,500 to 4,000 people can't pay $14 million for a pier that has no revenue.
Oh, I know that. I mean, you've said that like five times.
I understand, so, the deal is, but I can't, I can't in good faith go to somebody and say, okay, now spend your engineering dollars to tell us for sure that the pier will work, but I don't know whether we can pay for it if you come up with the answer being yes.
You mean, the engineering has not been done on this pier? Is that what you're telling me?
They have three of them installed in three ports in the world.
Relax. I mean, I'm just as impatient as you are right now, okay?
Well, perhaps, Dave, would it, actually, I'm sorry, my direction should be to staff. Perhaps we could pursue options one and two simultaneously. So, let's...
That's why I took the direction to be...
Okay, simultaneously.
Okay, there's motion on the table?
So, information only, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Call for the vote. Oh, did you push? Sorry.
No, I didn't push anything.
Oh, okay.
Say it again?
Push again? Call for the vote. All eyes, well, four eyes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we need to take a break. May I?
Yeah, of course.
Absolutely. Man, horses, man.
I'm sorry? I was just waiting for you.
Oh, okay, okay, we're on. Thank you, thank you, Jordan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the Council. I'm awake, I'm awake. Again, I'm Kendall Flint with RGS. I'm here tonight to basically give a presentation on the findings and the recommendations for the Mole Revitalization Study. And what this really is about tonight is really summarizing for you what the public told us, what we looked at in terms of possible financing and funding mechanisms, and how we might want to move forward. I think what we all know is that the Mole, any place we have a community that can reimagine or reinvent a waterfront property and make it really something that's special, it's a really great opportunity for an area to redefine itself. That's from Project Republic Spaces. And one of the things we found that was very unique about the Mole in general is that while it is the place that most people come to Catalina first, it doesn't have, let's say, the panache of the green pier, or the casino, or some of the other things that we see. So, our program goals were really simple: to determine the overall viability of revitalizing the Mole, identifying the needs and amenities and opportunities for revenue generating solutions, and then finally take a look at the funding and financing mechanisms to support that type of infrastructure improvement. Now, all the recommendations that I'm going to be presenting to you tonight, and again, these are just for you to file, you can use them or not, but these are all based on what the public told us. And just as a reminder, we had a very comprehensive public outreach program that kicked off in October of this year. We had a project-specific website that today has had over 1,400 unique visitors that spent time online to get information about the project. There was an online survey that was conducted and captured 195 individual comments and feedbacks. We also developed e-news and e-blasts. These were really great because we were able to leverage the relationship with the city to have them sent out on your e-blast list, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, and then we worked with Catalina Island Vacation Resorts. They sent emails about this project out to all of their property owners, as well as any visitor that had been here in the last 10 years staying at one of their properties. Now, on top of that, you can't really get a sense about coming on and off the Mole unless you do it, so we spent a couple of days doing intercept interviews with passengers that were coming from San Pedro, Dana Point, and Long Beach to Avalon to get their impressions of coming on and off. In addition, we presented at Rotary, at Lions Club, Chamber of Commerce, and then we also conducted a Spanish-language workshop here in conjunction with a local Catholic church. Now, all of the results of these workshops, we had click polling, I think some of you attended these, all of those results are in the summary package, so you'll be able to look at that later, as well as the summaries of all of the various, pardon me, survey responses. In addition, I met individually with various ferry companies, CIVR, the Island Company, did speak with a number of cruise ship advocates, and reviewed thoroughly the materials that were presented to you earlier tonight, as well as having independent conversations with Cunard and Princess. Also worked very closely with Jim and the Catalina Chamber of Commerce, of course, Island Conservancy, and local business owners. So, what we're going to be looking at are basically four areas. One, structural amenities, these are the actual nuts and bolts, if you will, of the Mole. Visitor-serving amenities, which are more in tune with things that you would find in terms of information, music and art. Transportation amenities, which were highly important to a number of the residents here, and then, of course, funding and financing strategies. So, in the structural amenities, this was coming directly from one of the folks that came as a comment online: "It's bad enough to have to stand in long lines, but way worse in the hot sun or rain." Today was one of those days that was quite warm, and so the lack of coverage there was actually cited by 85% of the people who participated across all channels as the one thing that they thought was most challenging about coming to and from the Mole. More angst with people that were embarking, going home, than when they were arriving, because when you're arriving, you know, you see the casino, you see the pier, you see the beauty of Avalon, and you're not paying attention quite as much. When you're leaving and you're waiting in lines, all of a sudden it becomes a little bit more of an issue. These are just some of the average comment and call-outs that we got from people, what they put in their comments: "Felt like a cattle call," "Trouble with lines," "Trouble with shade," "Dangerous and slippery," various pieces like that. Now, when you look at the overall ratings between excellent, good, average, fair, and poor, only about a third of the people thought that it was excellent or good, and the other two-thirds thought it was either average or poor, or very poor. So, it's pretty consistent, again, across all ages, whether you're a resident or a visitor, there's no real difference there. So, in the structural recommendations, now, this would be building on the existing grants the city has already required. So, we already know that there's funding for the rehab of the restrooms, and funding for the rehab of the carriage itself, right? So, the idea is to take these structural recommendations and consider them as a parallel track of work that could be done simultaneously as the improvements are happening. So, number one, this was pretty big, support for either full coverage or enclosing the Mole. Now, I know there was some concern about, you know, when the waves come in, and we've got those grates there to allow structure to come up. That was built, again, 20, 30 years ago. The technology has changed to allow for different types of, you know, ways to move water around to accommodate that. You might even have areas where it's enclosed, but has an open part in the center where water would be able to come up. The things that came out about that, of course, were the ability to keep it cleaner, keep it neater, keep it not only from the heat, but also from the rain in the other types of years. The other thing we heard a lot of support for was looking at the gang plants, the leverage of the way people are going up and down, right? They're very steep, and both the ferry companies, as well as the tender companies and others, had concerns about different times of year, and frankly, the ability of some passengers to be able to get on and off without breaking something. All the ferry companies we talked to, it is not unusual at all, in rainy weather, to have people slipping and falling, and it happens, and to the best of their ability to help these people, it is still a challenge. Large support for providing ample seating. When you come out from San Pedro, they've got a lot of really great seating in there with a temporary sort of cover situation, not so much at the downtown landing, but this is something that, in the area here, people thought was important. The other thing that came up was looking at reorganizing the way that the top of the Mole is set up right now. You come in and you see the lockers, followed by the restrooms, and then you've got One Deli, which is very popular, and then some of these shops, and of course, the luggage. The idea that the luggage is far in the back, if you don't know you're looking for it, it makes it very difficult for people to understand that that's an amenity that they could use. Also, using that upgrade of the restroom and locker facilities in order to make it a little bit more user-friendly, and a little bit easier for people to access. One of the other recommendations was to utilize solar panels on this structure to generate electricity to not only power some of the other amenities we're going to talk about, but also generate additional revenue. And we've been in contact with a company called Optera. They're one of the world's leading groups that does this. They are considering Avalon as a pilot project, which means they would do the install potentially for free, and then be paid back as a percentage of the stuff that comes out of the cost savings. So, if that's an area that the Council would like to look at forward, we can certainly talk about that. Now, fishing, this is another one that we got quite a lot of excitement about. The Mole is one of those few fishing piers in California where you don't really need a license to do it, and it's, of course, really near and dear to a lot of the local residents' heart. They don't want to see that go away. On the other hand, we have some less talented fishermen that have a tendency to cast a line out into a child, or a bird, or somebody's luggage. So, the idea was, how do you continue moving at that? Well, our recommendation is actually to separate those two uses on the Mole, so that if there is some sort of construction, that you put the fishing in one area away from the passengers. And this is just a really simple, straight, you know, not perfect, but we're saying the blue area would be more the covered area where people are going on and off of ferries, tenders, or whatnot, and that you could set up little outcroppings in the back that would allow people to access the water. The other thing that came out of that, in fact, a number of people that attended our workshop here, was to consider putting in a couple of fish cleaning stations, because that's another thing, if you're coming off a boat, you're coming for this very lovely vacation, and your first sight is somebody beheading a fish, that may or may not be in your wheelhouse. So, if you can have that somewhere over there, where, you know, the fish killers can go off and enjoy watching that, great, but your three-year-old isn't terrified on their first visit. Visitor-serving amenities, these are the types of things that you want to see. When people get here, this is the first thing they see. Not particularly inviting, right? So, one of the things that people talked about is, look, since this is the first thing you're going to see, let's make it the best it can be, best impressions. This also came out of a lot of the conversations we had with the Island Company, CIVR, and a number of hotels, and obviously, the Chamber as well. So, some of the things that we're talking about in that is, number one, creative, clear, and consistent signs welcoming passengers. Something a little bit more than just a white slab, but something that has some color to it, and basically also has clear direction about where you can get services, where you can go get your luggage checked in, where you can go to get to a bank where the hotels are. Improving luggage connections, this is something that both the Express and the other ferry companies are interested in, although not all the boats are set up. However, we looked at a model that's being used in the US Virgin Islands and British Virgin Islands. They don't have conveyor belts or anything either, they just have people. They charge a per-bag handling fee that you can choose to take advantage of or not when you get on the boat, and it helps a number of people move very quickly. And with the education attached to something like we have here in the island, where you allow that luggage to then be delivered to the final destination, it's a great benefit for those that would like to take advantage of it, to potentially check in their bag in Long Beach and have it arrive at their place at CIVR, or at their hotel, or at their campground, or wherever that might be. Also, we were looking at improving the design of queues for ferry passengers. People are unclear about where the lines are, who's in what line, am I in a Commodore, a not-a-Commodore, is that the tender? So, there needs to be better, clear definition of all that. A lot of love, too, for providing art and music installations. The art can be permanent things, or it can be rotating, where we have different artists that are doing different things. It could be things that are featured of Catalina artists, we have a number of them that are here. It could be marine art, whatever that might be. And music can be something that's brought in on a regular basis on those high weekends, or when things are happening, for either jazz tracks, or the Echo runs, or all that kind of stuff. Potential revenue generators, a couple of things that, again, came up from the visitor's side more than anything else, but the idea that perhaps we install free Wi-Fi there that is ad-supported, so that local businesses here on island can pay nominal fees to offset that cost, but then our guests that are arriving here will be able to access that. Same kind of thing for branding of charging stations that you can do for your phone. My phone tonight was about dead, it wasn't used to being on for so long. But yeah, for phones, for chargers, for iPads, wherever they might be, camera batteries, they have these set up now where you can put in branding around them, they can sit on kiosks, and basically be powered from your solar panels. Wayfinding touchscreens in kiosks, the ability to just touch something and say, "I'm looking for a hotel, a restaurant, an amenity." That technology has come down in price substantially. Again, that could be funded from either ad-supported, from local merchants here on the island, or of course, looking at other possibilities from energy. And then, a lot of folks talked about, there's really a lack of any type of facility there that allows you to sit and have a cup of coffee, or have a glass of wine, while you're either waiting for someone to arrive, or waiting for your departure. And so, if it was envisioned as an enclosed area, the idea of potentially putting on a rooftop restaurant or bar of some type that had those sort of amenities that people could then see the boats as they were coming in, might only be open seasonal, and could be awarded as a lease, which the city could control, and then you could actually go out and ask people to provide the service. The other recommendations, and I know one of those was actually on consent, but when you come into the Mole, it's that one big area, right, you've got the parking lot, but then you're going down the pathway to get into town. Those are really two connected pieces of real estate, and it's our recommendation that, moving forward, that you envision those as two connected pieces of real estate, so that the possibility of some of the space being utilized in a more efficient manner. We've got some planners that aren't really planners right now, and some barbecues that aren't really being utilized, and there may be possibilities to add additional walkways or paseos, or I'll show you in a moment some parking issues that could be useful in terms of then having a consistent flow from when you get off the boat to when you get into town. That also allows, of course, for the opportunity for pop-up booths, and we see that all the time with special events, the idea that you have small canopy sort of things, or it might be, you know, signing up for jazz track tickets, or getting information about a run, or if there's a fishing tournament, and those can be charged for space and utilized by the city as a revenue generator. In terms of transportation amenities, the one thing that we heard most about, there's really a complete lack of space for somebody who's driving someone to the dock on their golf cart or car, they've really got no place to go. So, the idea of envisioning that as a kiss-and-go, which would be basically a line of traffic where you can drop somebody off, pick them up, and by extending into that other parkway going into the city, you have the potential of picking up some real estate there, and maybe having rooms for two lanes, which would be enough. Better access to taxis and bus services. Most visitors that are not familiar with the island don't really understand the protocol, don't know where they're going, and there's a real kind of challenge with that. They also don't know what types of services, the people like Portofino, where is Portofino? Some have their own vans that take guests back, some do not, and there's no real clear definition of who does what. So, having sort of a transportation plan in place with that, and striping for these different areas that shows what that might be, would be good. Also, potentially having electric vehicle charging stations. At some point, we think that it might behoove the city to look for alternatives to the gas-driven golf carts, looking for more electronic sort of things, and that might be something to look at, as well as straight-up electric cars. And a number of people also asked for space for Zip Bike and/or other alternate transportation modes. These are active transportation, something that people really look for in terms of funding for transportation grants, so it's another thing that we could potentially get more money to provide services. Now, the cruise ship terminal access, I was very fascinated by the discussion tonight, and this is just a file, Councilwoman Sampson, so I'm not actually recommending. This, I just want to share with you on the outreach. We did see some pros and cons on that. The pros, of course, we know that there's going to be increase in the potential for cruise ship passenger volumes, substantial positive improvement to local businesses, as Jim said earlier, substantial tax increases, supported by the Chambers of Commerce, and of course, they've mentioned, when you come in on a cruise ship, 2% to 6% of those folks do tend to come back. On the negative side, there are some real challenges with compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, as well as the California Coastal Commission. Now, we reviewed all of the documents, and all the letters, and all the emails that you saw in your package tonight, and also had some discussions with them as well. Of all the options, the floating pier actually is the least impactful to all those different agencies that would look at it, and the peers created, the folks that put that together, they have had other, as mentioned in Stockholm, I believe it is, they do have the technology, they believe that is adequate to address. The other challenge, though, here is that we do have people in the community, and I think you know, who are concerned about the potential negative impact of the visual of that. This is another reason, actually, why the floatable pier is more attractive, because when you're not using it, it's coming back in and has a smaller profile. If you put in a pier, it's there all the time, so it means that your visual impact is going to be greater moving forward. And then, in the polling that we did, just in full disclosure, you'll get a full copy of that in the morning, we did have a number of people that said, "Absolutely no more cruise ships, I hate cruise ships, do not build a dock." But we also had a number of people that said, "Hey, my business depends on tourism, so please consider a dock, please consider bringing in more cruise ships." So, as you know, it's not an easy issue, it's certainly something you're going to have to consider and talk about later, but it'll really be driven by where you want to go in general. So, our recommendation, based on what we've seen and what we've heard thus far, is to consider pursuing the floating cruise dock, because we think that's the most viable. Now, in funding and financing, I'm not including the cruise dock in this because it's a separate path, but as stated, if you move forward with that, that would likely be funded through warfage fees paid for by the city back to the cruise company that would be funding or actually financing. This is not really much different than, for those of you that are familiar with transportation impact fees, it'll happen from time to time, the developer wants to build something, but his share is only this much, so he'll build the whole thing, and then the jurisdiction will pay him back over time with future impact fees. So, it's a very similar model, and something that's been done before, not very unusual at all. Unusual is if you can get him to forgive the debt if the number of people don't come in, but I trust he'll do well on that. So, the Mole-based construction, as we mentioned, that's been funded already by Caltrans and the other grants that are great to get. We know that that's going to be enough to get the first side of that done. The structural amenities, in our discussions with the various groups out there, including the ferry companies and CIVR, sorry, the Island Company, that we believe would be best set up as a private-public partnership, and I'll talk about that in a minute, how that's set up. The extended project area, we're talking about art, music, the wayfinding, all that, we believe the best solution on that would be forming a business improvement district, and I'll talk a little about that in a moment. And then, the transportation amenities, because they will be pretty specific, there's adequate grant funding out there for these particular type of transportation projects that we believe you'd be able to get those and be able to implement quite easily. Now, business improvement district is basically a group of businesses the city would form it, and then depending on the impact, the positive impact of the business to whatever is being done, that calculates their share of what they would pay. It's usually done on a parcel tax. And in this case, it would not have to be a huge amount, we're not talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, or practically not even thousands of dollars, we're talking about enough money to fund that sort of music-on-occasion, some art, and some kiosks, because a lot of these things, of course, could be ad-supported. But they would also, you could use them for, like, upgrading trash receptacles, maintenance, lighting, all kinds of things. There's two different kinds, they're allied by state law, but all of them are based, again, on those parcel tax, and both of them have oversight committees that are made up by the members paying in. So, if you're a business and you've been told that your money's going to go to X, it has to go to X. They couldn't take that business improvement money and spend it on a library or something else that was not related to the thing at hand. So, we believe that in the private partnership, this is the side where you really come up with a contract. You probably are familiar with joint powers authority. Individual corporations can't get in a JPA because they have no authority in the same way that you, as a municipal body, does. However, you can set up what they call a memorandum, an MOU, and then in that case, with these groups, you can establish how much their benefit would be to the particular amenity. This is particularly interesting for if you're going to enclose and redesign the Mole. What we would be suggesting on that, and the ferry companies appear to be open to it, as well as the Island Company, is you develop a calculation that's based on the number of visitors that are coming through each service. So, that would include, of course, the cruise companies, if they're coming in on tender, that would be another piece in addition to their warfage. You would also be looking at potentially Catalina Island Big Shake Resorts, other people who are bringing folks onto the island. The best way to do these is actually to form a collaborative committee that's made up of all of these folks, facilitate that independently, get some good math, and then figure out what the calculation would be. But based on the initial discussions, we do believe there would be an adequate amount of money in order to make that happen. Then, you'd want to have, of course, the city to consider, in the way it would participate, you may want to offer expedited permitting, or reduced fees for planning, building, inspecting, all that sort of thing, as your contribution to the overall plan. So, in terms of next steps, what we're hoping is that the Council will like some of these ideas, perhaps give us a little bit of feedback, whatever, it was your pleasure, and then, as per our original agreement, is that we would have an open house, again, to show the public, here's all the things we're talking about, you know, did we get it right, are there things that you like or you don't like? And then, we really strongly urge that you consider a design charrette, and you can do that as a competition design charrette, where you actually bring in three or four firms that, based on all these concepts we're talking about, would actually draw it out so people can come and watch and see what comes out of it. And once you get those, it's then possible to take it out for an RFP, to get a good idea about the actual physical cost of implementing what you want to do. And then, of course, the working groups to develop the funding and approach for both the BID and the user fees. And then, once all that's in place, you need to have a business plan that basically talks about how you're going to move forward to sustainably do all these things, in what order do you do them? Is the cruise ship going to be a good thing or a bad thing? Is the BID going to give this much money or this much money? And then, you plot it out for a good five, 10, 15 years, in the same way you would do a capital improvement or other type of plan. And so, that's basically it, pretty straightforward. The package that you'll be receiving, I apologize, it got stuck in the mail, but you'll have all of the survey results individually, and you'll also have the summary documents, all of the materials that we received from the various workshops that we did. And again, at the end of the day, we probably had, conservatively, 4,500 to 5,000 participants overall in this one touch or another, based on the email and everything else. So, with that, shorter presentation than some of the others, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I just got to mention, we need to definitely understand the importance of the crane area over there, where we pull boats out of the water, that's kind of an important area. It's kind of an emergency thing as well, so that's really important, to keep that kind of little industrial area out in the Mole, so if we need to unload something.
And I think we were talking about this in general when we did the walking tours, you know, because the way it's oriented, you've got kind of visitors coming this way, and there's some unused space that's kind of in the back as it comes around, a little and there's some unused space that's kind of in the back as it comes around Lover's Cove, and they had a couple of places where they used to dock. But that's one of the reasons you want to take the design team through all of that and make sure you've got adequate, you know, access, separation, and the uses in the right places, I guess is the way to put it.
Perfect.
I think, the community have any comments? We, I'm sure, Jim, you'll end up with a copy of this.
I've already got a copy, and I've, you know, the board hasn't taken action, but I would say, everything that I've seen here is a reflection of what each of the community and artists is doing towards the needs, and I've talked with all of you about the idea of it as being a possible progress.
Right, yes, yes, again. I don't have any questions, I think it's, I mean, I think it is, I don't think, I don't think there's, think there's any surprises in here when you read about it, you know, it's like, it's stuff we've all known for years, and here it is again, and then we just need to figure out how we move forward.
We also, I think something else you ought to consider out there is freight. I mean, we, we might need an area where we're going to need, the city of Avalon will have to have access or the ability to remove freight off a boat out there, if, if we need that. So that's just something that needs to be considered as well, because I remember that point was actually brought up in some of those study sessions. And, you know, we can't do everything out there, and it might not even be feasible, but it's definitely something that was mentioned, and it's something that's important to me because I, just in case there was, something happened at Pebly Beach, and we're, we're dead in the water right there.
Yeah, which is fine, B.
So the only way to get freight off a boat that's down in the water is to have, somehow have an access to that mall, so that's something just to consider as well.
I'll put that in.
Emergencies.
Okay. Thank you very much. If there's no other comments.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Do we need to motion that, or?
Just to receive and file.
We just accept it, accept the report.
Motion to receive and file.
There's been a motion. On second, comments? Call for the vote.
Four eyes.
Okay, planning commissioners.
Yes. Please.
I just want to point out a couple things, Mayor Marshall, and that was, we need to amend it to reflect that in the staff report that Bart Glass was putting his name in for a four-year term, not just the alternate, and that Richard Ladley removed his application.
Yes. So basically, we have four applicants, and we have four positions. And then we're supposed to have a temporary one, but we'll have to work on that at another date. Mr. Ladley said, well, he'd still be interested in maybe the, the alternate. So we have, we have Tim Tyler, so we have Eric Urt and Sandy Putnam. Eric Urt and Yoli Montana wanting to be back, and then we have Tim Tyler, Sandy Putnam.
Yoli?
No, she's already on.
She's, what?
She's already on. She's al, oh, no, no, yeah, we have.
She's asking, she's asking to re留下.
Yes. So Eric Urt wants to return, Yoli wants to return, Bart Glass, Tim Tyler, and Sandy Putnam. Did I screw that up? No. And some of them for two years, some of, everybody's for four now?
For your terms.
Okay.
Except for the alternate, that's for a two-year term, I believe.
All righty.
So you have two asking to return, two application, well, I'm sorry, two asking to return, two applications, and?
Three, three asking to return.
So you have five, and you have five potential positions, because we still have that alternate.
Yes.
So.
There are motion to accept all the people that have applied.
So I, I guess that's what, what my recommendation, I mean, you're supposed to make the recommendation, but I just wanted to make sure I heard that correctly, with, with Richard removing his at?
Yes.
It's five for five.
Yeah.
You just have to determine who would be the two-year alternate.
Okay, hold on. We have three there, and we have Tim, Sandy, Eric, and so we just, oh, and there's Bart, huh? Okay. Okay. So perhaps I would recommend Tim Tyler as the alternate?
It's a two-year, is it?
Yes. Yes. Okay, do we have it? We got it?
Sounds good.
Okay. That's the motion.
A second.
Okay. Comments? Call for the vote.
Four eyes.
Welcome aboard. Okay, item 18. I believe, we have two sustainers?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But can you?
We have a hospital agenda and a closed session.
Right. But can, I don't think we can move forward.
Two of you are conflicted, we don't have a quorum, so you can be able to move forward on it.
We don't have a pause.
So it'll have to just continue to the next meeting.
So 18 holds over?
Okay.
Continue to the next meeting.
Okay.
So now we're at hospital agenda.
Well.
And now you have your hospital agenda.
Okay, should we go to hospital and then go to close?
It's up to you guys.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's open, now everybody bails, huh? Thanks, thanks for hanging with us for so long, we did that on purpose, that was by design, you know? Okay, so I would like to call to order the Avalon Municipal Board of Trustees Meeting. Roll call, please.
Trustee Cassidy.
Here.
Trustee Hernandez.
Here.
Trustee Sampson.
Here.
And I think, Annie, you are the chairman tonight, vice chair.
Perfect, I'm here too. All right, are there any announcements?
There are none.
Written communications?
None.
Presentations, none. Oral communication, unless Bob wants to come up, there will be no comments from the public this evening. Thank you very much, okay. Consent calendar.
We have two items on the consent calendar, actions from April 19th, and the CEO report for April 2016, and the CFO's March 2016 report, receive and file.
Comments?
Move to approve consent, items one and two.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, comment, no, call for the vote.
Four eyes.
General business?
None.
There is none.
Chairs report? Members report?
Nope.
And none.
Okay, and meeting adjourned?
Good night, Tony.
Now, yes, now we will be going into closed session, do you want to read that one?
That would be the city attorney.
Public employment appointment, city manager in conference with labor negotiations.
Who usually reads it?
Annie just read it.
I just read it.
Okay, there you go.
Okay.
All right.[1051.51]
Written communications?
None.
Presentations, none. Oral communication, unless Bob wants to come up, there will be no comments from the public this evening. Thank you very much. Okay, consent calendar.
We have two items on the consent calendar, actions from April 19th, and the CEO report for April 2016, and the CFO's March 2016 report, receive and file.
Comments?
Move to approve consent, items one and two.
Is there a second?
My second.
Okay, comment, no, call for the vote.
Four eyes.
General business, none.
There is none.
Chairs report? Members report?
Nope.
And none.
Okay, and, meeting adjourned.
Good night, Tony.
Now, yes, now we will be going into closed session, do you want to read that one?
That would be the city attorney.
Public employment appointment, city manager in conference with labor negotiations.
Who usually reads it?
Annie just read it. I just read it.
Okay, there you go.
Okay.
All right.
Oh wait, now we are, now, now, go ahead.
And we, the council would like to report out that you have selected David Jenkins as the new city manager. You'll be negotiating with him and bringing back a contract for consideration in the public meeting, ideally at your next meeting.
Yes.
July 5th.
July 5th.
July 5th.
Okay.
And it was a unanimous vote.
Thank you, and, meeting adjourned.
Good night, Tony.
Good night, Tony.